All right. We will bring to order the Wednesday, April 9, 2025, meeting of the California Coastal Commission. Ms. Miller, if you could please call the roll.
Commissioner Campio.
Here.
Commissioner Bocca.
Here.
Commissioner Dumalow.
Here.
Commissioner Ecklerly.
Here.
Commissioner Escalante.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
President.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Lowenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Nara.
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Uranga.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Wolfson.
Aqui.
Chair Cummings.
Here.
You have a call.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I'll turn it over to our AV staff for the virtual meeting procedures.
Good morning. This Coastal Commission meeting is occurring both in person and through Zoom. This meeting is also being webcast and can be viewed online at calspan.org. If you have access to the Internet and wish to watch or listen to the meeting only and not speak on an item, we recommend you use the Calspan website. Those who wish to address the Commission today can do so in person through the Zoom platform or by phone. The speaker request forms may be found on the Commission's webpage. Paper forms and a scannable QR code for paper submissions are available on the Commission's staff table just outside the meeting room. For those on Zoom, we have posted virtual hearing procedures on the Commission's Agenda webpage, which is a guide on providing comments via Zoom or by phone. Members of the public speaking during general public comments may be given up to two minutes to speak at the discretion of the Chair. Requests to speak during the general public comment period will not be accepted after 9:00 a.m. on each day of the meeting. In order to provide the opportunity for the broadest range of public participation, you may speak on a specific type topic one time only each month. Those speaking on an agenda item that is not general public comments are typically allowed two to three minutes to speak at the discretion of the Chair. We will accept a request to speak on an item up until the Chair opens the hearing on that particular item. If you have access to the Internet, please go to Commission's webpage and click on the link to fill out a speaker's request. If you do not have Internet access or prefer to testify by phone, please call the Commission's staff at (562) 477-9089. Again, that number is (562) 477-9089. Staff will provide you with a telephone call-in number and instructions for how to participate and provide testimony by phone. We will manage speakers coming in and out of the meeting through a meeting organizer. When it is your time to address the Commission, the organizer will invite you to turn on your video and microphone or provide instructions on how to unmute the phone. Chair Cummings, that concludes the virtual hearing procedures.
Thank you so much. All right, I'd like to turn it to staff for any agenda changes. I believe that's Mr. Swain.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Good morning to the Commission and to everybody who's joining us today. The agenda changes sheet that was posted on Monday, we do have a couple of additions to that, which I'll cover as I go over the list. So Item 7A, this is the fluter application from Newport Beach. That is postponed. Item 13A, the application from the Humboldt County Public Works Department on their Lower Bear Creek Habitat Enhancement Project in Humboldt County, that is moved to consent. This morning, we're adding Item 15A. This was the City of Newport Beach's LCP Amendment. That matter is postponed. Item 16A, this is the appeals, well, 16A and 16B for de novo action on two permits at 32007 and 32005, South Coast Highway in Laguna Beach. Those are both postponed. Item 16C, this is another appeal out of Laguna Beach, A5 LGB 257. That was withdrawn. Item 17B, the Dunwald application from San Clemente, that is moved to consent. And then adding this morning, Item 19A, the City of Del Mar's LCP Amendment on SB9 provisions. That's moved to consent. Item 19B, City of Del Mar's LCP Amendment for their North Commercial and Professional Commercial Inclusionary Housing provisions. That's moved to consent. Item 20B, Application 624-271, Soliderman out of San Diego, is moved to consent. And last, Item 20C, Application 624-817 for the Encinitas Grand View staircase repairs. That is moved to consent. And that completes the agenda changes.
All right, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is the general public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to us on items that are not on the agenda. But before we begin, I'd like to welcome Raul Campio, who's the alternate for Paloma Guerra, and just wanted to give him the opportunity to make a brief introduction.
Thank you so much, Chair, and good morning, everyone. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Raul Campio. I'm a San Diego City Council member, District 7, which, for those familiar with San Diego, essentially represents Mission Valley, parts of Mission Valley, and that central area of San Diego, from the 5 freeway to the 125 freeway. So it's a pretty large district. I'm honored to be Mayor Aguirre's alternate and happy to be here in Santa Barbara with you today. Mayor Aguirre couldn't be here this morning. Last night, she came in second in her election for supervisor, so she made the runoff with a sizable proportion of the vote. So she'll be on the ballot in June for supervisor in San Diego for our South Bay District 1. But other than that, I want to thank you all very much for your hospitality, the staff for their good work in preparing me and my team, knowing that I was going to be here, and looking forward to the public's discussion today and learning from my fellow Commissioners. Thank you so much, Chair.
All right, well, thank you for being here as well. Next up, I want to turn it to Commissioner Harmon to provide some welcome for us for being here in our meeting at Santa Barbara.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Very briefly, I just did want to take the opportunity to say how thrilled we are to have the Commission here in Santa Barbara. We are so, so proud of our little slice of coast here in the city of Santa Barbara. And the Coastal Commission and the work that this body has done over the years is no small part in preserving what we love so much here. So thank you all for being here, really excited for you to get to know our community. I think it's been about a decade since the Commission has been here, so really thrilled to have you. And Chair, if you don't mind, I would like to introduce the Chair of the Board of County Supervisors here in Santa Barbara County, Laura Capps, who would like to formally welcome the Commission as well.
It's nice to see you all, Chair Cummings. Commissioners, thank you so much for being here. Your timing is impeccable. There is so much that we are, so many of us are waiting to tell you. I need to thank Megan Harmon. You will not be surprised to hear that you are very well represented here in Santa Barbara. She is accessible, she is interested, she's passionate, and I'm grateful for her friendship. It was a little quieter today than I expected. I know tomorrow might be a little different, and you're going to hear a lot of passion, a lot of concern. You know, as you all know, doesn't, but it bears repeating, that in 1969, the world changed after the oil spill. I was a three-year-old then, and like many people that you'll hear from tomorrow, I was, I got interested in politics because of that oil spill, because of our coast. My parents started taking me to rallies. That led to a career, and now I serve proudly as Chair of the Board of Supervisors. So this is deep, and this is personal for a lot of people. I am grateful to you for your aggressive action on Sable. We're all watching. And I'm also just grateful that you're giving yet another opportunity for the public to understand what the heck is happening, how this is moving forward within the state, because that's been really frustrating for people. So just a bit of a heads up on that front. So thank you for that opportunity. And it, but it also bears repeating that we cannot afford another environmental disaster. And I just want to end by telling you that we are bringing, our Board of Supervisors is bringing you some good news, I believe, that another source of some public concern has been our cannabis ordinance, which five years, eight years ago created a proliferation of unbalanced cannabis operations in the coastal zone, as you well know. Our Board just voted unanimously to put in, require regulation change for innovative carbon scrubbers, and that'll be making its way to you, I hope, with your enthusiasm. I'm very enthusiastic and helped push that through. And I just want to close by thanking you. I looked at your agenda with awe. It's very dense, and you all are doing these jobs because of your commitment to the coast. You're not compensated, the staff works so hard, and I, as a public servant myself, I just want to share my respect and gratitude for being stewards of our coast. Thank you, and enjoy Santa Barbara.
Thank you so much. All right, with that, I will turn it to our AV staff again to kick us off on general public comment. So Chris and Simone, if you will.
For members of the public, I will be announcing the names of the upcoming speakers and invite you to speak when it is your turn. Each speaker will be allowed two minutes during general public comments. In order to allow for live video testimonies on Zoom, we will bring you in as a panelist. As we bring you in, your Zoom will reload. This may take a moment to speed up this process. We will bring several people in at a time, but please remain muted and keep your video off until we ask you to speak. After your time is up, you will be moved back to attendee mode. For speakers of the public present in the room, I will call your names in order that they appear on our signup list. When you hear your name, please line up behind the podium and announce yourself with your name when you approach to speak. Several helpful tips, there is a raise hand function that will help us find you in the attendee list. If you are using a phone for audio, you can raise your hand by dialing *9. If you are participating by Zoom, you should see a button on your Zoom screen if you have signed up to speak for this item and are able to do so, please raise your hand now. When it is your time to speak, we will invite you to unmute and turn on your camera. You can unmute yourself on a phone by dialing *6. Please remember to state your name for the record. First up, we will have Randy Sunday, Dan Guerra, Kim Fly, followed by Kevin Snow.
Okay, so if you had, if you heard your name called, if you could please approach the podium, and then please state your name before you speak.
Oh, no, no. Oh, boy, just catching my breath. I'm very grateful for this opportunity and...
Please state your name.
Oh, Randy Sunday, and I'm with a housing community called Rancho Galita. We're in Galita, we're at the end of Ward Drive and right near Galita Beach. And it's about 200 families who are what you might call, used to be called mobile homes, as now it's manufactured housing. And with one highlight is we have a beautiful lake, and it's a home and host to a lot of, a lot of birds, even great blue herons, Canadian geese, swans. And the far end of the lake is owned by the Parker Family Foundation, as in Fest Parker, who built this where you are now. It used to be the Fest Parker Red Lion Inn. He's very, very much a leader in the community, in the hotel and tourism industry, and their family is very involved. And they're one of the three main players of this issue I want to address. The lake that we have, that far southern end, was, it's property that belonged to the Parker Family Foundation. And they have let the protection of a fence lapse, and so now, on warm weather, on Sundays, for instance, like this last Sunday, there were like 10 different people there fishing off the bank. It's their property, we have no control, so we cannot do anything about it. But it started with teenagers, now it's parents with children, with beach chairs, with coolers, with solar panels. They, they, we call it the Galita Beach Annex, so they just settle in. And it invades our privacy, but our insurance broker said that there is a problem or a threat of a very dangerous exposure. Someone could be injured, they could fall in. They've now started jumping in to swim sometimes, or it could start a fire. Is that two minutes?
Thank you, yep, that was two minutes.
Well, I guess what I want to, my big request, dead burn it, is that, that somehow y'all could find a way to work with the Parker Family Foundation. They're good citizens in care, and also the county fire department, who asked them to do a thruway and went through the protected habitat, which is what that land is.
Thank you so much.
And they got sued by y'all, but if there's some way you could see them all as allies...
Sir, if you could just send out the rest of your comments through email, we can follow up with our staff, but we need to keep the meeting moving, so thank you.
And go tell me who to...
You can, you can speak with our...
Dan Guerra, Kim Fly, and Kevin Snow.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, I'm Dan Girah, Vice President of the Santa Barbara County Trails Council. We're honored to have the Commission in Santa Barbara. I've been 45 years working with the Coastal Act, so we're pleased with your work. We're here to talk to you about the Gaviota Coastal Trail, and we have a PowerPoint presentation. You should have hard copies in front of you, and we, the three of us are succession speakers, and we'll try to keep it brief. So by way of introduction, the Gaviota Coast...
Can we get the PowerPoint up? Oh, if we can pause.
Okay.
Okay. There you go.
Okay, you see here, the Gaviota Coast is quite rural, 18 miles of rural land extending from the city of Galita to Gaviota State Park. The coast supports state-owned and private lands, and we're here to discuss the status of four coastal trail segments. I should add, the Trails Council plans, designs, builds, and maintains trails for partners such as state parks, the county, and various cities, as well as Los Padres National Forest. Next slide, please. Yeah, we'll skip ahead. Next slide. You see here before you an overview map of the coast. We're going to talk about four different properties. One is the Paradiso Del Mar property, a privately owned property with an easement for the coastal trail on it. The second is the Las Varas Ranch, owned by the University of California at Santa Barbara. And the two other properties are state park properties. I have to say, in my 45 years as a professional planner, this is an exciting time for the Gaviota Coastal Trail, because things are coming together. The county just published a countywide recreation master plan, and the state parks is updating their general plan for the first time in 45 years. So Paradiso Del Mar, next slide, please. So 1.1 miles of the coastal trail with existing dedicated easements. The Trails Council's leading design and permitting for this. 30% engineering design plan has been completed. It includes a railroad bridge, a parking lot, and 1.1 miles of the coastal, as I said. We plan to submit the CDP to the county for construction in the fall of 2025, and we owe your commission negotiating a donation from the developer of this property directly to the Trails Council, not to the county, to plan and design this trail. Major challenge, I never, I never planned a railroad bridge before. So the permitting process is extensive. Next slide, please, and I'll wrap up. So this is the Paradiso Del Mar property. You can see in orange there on the right, that is the access road. There's a parking area proposed, and the orange shows the railroad bridge. You see the coastal trail, and then you see there's a couple overlooks with the coastal trail, too. So this one is in the process. We can make this happen, but it'll take five more years. Thank you so much for your time. Next up is Kim Fly to talk about the university-owned Las Varas Ranch.
Thank you.
Same PowerPoint. Dan, can I have your PowerPoint? Good morning, Commissioners and staff. I'm Kim Fly. I'm a board member for Santa Barbara County Trails Council. I also sit on CrayTac, which is the Santa Barbara County. I'm a first district appointee, and I get to advise things on all things trails. So I'm presenting on the Las Varas Ranch. This is one of the sections that we're talking about on the Gaviota Coast. It's 1,800-acre ranch with 2.2 miles of possible trail that could head on the coastal side of it. The Trails Council plans to work with UCSB on getting that public access. The next slide, please. If you could see on the map here, we, our plan is to have like the two parking on each end closer to the freeway at 101, and then having the trail go along the coast there. Currently, there isn't access, so anyone that does go through there, they'd be trespassing. There, at the north end, there's a surf point, and there's about 30 to 40 cars every day there surfing, so that's what I have. And just want to appreciate you all for, I saw on your website that you had the California Coastal Trail on your website, and which, it's a huge, like, it's like so honorable when I looked on there, and I thought, wow, the Coastal Commission really supports this as much as I support it and much as the organizations that I'm in support it. So I really appreciate you all making a difference so that we can make this happen throughout the whole state, so thank you.
Next slide, please. My name is Kevin Snow, a member of the Santa Barbara County Trails Council, also a Monastelo Trails Foundation. And I would just like to point out that this, the image here shows the damage on the section of the trail, a short damage, a short section, that connects the Gaviota, the El Capitan with Refugio State Parks, and is a very important little section that is currently technically closed, although people are still using it. The important thing is that it connects these two things and provides means to extend the trail further on to El Capitan. The next slide, please. This map gives you an indication of how things relate to each other. On the right side is the El Capitan State Beach, on the left, the Refugio State Beach, and the little section, a NISO trail, is the portion that was damaged there by erosion and that will need to be repaired. The key thing is that the Santa Barbara Trails Council is prepared to work with the county and the railroad and the state to repair the section of trail as soon as the permits can be sorted out. And the next slide, please. There we go, yeah. On the left, you'll see an image of the one-mile segment of the California Coastal Trail that could be built. It is on state property that would connect the Gaviota State Park to Refugio and El Capitan via the Gaviota Marine Terminal, which you'll see on the right side of that image. The environmental document for this conversion has already been completed since 2007, and the Trails Council is ready to work again with state parks to get this completed. What we really need from you in the next slide is to recognize that the Gaviota State Marine Terminal provides a connection between all these things. Thank you very much for your support and protection, and help us get these permits sorted out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So up next, we have Stanley Prom, Zach Plopper, and Brian Troutwine. Please come up and state your name for the record.
Hi, good morning. Stanley Prom, Senior Legal Associate for the Surf Rider Foundation. I'm here today to urge you to deny Orange County Transportation Authority's requested emergency permit to armor San Clemente beaches. At risk is the significant destruction of major coastal recreation areas, including a state beach. OCTA has not demonstrated a genuine emergency, and the project is not nearly tailored to address any purported emergency. Nothing sudden or unexpected has happened. OCTA has known about erosion facing San Clemente beaches and the need to develop long-term solutions for its rail line for decades, and yet, rather than do so, they're coming to you now after failing to act, claiming an emergency, and asking to cover more than a mile of beach with rock. And this includes more, about a third of a mile at San Clemente State Beach, which OCTA has recently itself recognized as a stable beach with no hazard. This is egregious, and granting an emergency permit in this scenario would only incentivize others to take a similar do-nothing approach in the face of sea level rise, resulting in more armoring of California's coast with disregard of Coastal Act mandates. Moreover, emergency permits are supposed to be temporary, generally able to be constructed within one month and allowed to remain only 18 months. Here, OCTA's proposed engineered revetment would take around eight months to construct, and there's no reality in which OCTA plans to remove an engineered revetment eight months thereafter. There's, this is simply a workaround of the Coastal Act at a great cost to the public. And we're talking about the significant destruction of recreational resources, not just from construction, but the revetment taking up public state beach space and exacerbating erosion as revetments are known to do. Other emergency rock revetments in the area have already contributed to significant impacts blocking lateral access and harming surf quality of world-renowned surf spots. Finally, it seems the trains are still running in the area, and even eventually if they all shut down, proven alternatives exist that could be implemented while working towards long-term solutions that don't involve destroying the public beach. Thank you.
Up next is Zach Plopper.
I have some slides. First one's a video, you can just go ahead and press play. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Zach Plopper, the Senior Environmental Director at the Surf Rider Foundation. I'm from Solana Beach. I live in Ventura, but I call all of the Southern California by my home. And this region's also home to, well, resources that I work to protect, but also resources that I enjoy as a surfer for the past 35 years. This includes riding thousands of waves along San Clemente shoreline from Trestles to San Clemente Pier. And in the middle of all that is San Clemente State Beach, whose existence is threatened by the Orange County Transportation Authority's proposed emergency armoring. This is one of the most visited and loved state beaches in California. It's a place uniquely equipped with natural bluffs, with surf, with 168 campsites, and a rich cultural history. Trestles and Santa Inofre State Beach are just down coast, and this is home to incredible shoreline and some of the most iconic and consistent surf spots in North America, but they don't exist in isolation. The health of the waves and shoreline there depends on sand movement and the dynamic processes that only a natural system can provide. You can go to the next slide. The revetment and armoring that OCTA is proposing is significant. At full buildout, it could be over 50 feet wide, 1,200 feet long, covering almost the entire beaches in some places. This isn't emergency protection, this is a permanent decimation of the park's best resource, and will have destructive impacts on Trestles and Santa Inofre State Beach. You can go to the next slide. It will be, it'll accelerate erosion, cut off access, and erase the very experience that people come for. OCTA's proposed emergency projects has been planned for over a year. We know that this portion of the coast has been eroding for decades. There has been a steady decline in beach width since 1995 and a sharp increase in erosion since 2013. We've seen this coming for a long, long time, and this is a moment to draw the line on where we armor in California and how we protect our coastal infrastructure and communities for the long term. We need real transportation solutions with long-term vision that don't destroy the coast, and this Commission must hold OCTA accountable for responsible planning. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Brian Troutwine, Senior Analyst and Watershed Program Director with the Environmental Defense Center of the EDC. Thank you for your service and welcome to Santa Barbara. We want to take this opportunity to recognize the excellent work done by Commission enforcement staff. Staff is doing an amazing job with a series of violations involving Dos Pueblos Creek on the Gaviota Coast up by Naples. The Gaviota Coast is, of course, well-known for its scenic, biological, and cultural resources, and Dos Pueblos Creek supports several important special status species. When enforcement staff learned that Dos Pueblos Creek had been dredged and a concrete structure had been built on the creek bank, which exceeded what the coastal development permit allowed, staff contacted the owner and began working on solutions. Staff has worked diligently to resolve the violation, and what impresses EDC the most is the level of professionalism and the detailed, the detail-oriented nature with which enforcement staff undertakes its work. They've been firm, yet flexible, with the owner, providing ample due process and time for the owner to respond and comply, and staff has sought to resolve the issue in an amicable manner. Staff's working on a CDP application with the owner and a restoration plan that will protect and restore the important coastal resources out in Dos Pueblos Creek. And these resources are treasured by the public here in Santa Barbara, throughout the state, and the many visitors we have to Gaviota. Enforcement staff has a long history of working out reasonable solutions to sometimes difficult enforcement cases. Of course, having cooperative, responsible parties that acknowledge their mistakes and work with staff to resolve the issues is always important to ensure equitable and timely resolutions. So kudos to your enforcement staff for its fine work here in Santa Barbara County and throughout the Golden State. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Juan Munoz, Stephanie Castaneda, Jennifer Estrada, Robbie Robertson, Britty Roberts, and Roman... Britty Roberts, and Roman Pinal.
Good morning, Honorable Commissioners. My name is Juan Munoz, and I'm here with Unite Here Local 11. We are here speaking today to raise the concern that we've brought before, that regarding the commission sometimes taking extra caution associated with flooding and sea level rise, but other times the commission not taking that same precaution. For instance, there's a recent case of the Magnolia Tank Farm, which included both housing and hotel uses. There, the Coastal Commission considered the risks associated with seven feet of SLR and urged the need to exercise caution in light of unknown hazard risks. During the July 13, 2023 hearing on the project, then Chair, now Chair Cummings spoke of the urgent need to protect renters from flooding, quote, saying, "I must say, coming from a community that this winter experienced significant impacts from the storms, where we saw houses that were on the beach getting lifted off of their foundations, we saw roads getting completely washed out, massive amounts of floodings, and then in one of our neighboring communities, Baharo, watching the levee breach and 2,000 people being displaced from their homes. The impacts of climate change are just as critical, if not more, than trying to address housing in our housing crisis." Because the last thing we want to do is put people in harm's way. And so this is not only a housing issue, it's a climate issue, and it's also an environmental justice issue. So, we're just here to ask a question. Is the commission applying the same standard to all similar projects on the coast? Thank you.
Hello. My name's Stephanie Castaneda, and I come from the community of Lenox, where many people work in the service industry, serving tourists at our coast hotels and at the airport. These, these are just not a lot, these are just not a lot of affordable hotels here. There are not a lot of affordable hotels here in Santa Barbara. Part of the reason why is that over 10 years ago, the Miramar demolished over 210 low-cost rooms, and now it is listed as the most expensive hotel in Santa Barbara market. Now, there's only one hotel in the market that is considered low-cost, and hotels that are $250 or $300 a night are not affordable to me nor to others. Where are our families supposed to go to enjoy the coast? That would mean a lot to me. Two years ago, my partner and I went on a long-awaited vacation. We diligently saved $1,000 over several months, each dollar representing our hopes of experiencing the serene beauty of California's coastline. And of course, Santa Barbara was at the top of our list. However, the prices here were so unaffordable that we were confronted with the harsh reality that our hard-earned savings were insufficient for more than a brief two-day stay in Santa Barbara. Faced with this limitation, we made the difficult decision to forego our plans here, and we settled on a quick meal before going further north to a smaller town with less to offer. Now, I recognize how lucky I am to still have the ability to have any sort of vacation. However, with this, the dream of a coastal retreat shouldn't be reserved for only the wealthy. It should be accessible to all, and I hope that you please remember that California created the Coastal Commission to make sure all of us get to visit the coast. And the commission can and should do more here in Santa Barbara to encourage coastal access. Thank you.
Up next is Jennifer Estrada, Robbie Robertson, and Britty Roberts.
Morning. My name is Jennifer Estrada. I'm a member of Unite Here Local 11. I work as a housekeeper at the Beverly Hilton Hotel. We're facing a housing crisis and a climate crisis. The fires in Nellie County recently destroyed thousands of our homes. Santa Barbara has experienced severe flooding in the past. We know climate change will make things worse, especially with rising sea levels. Sometimes the commission takes extra caution with regards to sea levels and other doesn't. It is hard for me to afford, to live near my job. I've been struggling to find a place to stay as a year ago. I was wrongfully evicted and managed to buy a little trailer, in which also was taken from me. I've had to stay in my vehicle because finding a safe, affordable place near work is impossible, and this shouldn't be. I work very hard to deserve to live safely and secure, especially near my job. Why does the commission sometimes take more precaution with sea level rise and floodings, but other times less so? Thank you.
Next is Robbie Robertson, Britty Roberts, Roman Pinal. That will be it for the attending, and the next will be following on Zoom.
Greetings, everyone on the commission. My name is Robbie Robinson. I'm a member of Local 11 as well, and I work as a chef at the Beverly Hilton. I'm here because I believe that working people deserve access to the coast. Yeah. Right now, we're in beautiful Santa Barbara, a hotel, we're in beautiful Santa Barbara. A hotel developer recently did a survey of 58 hotel offerings in Santa Barbara. It lists only one hotel below the lower-cost threshold, and that was the Rose Garden, and two at the high end of the moderate-cost range, four double bedrooms, Motel 6, and the Lemon Tree, with others considered high cost. Wow. I wish. It would be nice, but you know, my concern is that I cannot afford to bring my family or vacation here at the beach because it's, there isn't any affordable accommodation. Even though I work really hard in the tourism industry for other people to enjoy, it's an out-of-reach wish for me. I'm asking today, please fight for more lower-cost hotels in Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Cummings and Commissioners. My name is Pastor Bridy Roberts. I'm the Community Organizing Director at Unite Here Local 11, which means I get to work with our members and our neighbors on issues of deep importance to them, like the environment, like equity, like housing and wages. Our union has long pushed for coastal access for our members, the working poor. We would like to ensure that the Coastal Commission uses all the wonderful tools in your toolbox that improve coastal access. When a luxury resort significantly intensifies development and adds more luxury amenities, there are many tools at your disposals to ensure equity. For instance, the commission can encourage developers to convert existing hotel rooms into multi-bed hostel rooms. The commission can make use of rooftop space for public viewpoints. The commission can require developers to add shuttle services from public parking locations to make the hotel amenities more easily accessible to more of the public. We encourage you to make use of these and other creative tools to ensure that any extra luxury development that occurs also includes access for working people. Thank you.
Honorable Chair Cummings and Commissioners, my name is Roman Pinal, and I am the National Vice President of the United Farm Workers Union, the nation's first enduring farmworkers' union, largest farmworkers' union in the country, of course, founded by Cesar Chavez de Lora Suerta. We represent thousands of farmworkers from as far south as San Diego County, here nearby in Ventura County, Santa Barbara County, up in Santa Maria, Santa Cruz County, and up in Sonoma County as well. They work in the strawberry industry, mushrooms. Whenever you have a salad, our members are picking your food. And we're proud to stand with the hotel workers, the members of Unite Here Local 11. Like hotel workers, our members exist, try to live in the crisis that we see on a day-to-day basis. When LA was on fire and we were losing our beautiful communities, all that toxic smoke was dumping onto the Oxnard Plain, where thousands of strawberry workers were continuing to harvest the strawberries so that we can have them in our grocery stores. The idea of staying on the coast on vacation is far out of reach for farmworkers, but the Coastal Commission can help. Please listen to hotel workers, listen to the farmworkers, to graduate student teachers. Encourage lower-cost hotel rooms. Please make sure you use all the tools in your toolbox to improve coastal access. The commission has always championed social and environmental justice. Let us continue. As Cesar and de Lora said, si se puede.
Okay, next, we're going to Zoom. So we have San Clemente City Manager Andy Hall, followed by Samantha McDonald, followed by Mandy Sackett, followed by Alex Ferrin. Andy Hall, if you can please unmute yourself.
To discretion of the Chair, we had submitted three public comments, one for Mayor Noblock, one for Councilmember Cabral, and one for myself. If it's, if it's at the discretion of the Chair, I would defer to the elected officials first, if that's okay, even though my name was read first?
Sure.
That's fine.
And you'll each get two minutes.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Steve Noblock. I'm the mayor of the city of San Clemente, and I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to provide input regarding the emergency coastal development permit application submitted by the Orange County Transportation Authority. Upon reviewing the application, it's clear that the emergency work request, requested will have more impact on the city of San Clemente than any other entity, including the Orange County Transportation Authority. Previous work on the railroad revetment has resulted in a significant loss of sand by both increased erosion from the hardening structures, as well as the physical loss of beach due to the increased width of the revetment. For these and so many other reasons, I would respectfully request that the granting of any permit, emergency or otherwise, would include adequate sand to mitigate the impact of the revetment, train vibration, environmental impacts associated with the application. The use of emergency permit process should not allow the Orange County Transportation Authority to sidestep the responsibilities of the Coastal Act. In relation to the non-revetment and sand portions of the application, I'm very supportive of the retaining wall, the bridge removal, and the trail restoration elements of the application. For more than a year, this important coastal trail access and public safety facility has been closed to the public. The retaining wall and the trail improvements will restore the coastal experience for the tens of thousands of residents and visitors that traverse the trail. Additionally, the trail represents the only land access for our lifeguards between their headquarters and North Beach during the high-tide events. Thank you, and please feel free to contact me or our staff for additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Steve Block gonna talk? Noblock?
Noblock. Noblock, K-N-O-B-L-O-C-K.
Noblock, okay. Will he be speaking as well?
Yes. My name is Victor, City Council of San Clemente. The beaches of San Clemente are in peril, and the placement of more rip raft on our beaches will threaten them and will accelerate the erosion of our sand. Well, San Clemente has a great working partnership with the OCTA, the Orange County Transportation Authority. We also recognize that our interests are not always perfectly aligned with theirs. Their primary purpose is to protect the tracks, which is one of our purposes also, but our, our purpose is also to desire to have beaches and coastal access, recreation, environmental protection, and protection of our critical infrastructure. While these objectives are not exactly aligned, they are not mutually exclusive. The placement of sand on beaches in San Clemente is a solution to both the needs of the OCTA and of San Clemente. And I'll repeat that. It's the placement of sand that will protect our infrastructure of the railroads and our beaches. The message from the city of San Clemente has been clear and consistent from the very beginning. Sand is the best solution to the coastal issues faced by our community. While sand has benefits for recreational use and access to our coastal resources, the sand of San Clemente serves a much higher purpose. Various studies by coastal experts indicate, and even common sense, indicate that, well, the best way to stabilize the tracks and to buffer the revetments is to place more sand. However, the sand on the beach also provides an effective buttress to the slopes inland and to protect our lines. Bottom line is, as I'm running out of time, is the sand is the solution to protect our, our infrastructure, and we support the placement of more sand on our beaches.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Andy Hall, and I'm the City Manager for the city of San Clemente. I would like to provide some input on the impending emergency coastal development permit for the Orange County Transportation Authority. Emergency permits are issued to address immediate issues that must be completed in a timeframe shorter than the traditional coastal development permit process. It is the responsibility of the California Coastal Commission to determine if an emergency exists, and I am confident that it has been demonstrated by OCTA, where the emergency permit would not be issued. However, the issuance of an emergency permit obligates the applicant to satisfy future conditions as identified by the Coastal Commission to mitigate the emergency circumstances. In that light, I'm requesting the following conditions accompany the issuance of any emergency permit relating to the OCTA rail line in San Clemente. The emergency repair of the railroad revetment should be limited to the current footprint and dimensions of the existing facility. Any expansion of the revetment should be considered through the full coastal development permit process, with all accompanying environmental documentation and public input. There should be a timeframe included in the permit that obligates OCTA to satisfy the conditions of the emergency permit. It is often stated that it takes years to place sand on the beach, but the city of San Clemente, city of San Clemente placed tens of thousands of cubic yards on North Beach last year in less than four months, beginning to end. The mitigation measures should be expanded to include the new emergency work, not blended into past work. Past emergency work has had an impact on local beaches, and additional work will have additional impacts. Finally, it is not a normal practice for OCTA to place sand on the beach. The city of San Clemente has experience with this process and is glad to provide this service to OCTA, if that is acceptable to both the Coastal Commission and OCTA. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Samantha McDonald, followed by Mandy Sackett, followed by Alex Ferrin.
Hi, can you please bring up my slides?
Yes, one second, please.
Awesome. My name is Samantha McDonald. I'm a live aboard in Newport Beach in the mooring field. As you guys very well know by now, Newport Beach is trying to pass an ordinance that would change the way that the rate system work, but also other details as well in the ordinance that would change the way the mooring system works as a whole. One of their aspects of the ordinance is converting all permits to city licenses, and one of the criteria of a city license says that if you leave your mooring ball for more than 25 consecutive days, the city can deem that abandonment and result in automatic termination of a mooring license. They can terminate it without being appealable to the harbor commission. Next slide. Personally, and for a lot of people in the community, this is crazy. There are so many people that would leave their mooring ball with their boat for more than 25 days for recreation, and I'm going to share our examples. Next slide. One of them is the trans path. Lots of boats like to do the race to Hawaii and back. That can take weeks to months at a time to accomplish and leaving your mooring ball for more than 25 days. Next slide. Summer vacations in the Channel Islands. If you want to go explore what's in your backyard right now, that takes time. Our boat only moves seven miles per hour. Next slide. Boat repairs. A lot of times, old boats take a long time to repair. It takes more than 25 days. For us, it took a month just to repair the bottom of our hull. Next slide. Cruisers. Cruisers can't happen anymore. All the amazing adventures that I've had and my neighbors have had, going to French Polynesia and back in Mexico and wanting to return safely to our harbor during hurricane season, that is being eradicated with this policy. Next slide. Not to get too sentimental here, but we're voyagers in the way that Moana has said it. Sailboats are meant to leave the harbor and then come back safely when they need it. We are mostly supposed to explore and not just spend a few hours on our boat, so I'd appreciate, next slide. I'd really appreciate if you guys look. It's the next slide. I just wanted to say I really appreciate you guys considering asking Newport Beach to have to submit a coastal development permit in order to look into these policies and questioning how this improves opportunities for recreation in our harbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mandy Sackett, followed by Alex Ferrin, followed by Peter McNamee and Adam Leverin. Mandy, please unmute yourself. Oh, there you go. Oh, there you go.
Thank you. Hello, Mandy Sackett, California Policy Manager for the Surf Rider Foundation. As you've heard, the Orange County Transportation Authority is dead set on armoring San Clemente's beaches. In 2021 and 2022, they put this monstrous seawall at Cypress Shores Beach right in front of Trestle Surf Break. And the beach there has disappeared very rapidly. Next slide. This is an aerial map of south San Clemente. The red is where that Cypress Shores seawall currently exists. And then OCTA has applied for a CDP to retain that seawall permanently, and that's going to come before you this summer. And then just last week, they applied for an emergency permit to armor much of San Clemente State Beach, which is shown in yellow, right next door, along with three other hotspots further north that you've also heard about today. Next slide. And then here's another look at the Cypress Shores seawall on the start of where OCTA wants to armor on San Clemente State Beach. Next slide. This is San Clemente State Beach. You can see the Cypress Shores seawall in the distance. OCTA wants to place 1,200 feet long, 50 feet wide, 33,000 tons of boulders. It would be bigger than that Cypress Shores seawall. Next slide. OCTA's armoring that is right in front of Trestle Surf Break, we don't know how all these boulders are going to impact the surf. OCTA's emergency permit application prevents any careful consideration of unintended consequences. Next slide. There are people who surf right in front of the boulders. We've heard reports of dangerous conditions getting in and out of the water, backwash messing up the waves. Next slide. And San Clemente State Beach has really important backshore dune habitat that's also likely to be impacted by this emergency permit. Next slide. And this emergency permit will be reported to you at the May hearing. If one third of commissioners reject the emergency permit, it can be denied. Please do not let OCTA continue unregulated armoring of this important stretch of coast. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alex Ferrin, Peter McNamay, followed by Adam Leverens and Leverens.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Alex Ferrimignona, Coastal Adaptation Manager for the Surf Rider Foundation, wrapping up for our team. I'm speaking today as a coastal resilience strategist, a frequent Looson corridor train commuter, and a lifelong Orange County beach user. This decision will carry significant downstream consequences. Our beaches in San Clemente are already starved of sand, and further degradation of the littoral cell by way of shoreline armoring will only disrupt sediment transportation even more severely, harming not only local beaches but the entire sediment system that supports our coastline. I also won a flag brought to you a few months ago, the tremendous momentum we've been building next door at San Onofre State Beach, home to Trestles, world famous Surf Break, Ponhe, a native sacred site, and important protected coastal habitat. At Trestles, we're actively restoring native dune habitat for greater shoreline resilience. And just south at San Onofre Surf Beach, we're undertaking long-term, community-centered, nature-based adaptation planning to support coastal access and ecosystem health. These efforts, which the Coastal Conservancy has already invested over $1 million in, rely on intact sediment flows and functional coastal processes. If this armoring project goes forward, we risk undermining all of that, setting back state-led resilience efforts and threatening access to the fifth most visited state park in California. We cannot keep solving one emergency by creating another. OCTA's reliance on emergencies and a lack of any real long-term planning should not allow a guaranteed future for continued interruption to train riders and come at the expense of our public beaches, habitats, and coastal future. We humbly ask you to stand strong in your mission to protect coastal resources for all of the public good and ensure that solutions here do not come at the cost of everything else we're all working so hard to protect. Thank you all so much for your efforts. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Next is Peter McNamay, followed by Adam Leverens, Lisa Gant, Gary Walsh. Peter, if you can unmute yourself, please.
I'm unmuted.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak this morning. I am a member of the Grassroots Institute in Mendocino County. We recently polled our participants and asked them to grant us authority to send letters to the federal officials, the state officials, and to other public officials in the state supporting the Coastal Commission's continued operation. I just briefly want to convey this message to you. The Grassroots Institute of Mendocino County wishes to take this opportunity to voice our support for the Coastal Act and the California Coastal Commission. As reported in the media, the institute understands that the Trump administration demands California abandon the Coastal Act by defunding the Coastal Commission. Our institute's mission is to catalyze thousands of Mendocino County residents through education and advocacy for the common good. We have organized dozens of public meetings designed to engage people to realize the Coastal Act's goals of preserving and protecting California's coastal zone as a precious asset for everyone in our state. The residents of Mendocino County overwhelmingly support enforcing the Coastal Act through the coastal, local coastal programs adopted and administered jointly by coastal cities, our county government, in partnership with the Coastal Commission. Therefore, we wish to go on record in support of the Coastal Act and the Coastal Commission. And further, we wish to express our strongest opposition to any attempt by the Trump administration to repeal or modify the Coastal Act or limit the authority of the Coastal Commission to enforce its provisions. For these reasons, we request California stand firm, upholding the Coastal Act and the Coastal Commission's authority by rejecting any attempt by the Trump administration to diminish California's right to regulate its coastal zone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Next is Adam, Lisa Gant, and Gary Walsh, followed by Julian Husband and Susie Whitelaw.
Are my audio levels okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, great. Thank you. Good morning, commissioners and staff, Adam Leverens. Again, I want to thank you for all you do, the insights you offer, and all the time that's invested in protecting the coast for all. To myself and others, the city of Newport Beach seems to strive for something quite different. And many of those to be detrimentally affected are apparently not in categories benefiting from enough wealth to be able to maintain or continue their access in Newport. A number of commissioners have inquired about the jurisdiction between coastal and the State Lands Commission. And I believe that State Lands is primarily going to focus on rates, but there's other things that fall more directly under your purview. You've previously heard some about the city intent to convert all mooring permits to city, short-term, high-cost mooring licenses. Those are currently priced at 1,330% above State Lands Commission benchmark rates for our area. I'll note that Section 3.3.2-3 of the Local Coastal Program Coastal Land Use Plan seeks to, quote, "continue to provide shore moorings and offshore moorings as an important source of low-cost public access to the water and harbor," close quote. Please remember that even though the CLUP aspires to preserve moorings as low cost in Newport, the city sets rates for offshore moorings multiple times higher than those for residential peers and 12 of 14 commercial tideland permits. Any semblance of preserving moorings at low cost has come through near 100 years of the permitees owning and maintaining their tackle. The city can't do this cost efficiently. Please demand that these substantive changes the city is proposing undergo the CDP process so these appalling disparities can be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Lisa Gant, followed by Gary Walsh, followed by Julian Husband, and then Susie Whitelaw. Lisa Gant, please unmute yourself.
I'm unmuted. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Lisa Gant, and I am with Save Our Beaches San Clemente. In March of 2024, the Orange County Transit Authority announced a project to dump 100,000 tons of riprap boulders on the beaches of San Clemente to protect their tracks. This will essentially destroy our popular state beach. Last week, OCTA applied for emergency permits for destructive coastal armoring of our beaches. We have been speaking to you over the past year expressing strong opposition to rocks and hard barriers that will destroy our beaches. We have several speakers who will address the following points. Point one, there is no emergency on the beach side of the tracks. Point two, one reason there is no emergency is because the sand replenishment project done by the city of San Clemente last year has widened our beaches considerably, and the trains are running. Sand is the solution. Point three, the only potential emergency is from landslides on the east side of the tracks, and we do support the construction of landslide debris walls. Finally, point four, we support any necessary repair of existing rock revetment without widening their existing footprint. We do not support a seawall or the construction of a new 50 to 60-foot-wide revetment, which would eliminate most of our beautiful San Clemente State Beach. I would also like to point out that this beach shelters critical habitat. Snowy plovers are protected, and they are an endangered species. This is a photograph from last week on our beaches of a particularly large flock of snowy plovers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Gary Walsh, followed by Julian Husband, followed by Susie Whitelaw, followed by Ken Salter, followed by John Dow.
Hello, commissioners. And my name is Gary Walsh with San Clemente Save Our Beaches, SC. Question, when is an emergency not an emergency? The answer, when there's no evidence to support its existence. We've recently witnessed President Trump and our own governor abuse the power given to them under the declarations of an emergency. This is a deliberate attempt to subvert laws and regulations codified in our democratic process. The Orange County Transportation Authority must feel emboldened by these recent events as they are now submitting for a blanket emergency that will cover most of the eight miles of San Clemente's beaches. But where is a documented emergency? To date, OCTA has not produced one shred of evidence that their tracks have suffered damage or imminent threat of damage from the oceans. Any imminent threat and damage have been a result of movement from the land side of the tracks. And this is an important distinction. In their permits, they are seeking to address the threat from landsides, but they also seek to build rock revetment along a large swath of the beaches. This would effectively eliminate many of these beaches. There is no reason they can't separate their permits into two requests, one to address the threat from the land-based side east of the tracks and one permit on the ocean side west of the tracks. Instead, they hope to convince you that the entire coastline should be viewed as one emergency, and it's not. They've also resorted to scapegoating you. They blame you. Every time they are asked why they are not putting down sand if the ocean is a future threat, they state, oh, we've submitted permit requests, and the regulatory agencies turn them down. But this answer is deceitful and an obfuscation of the truth. The truth is, they have never singularly requested a singular sand-only permit before the California Coastal Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Julian Husband, followed by Susie Whitelaw, followed by Ken Salter, and John Dow.
Good morning. I'm Julian Husband, a longtime San Clemente resident and member of Save Our Beaches San Clemente, who regularly surfs T Street, Trestles, and San Onofre, as well as the father of two teenagers who also spent a lot of time at the beach. I'll echo some of what we've heard from others this morning regarding the folly of additional hard armoring and provide some more specificity around the impact of sand replenishment that we've already seen. Here you can see the city of San Clemente in the process of placing 250,000 cubic yards of sand near the pier. As can be appreciated from this picture, the new sand has a darker, brownish color. Next slide. Thanks. This next slide demonstrates how the sand has now moved two miles down the coast from the pier and has replenished much of San Clemente State Beach. On the left-hand side of this slide, you can appreciate the narrowness of the beach in 2023, yet OCTA did not declare an emergency at that time. On the right side, from April 2024, post-replenishment, you can see how the beach has been widened, notably by the brownish sand which was added to the pier. This is the area where OCTA is proposing to pave over the beach with additional riprap. As we can all clearly see, there's no need for that. Next slide. Also, last year, the city of San Clemente placed 37,000 cubic yards of sand on North Beach, which, for your frame of reference, is about a mile north of the pier. Next. Similar to the sand that was placed at the pier, the North Beach sand has traveled southwards in Mariposa Beach. From this picture, you can appreciate how much wider the beach is following the sand replenishment, like the other slide. This is also a beach where OCTA wants to dump more riprap. As we have clearly seen, sandworks just give it a chance. Riprap is not the solution that nature intended here and will hasten the erosion of the beach, precisely the opposite of what we need. There is no emergency, and OCTA must be prevented from additional hard armoring. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Susie Whitelaw, followed by Ken Salter, followed by John Dow, followed by Maura O'Neil, then Cor Bower.
Good morning. Dr. Susie Whitelaw with Save Our Beaches San Clemente. We oppose the dumping of any more rock on our beaches. We have a saying, boulders kill beaches, and we want no more of them. However, we do recognize the need for OCTA to protect their tracks. Therefore, we are willing to compromise. But this emergency permit cannot allow more than the minimum amount of rock necessary to alleviate the immediate emergency. I have submitted a detailed analysis to staff that shows that according to OCTA's own engineering diagram, that is a 30-foot-wide revetment as measured from the center line of the track. Next slide, please. Here's just one example. A portion of OCTA's own map of their proposed revetments at Area Number Four. On the right, where the beach is privately owned, they have restricted the revetment to the existing width, about 30 feet out from the center line of the track. On the left, where it's a public San Clemente State Beach, they are proposing to build a 50 to 60-foot-wide revetment. If the 30-foot-wide revetment can protect the tracks, that is the maximum width allowable under an emergency permit. Next slide, please. A recent photo of the same area. The black line is the boundary between the private beach on the south and the state beach on the north. The red arrow indicates a 60-foot-wide revetment previously placed by OCTA, where it has destroyed the beach. The red arrow indicates a 60-foot-wide. You can see how devastating that would be on the state beach over on the left side. It would occupy all of the dry beach, block lateral public access, increase erosion on the beach, and eventually, we would have no beach. Please do not permit a rock revetment Please do not permit a rock revetment wider than the existing revetment or wider than thirty feet from the center line of the rail. Thank you.
Thank you. So next we have Ken Salter, John Dow, Maura O'Neill, and Cor Bower. We have about ten speakers left on Zoom.
Hi. Hello, I'm Ken Salter, resident of San Clemente. I live very close to the state beach. And I've been looking at the drawings and the diagrams, trying to visualize the impact of the revetment on the environment. And I think the public will be shocked and really angry when they see this. And they're going to say, who didn't do their job in government? And people are going to be angry and they're going to have a damn good reason to be. What I think should happen is before you approve this, you should insist that OPTA constructs a mock-up using stakes to mark out the perimeter of the revetment and balloons or pieces of plywood to indicate how tall it's going to be so people can get an idea of the massing. But we want to see what, you know, how these stakes, how close they're going to come to the water at mean high tide is to see how this will impede the ability for lateral transport down the beach. People need to know what's coming. And if you wait and if we wait until it's done before the public knows what they're going to have to deal with and how the beach has been ruined, there's going to be hell to pay, in my opinion. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ken. Next is John Dow, followed by Maura O'Neill, Cor Bower, Robin Davidoff.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm John Dow with Save Our Beaches San Clemente. And I hope you've had a chance to review the email I sent last week. Despite it being in the clear public interest to preserve our coastline and protect the rail line through sustainable sand replenishment, OCTA continues its unnecessary assault on San Clemente's beaches. Their latest emergency permit application for additional coastal hard armory is yet another example of a reckless reliance on the least effective and most environmentally damaging methods of track protection. It's part of a disturbing pattern. Failing to act proactively to address known threats, then using that failure to justify beach-destroying emergency permits. This latest application takes their disregard for our coast and for collaboration to a new level. First, their permit is detailed and consultant-heavy when it comes to their desire to immediately armor more beach, yet offers only vague superficial references to the timing and amounts of any future sand placement. Then there's their recent PR Times request for information to potential sand suppliers, which is cursory, performative, and three years too late. Even more telling is their failure to advance the critical Army Corps permitting needed to place dredge sand, the most effective and obvious solution. We urge you to reject any part of this emergency permit proposing additional hard armory west of the tracks. There is no emergency. All past closures were caused by landslides east of the corridor, not wave action. Thanks to recent city-led sand replenishment, there's now more protective beach created at no cost to OCTA with more sand on the way. OCTA needs to be a partner, not an obstacle. Finally, we ask the commission to require message sending and restorative mitigation for the damage already done at Cypress Shore and Cotton's Point, critical lateral access now buried under OCTA boulders. Thank you for standing up for our coast. Your work is essential and is deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Maura O'Neill, followed by Cor Bower, followed by Robin Davidoff, then Brian Yanity.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Maura O'Neill. I'm a policy analyst and advocate for Better Neighbors L.A., a coalition of hosts, tenants, and housing activists who conduct data analysis and research on the short-term rental industry, seeking to regulate short-term rentals to preserve long-term housing. We believe that true home sharing and hosted-only rentals is the best way to balance affordable access to the coast for visitors as well as residents. In December of 2023, the Coastal Commission had an informational briefing on housing. During that meeting, Professor David Walksmith of McGill University presented his research on the trade-offs associated with allowing short-term rentals or STRs in the coastal zone. He emphasized that unhosted STRs drive up rents and housing costs and pointed to STR regulations as a pro-housing stance that the commission could take. Specifically, he recommended that the commission consider establishing a common regulatory floor that restricts unhosted short-term rentals and encourages home sharing in the coastal zone to preserve public access for visitors. New research from Walksmith published this past September reiterates this trend. His newest study investigates the impact that STR regulations in British Columbia have on rents. The study found that STR regulations introduced in 2023 reduced STR activity and caused rents to fall. Municipal short-term rental regulations across British Columbia have reduced rents by 5.7%, saving renters over $6 million in rent payments during 2023. The reduction was even more pronounced in cities like Vancouver, where the primary residence restriction led to renters on average paying 147 less each month in rent. As more studies empirically connect short-term rentals to decreased housing availability, we urge you to keep the housing impact of short-term rentals in mind and follow Walksmith's recommendation to restrict unhosted short-term rentals and encourage home sharing in the coastal zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cor Bower, followed by Robin Davidoff, followed by Brian Yanity.
Good morning. My name is Cor Bower from San Clemente. I'm talking about the OCTA emergency action. When the waves bounce off rocks that stabilize the train tracks, the sand is carried away as the waves recede. The solution of rocks for rail stabilization is also a guarantee that San Clemente loses its beaches in those areas. This is known, verifiable, and provable. To make these changes is to knowingly change the beach structure of San Clemente. The state and its entities essentially control all beach areas, meaning that they also bear the responsibility for beach maintenance. The public trust doctrine is clear on this issue. The solution to this issue is sand mitigation first, then stabilization is still needed. San Clemente is working on a long-term solution and needs the OCTA's help to push it forward. Side dump railcars could easily help shore up specific areas of the beach and bring in low-cost sand from inland sources. Side dump railcars are probably the solution that would be used for rocks. Simply change the material and you will have a partner in this process. I've heard that there's been some discussion about the difficulty of getting sand from a side dump past the rocks. That is literally a five-minute engineering discussion and it could be figured out. We need sand. We do not need this riprap because it decimates our beaches. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next is Robin Davidoff, followed by Brian Yanity, followed by Jordan Sisson. Next, Robin Davidoff.
Hi, this is, yes, this is Robin Davidoff, Sierra Club Seal Society Chair. I've been asked to speak on Item 18, so I will hold off until that comes up on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brian Yanity, followed by Jordan Sisson, followed by Linda Ponce. Brian, go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Hello. Good morning. This is Brian Yanity, Vice President-South of the Rail Passenger Association of California and Nevada, an all-volunteer nonprofit organization representing the interests of rail passengers in the state since 1978. And thank you, Honorable Chair Cummings and Commissioners, for this opportunity to speak today. RailPrac requests that the California Coastal Mission approve the emergency coastal development permit applied for by OCTA to expedite work to stabilize four areas most vulnerable to failure along the railroad track through San Clemente. There have been a series of unplanned closures in the past few years, shutting the track down for months at a time. It's definitely an emergency. Over the next three years, OCTA and its partners need to press on with the short and medium-term projects to protect the rail line. And we really need to look at the bigger picture here, how there's, you know, a vital freight route. We can't have San Clemente or San Diego County, a county of five million people, cut off from the rail network. This is the most environmentally friendly way to move large numbers of people and freight rapidly between the nation's second and eighth largest cities. When the track is closed, the San Diego by and Tijuana by national metro area is again cut off, and then we can't have that happen during the Olympics. So the emergency permit allows us to figure these issues out quickly and not have it delayed forever. They are, anyway, thank you so much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Brian. Next is Jordan Sisson, followed by Lydia Ponce, followed by Mickey Clowney Grayson, followed by Charlie Carnal. Jordan.
Good morning, honorable Commissioners, and thank you, staff, for bringing up my slide. My name is Jordan Sisson. I'm a secret attorney. In short, I want to highlight some key sea level rise policies relevant to this beautiful Santa Barbara region. Next slide, please. There are two key documents adopted last year. This includes your sea level rise policy guidance and the science and policy update also adopted last year. Next slide, three. The plain language of the Coastal Act, such as here, sections make clear that the Coastal Act requires that new development avoid and minimize risk to life, especially where feasible. Next slide, four. That state's sea level rise is clearly unknown across variable risk levels and scenarios in the decades to come. This is reflected here in your sea level guidance, which highlights the need to plan for various scenarios and risk levels. That red box shown in this slide, which is original to page forty-six of the guidance, is recommended for coastal project review. This includes high-risk scenarios. Next slide, five, please. The policy update, which is another document, identifies the risk scenarios in Santa Barbara as shown here. Well, you'll notice that by two thousand, in less than a hundred years, there could be as high as 6.3 feet of sea level rise under the high-risk scenario. Also noteworthy is that the high-risk scenario, there could be five feet of sea level rise as early as 2090, at sixty-five years from now. Next slide, please. The 2024 policy update informs how this commission is to evaluate risk, which is on pages sixty-five and sixty-six. Next slide, please. Some key excerpts there worth noting. There, there is no quantitative calculation to determine risk levels, but there are some helpful guidance. First, when feasible, project design changes are encouraged for extreme risk, high scenarios, such as those projects of high consequence involving public safety impacts. Second, the plain language makes clear that higher scenario is appropriate, necessary, and recommended do not exist. In closing, this commission's been great on public safety. Continue that. Please keep these in mind when you're making decisions and where there's feasible mitigation and design changes available. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jordan. Followed by, we have four more speakers left available on Zoom. So next is Lydia Ponce, followed by Mickey Clowney Grayson, followed by Charlie Carnal, followed by Cindy Harden, and that'll be it.
Good morning, relatives. I just wanted to pop in and say good morning and really have us think about what's going on all around us. Every time we meet, every month, it seems like the world is more upside down and things don't mean what they are supposed to mean. And I specifically wanted to address the yimby-nimby conversation and debates and arguments and full-out vitriol. I'm seeing and reading a lot of opinion pieces when everything that we talked about right now during public comment didn't have any reference to any of the local tribes except for possibly Ponhe. We're doing a huge disservice in having these strong policies for EJ, for environmental justice. You know, anybody wants to erase DEI and have, you know, debates about it, that's on their time. Right here, right now, I'm talking about the yimby-yimby-nimby conversation. And I'd like to not thank Bill McKibben because he was the first one to have that opinion piece printed. And I forget the subscription or the magazine. I think it was Mother, Mother Lode or Mother something. Anyways, my point is that not everybody wants everything in their backyard because so far, everybody wants it somewhere else. And the only thing that people want is to really strongly advocate to erase any road and do away with the California Coastal Commission or the California Coastal Act. Well, it's, that's not the language of environmentalism. And it's a farce when someone says that they're for affordable housing, but out in Barstow. Within this coastal region, we have a lot to offer. Everyone that has a right to live where they deem necessary and possible, blessed by Creator. We need to work together. I don't subscribe to those. I don't speak of yimby or even nimby. I don't, I don't use the, and when people start talking about that, I walk away because the united force behind this is our environment, our earth, Mother. We need to come together, stop with the words of hate and division, and really take, and really take a look at how our oceans and our beaches connect us and continent to continent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mickey Clowney Grayson, followed by Charlie Carnal, followed by Cindy Harden, and then that'll be it. Ms. Mickey?
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Mickey Clowney Grayson. I am here on behalf of Riverside County College District Foundation regarding our sea-to-sea project. As a result, which is today, I'm just thanking you all for allowing this to happen. We've benefited. I'm actually inland and do not live by the coast, but as a result of this, it has allowed inland students to be able to learn more and enjoy the coast. Next slide, please. Next slide. Thank you. Next slide. So basically, our project was designed to be able to target middle school through college-level students, many of whom are low-income first generation, to learn more about college and career choices while at the same time being able to be change agents, to be able to promote conservation, climate change, and clean coast in California. Next slide, please. Many of our students would not have normally had pathways to even know that these majors or careers existed because we're about an hour and a half from beaches and many of our students had never been to beaches. Next slide, please. We've had the opportunity to be able to take students along the coast during the summer and during off, out-of-school time to be able to experience and learn more. Next slide, please. Some of the things that we've also been able to do is even locally and as far as advocating and connecting students to a culture of being able to do advocacy. Next slide, please. Our students have learned about the environmental issues, stewardship, the things that they're able to do to preserve the coast, ocean, and marine environments. They've learned about other careers, marine biology, environmental justice. Next slide, please. And sustainability. Next slide, please. And that's basically it. Thank you for everything that you do with the coastal feedback. Thank you very much for the work that you do, not only on the coast, but even inland to allow us to be able to enjoy the coast. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Charlie Carnal, followed by Cindy Harden, and that should be it.
Hi, good morning, Coastal Commission. This is Charlie Carnal with Unite Here Local 11. As you know, our union has long pushed more affordable access to the coast in line with your Coastal Commission mandate. We encourage you to use all the tools at your disposal. Past precedent shows additional low-cost accommodations should be provided for intensification of uses. Instructive is the Santa Monica Miramar Fairmont. There, the project involved the redevelopment of an existing 301 hotel rooms, with 312 hotel rooms, sixty condos, sixty-six square feet of retail space, three cafe restaurants, and 428 parking spaces. However, the Coastal Commission staff was critical of this project and a vote was taken to delay the project in April of 2021. The project was not approved until the project settled issues regarding affordable accommodation. There, the applicant offered to create an 102-bed pod hotel in Santa Monica outside the coastal zone, which staff objected to. The applicant then offered to pay $5.1 million in mitigation fees, but the staff requested $6.47 of a million. The project was ultimately approved by the Coastal Commission in March of 2022 after thorough discussion and review of the project. This case demonstrates how the commission has encouraged lower-cost amenities, even when the intensification is mostly about non-hotel uses. We want to make sure you use all the tools in your toolbox that improve coastal access. Thank you very much, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Cindy Harden. Cindy, you should be able to unmute yourself.
I'm here. Just hold on. I'm trying to get my camera video. Here we go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your patience. Good morning, Commissioners. Can you all hear me?
Loud and clear.
Perfect. First of all, I want to thank you for all the work that you do. I know that some people are not as appreciative as I and everybody I know of all that the commission does to protect our coast. I am here to talk again about Biona and to ask for a land management plan from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. There has been painstaking restoration of the dunes in Western Area B. And currently, Euphorbia carosima is showing up all over there in the midst of this beautiful restoration where we're seeing El Segundo blue butterflies and other species of concern. The rest area, C, Area A, is full right now of sprouting garland chrysanthemum and more euphorbia castor bean. And every time I go through Biona, which is daily, because I live in Playa Del Rey, my heart breaks at the lost opportunity to make this a really, really special place. It's already special. I mean, 577 acres on the west side of Los Angeles, undeveloped, amazing. Love that part. We have the land. Now the step is to enhance the habitat. Biona is sorely in need of a formal land management plan. Meanwhile, Areas A, B, and C continue to be overrun with all manner of introduced species, and the ecosystem continues to degrade. It is my hope that the department will develop a plan sooner than later. It has the potential to be a crown jewel of the ecological reserve system. Please, Coastal Commissioners, help to make that happen.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy. So next is Scott Grayson. We haven't been able to see him on here. We haven't been able to see him on here. If you can, raise your hand. Use the hand function on Zoom. Scott Greason. All right, then. That completes our general public comments.
All right. Thank you very much. Before we move into general public comment, I do want to note that the, within the executive director's report, there is going to be a report out on the OCTA emergency permit. So if we can keep our comments to items outside of that topic, and we can then follow up with those comments during the executive director's report. So with that, I'll look to the commissioners to see if there's any comments or feedback on what was just discussed during general public comment. Commissioner Escalante.
Good morning, everyone. And I just wanted to reflect on, on the commenters that come and expressed their support for the commission and the coastal act. I just, I think it fills my heart with a lot of hope to hear all that. And I appreciate you guys taking the time of your day to wait, you know, just to make that comment and, you know, during the session. So I appreciate you so much. Thanks.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Adav.
I too really appreciate the support that folks are expressing. I did just want to flag for enforcement staff probably already on it, but that, the comment about the lake near Rancho Galita and the public access issue there. Want to make sure that we're maximizing public access, but also in a way that's inconsistent with the existing permit. So I hope that you take a look at that.
Noted.
Okay. And that's it for me. Thanks.
I too so appreciate all the public comment about their support for the commission. I would encourage anyone who is still listening to call their legislators in the state or call the governor's office and tell them that we are doing a very good job with limited resources that we are given from the state. So if people could do that, it'd be amazingly helpful to us. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? All right. Seeing none. I know that there were some comments made by Unite Here that were general regarding flooding. And I know we do have an item tomorrow on our agenda with a specific project. So I think during that time, it might be worth us discussing or maybe having staff mention as it regards to projects and floodplains, how staff deals with those types of issues because it does vary depending on the area. And sea level rise is not, it's not ubiquitous across the coast. It varies very dramatically depending on location and elevation and all these other factors. So it might be worth us bringing that up. And I'll just note that, like, for example, the city of Santa Cruz's downtown is almost completely in a floodplain, and yet we still develop there. So there are circumstances under which that can happen. And so maybe we can hear more about that tomorrow as it pertains to the specific project. The other point that I wanted to bring up is just as it relates to the Newport Beach mooring. I think that's really important for us to follow up on just given that it seems like it's a very discriminatory policy that if you, for example, were paying for a dock slip, there's not this 25-day requirement versus on a mooring ball. And I think that the points that were raised were very relevant in terms of people, you know, if you have, if you're a teacher and you have three months off, why sit at your mooring ball when you can go and, you know, sail to Hawaii and back within that time period? And it seems, it doesn't seem fair. And it seems like a coastal access issue. And so I hope we can follow up on that as well. And, and yeah, and I shared the other comments that were brought up by commissioners regarding the good work that the Coastal Commission does and how seriously we take this role with the hopes that that can be communicated out to the governor and members of the state legislature. And if there are areas for improvement, that we're able to work together to make sure that we're addressing the concerns that are being raised as well. And so with that, I'll just see if there's any desire to take a break briefly. Okay. So let's, let's take a brief break. Let's come back at 10:45. Actually, 10:43 with the objective of starting at 10:45. All right. Welcome back to the Wednesday, April 9th, 2025 meeting of the California Coastal Commission here in beautiful Santa Barbara. Item number five, Chair's Report. I don't have anything in the report. So then we'll move on to item number six, Executive Director's Report. I'll turn it over to Executive Director Kate Hucklebridge for the Executive Director's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, commissioners. My published Executive Director Report can be found on the commission's website. But per usual, I'll spend a few minutes going over several of the items. For, first off, I wanted to provide a quick update on the public engagement process for the commission's 2026-2030 Strategic Plan Update. Over the last month, we held a series of virtual listening sessions on Zoom that included opportunities for English speakers, Spanish speakers, tribal representatives, and local governments to share their input on what the new strategic plan for the commission should include. We had over 100 participants across the listening sessions and want to thank everyone who was able to provide feedback. The early online feedback public input forum is closed, but comments can still be submitted at any time by emailing strategicplancomments@coastal.ca.gov. And the commission and the public will have additional opportunities to provide input on the public draft in the fall and on the final, in the fall, on the final draft of the strategic plan later this year. So please do check out our website if you have any additional questions or looking for opportunities for input. Next, in late March, I traveled to Washington, DC with our Deputy Director for Statewide Programs, Ashley Reineman, and our Federal Programs Manager, Megan Hall, for the annual meeting of the Coastal States Organization and the NOAA Program Manager Meeting. We covered a lot of ground during those meetings, including continued discussions on possible cuts to federal funding and contraction of the federal workforce, as well as policy topics related to implementation of the Federal Coastal Zone Management Act and potential policy threats to federal consistency authority provided to the states under CZMA. Staff from the Commission, the Coastal Conservancy, the Bay Conservation and Development Commission, and the San Francisco Bay Elkhorn Slough and Tijuana River National Estuarine Research Reserves also met with staff in California congressional offices in support of FY25 and FY26 funding for California's coastal management program. Staff emphasized the critical importance of federal funding for California's coastal planning, regulatory enforcement, research, education, and public access programs, particularly in the face of increasing threats to federal funding and nationwide coastal management policies. Obviously, there is significant uncertainty right now with regard to the future of our coastal management grant funding we receive annually from NOAA under the CZMA. There are also a lot of questions associated with the impact of the continued contraction of the NOAA workforce and what that will mean for our California program and for coastal management programs nationwide. We should know more by the end of the month about the status of funding for upcoming FY25 grant cycle, which is set to start on July 1st of this year, as well as the status of NOAA and its programs. And so we are hoping to give you a more detailed update on all of this at the May hearing. So stay tuned for that. Next, I wanted to report that Kelsey Ducklow from our statewide planning unit attended the annual UC Davis Environmental Law Symposium. This year's theme was resilient by design, climate adaptation, and the future of housing in California. And it included four panels discussing key issues shaping California's future, including affordable housing, climate resilient communities, and resource management. Kelsey presented on a panel related to sea level rise and discussed the importance of proactive and holistic adaptation planning for ensuring long-term resilience of coastal communities, including for both housing and coastal resources. Next, I have a few announcements from our public education program. First, public education will be tabling at three public festivals this month to share with attendees how they can enjoy and protect the California coast. You can join staff at Whale Fest Monterey, at Old Fisherman's Wharf, and the Custom House Plaza on April 12 through 13. LA Sanitation District's Earth Day in Whittier on April 12, and at the State Classy O-Side Earth Day event in Oceanside on April 26. On April 22, the California State Parks and California Coastal Commission's Boating, Clean, and Green Program, along with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife Office of Spill Prevention and Response, will conduct an online oil spill response communication workshop for boating facilities. Details are on our website. California State Parks Casa Gutierrez Art Gallery in downtown Monterey is currently hosting an exhibit with artwork from past winners and honorable mentions of the Coastal Commission's Coastal Art and Poetry Contest for K-12 youth. The exhibit is open to the public through June 28, and I highly recommend you check it out. Finally, we've had some significant retirements that I would like to share with you. Meg Vaughn, Lead Analyst with our South Coast District Office, retired at the end of March. Meg began with the commission in 1990 and remained committed to coastal resource protection in Orange County for her entire 35-year career. Meg has an extraordinary capacity for detail and worked on some of the most complex and controversial projects handled by the district. These included major residential, commercial, and marina projects, mostly centered on the Bolsachica and Huntington Beach wetlands complexes and around Newport Bay and Newport Beach. The extraordinary wildfire in these beautiful open spaces that we, that we can also, the beautiful open spaces that we can enjoy today owe much to Meg's dedication. Excuse me. Meg had particular talent working on local coastal programs in these communities, as well as in Laguna Beach. Sorry. Totally messed up my words here. Always generous with her time and willingness to share her expertise with new staff. She had a hand in training probably dozens of staff over the last several decades, and we're grateful for her work on that front. We are, of course, very sad to see her go, but wish her well and know she will spend her newfound time well with family and with friends. We say goodbye to her and also thank you for all your time and service to our coast. Thank you, Meg. Lastly, we have one more retirement to celebrate and mourn in our Coastal Commission world. If you could bring up my slideshow, please. This hearing will be Billy Clayton's last Coastal Commission hearing before he retires. It is truly the end of an era. So, I know. Billy, so Billy has worked with the Coastal Commission to broadcast, record, and archive our hearings for an incredible 18 years. The Coastal Commission, and tell me if I'm wrong here, but was AGP's first contract at the state. And Billy ran the show from the very beginning. And man, we have put him through the wringer over the years. There's nothing like a technical glitch during a controversial hearing to test your technical problem-solving skills, your ability to stay focused under pressure, and your patience. And Billy has always come through for us. Even more importantly, Billy has helped the commission reach more and more people over the years. Although not technically a public servant, his work with the commission and other state agencies serves the people of California by providing critical access to government decision-making. We are grateful for his dedication to that mission, one that aligns so closely with our own. I could go on and on about Billy's technical prowess, creativity, but there's more. For those of you who don't know, Billy is a gifted musician. Several of my favorite commission memories involve Billy and music. From the pre-hearing mood music over the years to the impromptu jam session in Fort Bragg, to the incredible night we got to hear Billy's band play, to his band's recording of Donna on the Mountain that we got to experience a few years ago in Santa Cruz. Next slide, please. This, to me, is Billy. This picture encapsulates, I think this was taken in Fort Bragg during our impromptu jam session a couple of years ago. Most importantly, Billy is a wonderful human being, and he has truly become part of the Coastal Commission family. For me, he has been the one thing that has remained constant at these commission hearings over the years. Commissioners change, staff changes, but Billy has always been here to keep our operation running smoothly and to offer a kind word or a moment of lightness when things get tense. I know that I speak on behalf of all the staff, Billy, and expressing our deep, deep gratitude for all the time, effort, and care you have put into your work with the commission. We will miss you so much, but we know that you are leaving us in excellent hands. We wish you the very best on your next adventure and hope you will check on us from time to time. And on a personal note, I want you to know that I have a bus-sized parking spot scoped out for you on my street, and I am expecting a visit when you finally get a chance to take to the road. Thank you, Billy. Mr. Chair, that concludes my executive director's report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. I'll open up to the commission to see if there's any comments on items around. Hold on, we got something else.
I, I also have to do my OCTA update. I forgot that was later in my notes. So maybe we want to take a moment and I can come back to that, or if you want me to go to that right now, just let me know.
Let's take a brief moment because the OCTA might go on for a little while. So I'll look to the commissioners to see if there's any comments. Commissioner Hart.
I just want to talk about Billy for a second. I remember after I first got on the commission, you know, I was sort of trying to get a sense of the place and just talking to people. And they said, there's one most important person, the most important person. You better not make this, I could say it in a worse way, but I'll just say, make this person upset. And that is Billy. Don't blow it. And, you know, I remember the first time coming in to a meeting and I felt like I was walking into a concert, you know, Grateful Dead music playing. It was so honoring. It was so cool. And then everything that has happened since then, especially the Donna on the Mountain and everything that we experienced, the incredible, just how meaningful that was, how much you put into that. And Anthony, thank you so much, and everyone in the band, that we were able to pull that off. And Mickey was so honored to play on that. Seriously. And I don't know, there's really no way to express my feelings about you. You are just such an amazing person. And of course, you do a fantastic job, but it's so far beyond that. It's just really made the commission, it's just a different place, a warmer place. It's not just a bureaucracy. You make it into something personal. And I'm just so grateful for you, Billy. And I've told you at the last meeting, it's unacceptable. And I don't know what happened.
That you didn't hear that. But I'll just miss you so much. And I mean, I heard Dana say she might as well leave now, and I kind of can relate. But just thank you so much for your incredible dedication, your professionalism, and your joy and your heart and your soul. Just going to miss you so much. And same deal. I think that there's always going to be a parking place for you at all of our houses. So thank you so much, and thank you for letting me make that comment.
No problem. Commissioner Wilson.
Well, I would have to say ditto, repeat. And I associate myself with all of those kind words. But I do want to emphasize something that I found really amazing about Billy and the, and the crew, and it's just led by Billy, is they're very protective of this, of the people in this space. And I mean that, like, no one pays you guys to be the muscle and the security when things go weird, but it turns out you're really there. And I just want to really, that is kind of above and beyond, and I want to really express some strong thank you for that. I mean, I just, I just, you don't have to do that, right? I mean, it's not, but I just want to say, like, I've been, there have been many times when things are getting a little squirrely with the public or the press, and people are moving in these different directions, and it's getting kind of weird. And you guys are not only dealing with all the technical elements of everything, but you're really helping in just managing the situation and the place. You're like, not just good at your job, but you know, your, your roadie skills are like, bar none. Seriously. Seriously, really appreciate it. So I just want to, and that comes from a feeling of, again, family, and it's not just collegial, it's really, it's something more, and I just want to really appreciate that. I don't have another organization where I feel that from the tech staff, so, thank you.
Commissioner Escalante, and then Commissioner Botchko, and followed by Nofav.
I'll keep it short because I already got rid of my tissue. But Billy's going to, here we go. Thank you for everything. You're awesome, and I've learned a lot from you. And I hate this, I miss you, man. So you have a parking spot in my house, too. I know that I'm far up there, but you know, we love you and we appreciate everything that you have done for this Commission and for us as human beings, so best of luck. I know that you're happy because you're going to go retire and hopefully in your family, but we are very sad. So all our love to you. Thanks, Billy.
Okay, Commissioner Botchko, followed by Nofav, Turnbull Sanders, and Eckley.
Well, I don't even have words, and everything everyone said before is perfect, but I just have to say, the first person I met when I came here to this Commission was Billy. Because Billy's always here. He's here early, he's here late, he's here the day before, he's here the day after. And I used to be a person who was early. And I walked in, and there was this huge room, and this one guy, all hair and beard, and I'm thinking, "What the heck?" I mean, I'd heard, you know, that the Commission was a place of, I don't know, politicians or something. Anyway, I just can't even imagine coming to these meetings and not seeing your wonderful face and your great humor, and again, your proficiency and your friendship. So, and I know you're leaving a great team, I mean, it will be in good hands, but it ain't you, Billy. Anyway.
Commissioner Nofav.
Billy, I aspire to your humanity.
Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
You know, Billy, I just have to say, you have been such a wonderful blessing in times that we are facing now and times past, when the world was whirling around and crazy chaos was happening. We could always count on you to be here for us and also to say a kind word. And my late pastor always said that individuals are non-recurring, and you are like a non-recurring individual, like a star. Nobody is going to be like you. You are a beautiful example of humanity. We've shared talks about reunification with family, we've talked politics, and I just have appreciated your spirit, your generosity, your kindness, and thank you. I'm going to miss you.
Commissioner Eckley.
Thank you. Ditto to what everyone has already said. So Billy, you and I go way back, when I was a young environmental advocate and giving testimony at every single Fish and Game Commission meeting. You were there, and you were always kind and supportive and funny, and then when I showed up here on this Commission, I was like, "Oh, here we go again." And so I just, I appreciate you so much. I'm so sad that you're leaving. I'm very happy for you, and I just want to echo something Commissioner Wilson said, that this feels like a family, and it is the Commission, and it is the staff, and it is the technical support with you at the lead. So thank you for everything. We will miss you, and I can't wait to hear about your adventures.
Commissioner Ranga.
I'll say it again. No! Tell me it ain't true. 18 years, huh? I've been here for 10 of those. It's like I know you, been here. Looking forward to seeing you every month. When I first started, you had that great wonderful music in the beginning and during our lunch breaks. They would come in dancing. Yeah, baby. And you would play the best music. And then, this is a professional organization. I'm here for the dance. And Billy, you made me dance. I went a wonderful way to pass the time with you, your staff. Got to know you all now. And right when I feel like most, the most comfortable, you're leaving. What the hell? Anyway, thank you, Billy, for all your work, for your service. I know you're going to enjoy your retirement, and keep on rocking.
Commissioner Harmon.
Thank you, Chair. Well, Billy, everything that was said, I echo, but I wanted to throw in my own little personal anecdote, one that you probably don't even remember, but when I first joined this Commission was actually during COVID. So my first almost year was remote, and I want to just say that you and your team managed that as actually a miracle. I mean, truly. But when we finally got back to being in person, I remember feeling, coming into my first meeting, I've been on this Commission for about a year, but I don't know anyone, and I felt really sort of disconnected and had a fair bit of anxiety, like coming in. It was almost like my first meeting ever, the first time we were in person. And I remember seeing you before running into anyone else, and you smiled, welcomed me, and I immediately felt this sense of comfort, this family that everyone's talking about. And it occurs to me, you do that without thinking. That's just so to the core of who you are. It's a moment, surely you don't remember, but that is indelibly sort of etched for me in the life of my experience on this Commission. And it's just, from what everyone's saying, for me personally, it's just so, that is so you. And so thank you for making me feel a part of this incredible family. I'll miss you.
Any other Commissioners? Seeing none, well, I share all the same sentiments that have been brought up by the staff and by our Commissioners. I just really want to thank you, not only for your years of service, but for being the rock star that you are and the band that follows you around. I will say that what's been so impressive for me, not only just you in terms of being an amazing human being, but just the amount of care that's put into making sure these meetings run well. I know there's times when you guys are up till like the middle of the night, you know, maybe 3 o'clock in the morning, trying to set everything up and make sure it works, only to having to be back down here at around 8 to double-check it and then sit through meetings, some of which can last, you know, all the way until 10 o'clock plus at night. And the commitment that you all have had to sticking with that over the years just goes to show not only the dedication to your profession, but the dedication to making sure that there's public access and the care that you have around the issues, which I know we've had conversations about. And so I know that, you know, not only do you care about your work, but you care about the Commission and how we're able to help, you know, promote access for folks in the state of California and the various issues that come before us. And so I'm just starting to get to know you better, and I hope that I can continue to get to know you as well, you know, over the course of the next few years as you enter retirement. You guys should come to Santa Cruz and play the Mo's Alley or some of the venues so they can share your music and talent with everybody in our community. But you've definitely made a major impact on the Commission and that will never be forgotten. And so I just want to thank you on behalf of the Commission as well, again, for all of your years of service and for being such an amazing contribution to the Coastal Commission family. And with that, if you'd like to come up to the podium and say a few words, we'd very much like to give you that opportunity.
Thank you, thank you so much. When I came to work for AGP Video, it was to help them begin a new business. I'd been a businessman all my life, and I know I don't look that, but I'm also a rock and roll guitar player, so. But I came thinking I would only be around for a year and help them get software set up and going, but Steve pushed me to this Commission. Said it's the most complicated one, it's the biggest one, we've got more people attend, and you got to run presentations. Anyway, long and short of it, I fell in love. And that's why I've been here for 18 years. The work you guys do goes unappreciated, in my opinion. The people of California set up this Commission. Peter Douglas pushed it, got it on the ballot, and the people of California. This is the only Commission set up by the people of California to protect their coast. And it is their coast. And you've got opposition coming at you now like I've never seen. And they're coming at you to take away your power to protect the coast, but don't let them do it. You represent the people of California. And it really gets forgotten. And anybody that's out there listening and opposing this Commission has no idea what this Commission's really about. Protecting our coast for the people that created this Commission. So to all of you, thank you. It's been a pleasure to serve you. I love you all, and it's why I've been here. Thank you.
All right, I'm sure there's going to be plenty more times for us to hang out with Billy before he rides off into the sunset, but appreciate those comments. And so with that, we'll go back to Executive Director Hucklebridge to move on to the next item in her report, which is OCTA, Orange County Transportation Authority.
Thank you, Chair. We heard a lot of public comment this morning from members of the public who are concerned and interested in what's happening with OCTA, Orange County Transit Authority, and sort of the ongoing work that the Commission has been doing to deal with concerns related to erosion in front of their tracks. So I just thought I would give a real quick update so you know where we are. We did receive an emergency CDP application early last week from OCTA. That application covers four areas along the track that OCTA has identified as vulnerable. The work that's proposed under the ECDP application is the same work generally that we have regular CDP applications and have been reviewing since last year. So we're familiar with the work that they are proposing and have been working towards CDP, regular CDPs for those, that proposed work. So I'll just really quickly cover a little bit of what our current strategy is, just again, so you're aware of it. There are four areas, as I mentioned, Areas 1 and 2. The concern there is flooding from wave action and from the beach side of the tracks. For Areas 1 and 2, staff has reviewed, and we do agree that there's an emergency at this location. We are currently working on an emergency permit that would authorize rebuilding an existing pre-coastal revetment that's in this location, and importantly, adding sand on the beach in front of that revetment. So we, as I mentioned, we're working on that permit. It should be out this week, and we will likely be reporting it next month. Area 3, the concern here is the potential for landslide on the land side of the tracks, so not, a little bit different than the other areas. On this area, we've been working with OCTA on an expedited permitting pathway for the proposed catchment wall and rebuilding of the coastal trail in this location. We had been awaiting information from OCTA so that we could move forward with that CDP, and now we have just received that information as part of this emergency CDP application. So we believe at this point the most appropriate, efficient, and expeditious path is to authorize the bulk of that permanent development as part of an expedited regular CDP that we intend to bring to you for consideration next month. We are planning to authorize some of the initial prep work under an emergency permit so that OCTA can begin some of the early removal of a temporary wall and some of the initial work so they can get started. But expect to see that come before you next month. Area 4, the concern here is similar to Areas 1 and 2 in that it's flooding and wave action from the beach side of the tracks. Here, OCTA has proposed augmenting some areas of existing armoring, new hard armoring, as well as sand placement to address these concerns. And this is the area that most of the speakers specifically referenced. You heard, you know, you saw, that's near the state beach. So in this case, unlike Areas 1 and 2, we do not yet think that OCTA has provided sufficient evidence, at least at this time, to demonstrate that an emergency exists at this location. So we are continuing to work with OCTA. They're submitting new information. We will be reviewing it very quickly, so it's, you know, that call is, as of today. And we will be pushing forward with OCTA to do the reviews they need to do, and we will be expeditiously reviewing whatever comes in front of us and making the call as the information comes in. In the interim, we've encouraged OCTA to move forward quickly with the sand component of that proposed project, and we've committed to an expedited permitting process for that. So that's, you know, that's where we are at this moment. Again, we'll be, there'll be more next month. We're expecting, again, the expedited permit for Area 3 and likely a report out of an emergency permit that will be issued probably later this week. So that's my update. If you have any questions, please let me know.
All right, are there any questions or comments regarding OCTA from the Commission? Okay, Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you. I'm through the Chair. I had a question about one of the comments regarding the 50-foot versus, I believe, 20-foot or 30-foot discrepancy between public beach property and the private property and kind of how that, what is actually being requested, and if we have any reason to believe that the 50-foot is necessary on the state beach side or the public land side, and just why that is not consistent between the two different landowners.
So there's, it's a complicated question, and I probably need to bring out maps of all the different areas to walk through it, but just broadly speaking, I mean, I think our approach has been to limit the rock to the minimum necessary to ameliorate the emergency and to, you know, to protect the tracks. The intent is to keep it within, the rocks within the right-of-way, again, generally speaking. And part of what we are working towards is understanding what exactly the footprint that they're proposing will look like, requiring monitoring pre and post to confirm all that. If it turns out that there, you know, there is rock that's placed, for example, outside of the right-of-way or beyond the footprint that we are approving, that will have to be addressed in the follow-on permit, and that would be subject to additional mitigation or other potential, potentially even removal, depending on the situation.
Great, thanks so much.
Any other questions or comments from Commissioners? Seeing none, I just want to thank you, Executive Director Hucklebridge and the staff for being on top of this and really trying to work towards, you know, getting OCTA to kind of move forward with some of the necessary mitigations to reduce erosion and try to prevent the tracks from going into the ocean. And, you know, my hope is that we can continue to figure out ways that we can use natural mitigations as opposed to rock revetment, just knowing that it increases erosion over time. And I think it'd be helpful at the next meeting if we can have some slides just to show the areas, because it'll be helpful for people to be able to visualize where we're actually talking about putting rock versus where we really want to try to encourage sand replenishment over rock revetment.
And through the Chair, if I might, I just want to make sure I emphasize that for Areas 1 and 2, where we are looking at doing an emergency permit, that did, the proposal does include sand placement, and so our emergency permit authorizes and requires that that sand placement be accomplished. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. We agree sand placement is a critical component, even if we agree rock is necessary in certain areas to protect the track, but there may be other locations where- areas to protect the track, but there may be other locations where a sand placement might be a standalone solution. We're still looking into that for other areas.
Thank you so much. And then, and is that, does that conclude the executive director's report?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Before we move on, I do also just want to acknowledge Meg Vaughn's 35 years of service to our commission. I mean, for people who dedicate their lives and their entire careers to serving with a single institution, especially one that can be as complex and controversial as the Coastal Commission, I just really think that it's outstanding that she's decided to, you know, dedicate her life and service to protecting our coast for the people of California and helping us navigate so many challenging issues and projects. And so I really just want to say on behalf of the commission that we really, truly appreciate her years of service and wish her the best in her retirement as well. All right. With that, let's keep moving on. The next item is Commissioner Correspondence. Is there any Commissioner Correspondence to be discussed for potential action? Seeing none, let's move on to item number seven. This is our legislative report, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Drake for a presentation on this item.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. This is item 6C, the legislative report for April. We have a number of updates on bills this morning. Staff is also bringing analyses of three bills to you today. But first, let me begin with an update on the legislative session. At this point in the session, most bills are working their way through policy committees in their house of origin. May 2nd is the deadline for fiscal bills to pass out of their policy committees. Bills that do will move into the appropriations committee. Bills that do not pass out of their policy committees will become two-year bills, meaning that they'll go dormant until next year, at which point they can either move again, turn into something else, or die permanently. The written legislative report looks quite different than it did last month. Most of the new bills that were listed as spot bills last month have been amended into substance. A few of those bills were amended to concern things unrelated to the coast or the commission, and so they've been removed. Other spot bills have been amended to address various topics relevant to the coast, and the report summarizes the amendments for each bill. Housing continues to be a point of focus for the legislature this year. Over 160 bills have been introduced that seek to streamline housing permitting and production in various ways. And there are several common approaches being taken this year to try to expedite the creation of new housing. A number of bills would create exemptions from SEQA or other environmental statutes such as AB 609 by Assemblymember Wicks and SB 607 by Senator Weiner, both of which would create SEQA exemptions for infill housing broadly. Other bills would establish new ministerial review processes for certain types of housing projects like adaptive reuse projects, single-family homes, or homes that are rebuilt after a disaster. Another group of bills would declare certain housing developments to be an allowable land use regardless of zoning, such as AB 1021 by Assemblymember Wicks, which would allow housing on land owned by a local education agency, or SB 79 by Senator Weiner, which would allow housing near transit stops. A fourth type of bills would create new standardized processes for housing. For example, AB 1294 by Assemblymember Matt Haney would replace all current permitting processes for housing with a new statewide application form for housing projects. Local governments would be prohibited from asking for information beyond what's on that new form. A number of these bills, including the ones I just mentioned, are relevant to the coastal development permit process, and those bills are listed in this month's legislative report. Additionally, several new bills emerged in the past month that would amend the Coastal Act directly. First is SB 484 by Senator John Laird, which also relates to housing. This bill would direct the commission by July 2027 to identify infill areas within three local jurisdictions that currently do not have a certified LCP. In these areas, the commission would categorically exclude future 100% affordable housing projects from needing to obtain a CDP from the commission. These categorical exclusion areas would remain in effect for 10 years, and then at the end of that period, the bill would require the commission to submit a report to the legislature identifying the number of affordable housing projects that were built using the categorical exclusions. That bill passed out of the Senate Natural Resources and Water Committee yesterday, and it'll be heard next in the Senate Housing Committee. Another new bill that would amend the Coastal Act is AB 1023 by Assemblymember Mike Gibson from the southern LA area. This bill would transfer coastal development permit authority from the commission and from the city of Los Angeles to the Port of LA for permitting the port's zero emissions port electrification project, specifically the parts of the project that are outside of the port's boundaries. This would effectively remove the project from the commission's jurisdiction. Staff are currently encouraging the Port of LA to explore an expedited approval of the project from the commission, which could be completed without legislation and likely faster than this bill could be signed into law. That bill is in the Assembly Natural Resources Committee. One other newly amended bill to mention this month is AB 1086 by Assemblymember Murat Succi. This bill would direct the California Air Resources Board in consultation with other state agencies, including the commission, to establish an expedited permitting process for marine carbon dioxide removal projects. As part of the expedited permit process, the bill would require all permit applications for marine carbon dioxide removal projects, including CDPs, to be acted on within six months of submittal. Staff are currently evaluating this measure. Lastly, with respect to AB 10, which would have overturned the commission's October 2024 objection to the increase in rocket launches at Vandenberg Space Force Base, the author of that bill, Assemblymember Bill Assale, resigned from his seat last week after being appointed by the president to be the U.S. Attorney for California's Central District. As a result, that measure will no longer be moving. With that, Chair Cummings, I can pause in case there are any questions about the bills in the legislative report. Before we move into the three bill analyses, staff is prepared.
Okay. Commissioner Bosco.
Are you going to be discussing the Laird bill more in this?
The Laird bill, the language of the bill came into print last week. We're evaluating it now. Staff really appreciate the intention to expedite affordable housing, particularly in uncertified jurisdictions. We don't have an analysis prepared for the commission today.
Oh, okay. I was just, I was a little confused as to what it means, that we would, we would look at three distinct areas that he singled out and then pre-exempt, in a way, those areas that they aren't ESHA or whatever. And then 10 years from then, we would report how many affordable projects were built?
If I may, through the chair. The Coastal Act already contains a process for the commission to identify areas where certain development would be categorically excluded from needing to obtain a CDP. So along the lines of what you described, this bill would direct the commission to identify such areas in three currently uncertified jurisdictions and say essentially, in these areas, 100% affordable housing projects do not need a CDP. And then in 10 years, the commission would circle back with the legislature with documentation of how many affordable housing projects were constructed through these categorical exclusions.
Okay. I mean, but that doesn't put any onus on us to keep track of affordable housing, since we're not building it, we're just exempting it.
The bill has a small process just for developers to touch in with the commission to say, we're proposing this 100% affordable housing projects within the categorical exclusion area. The commission would provide kind of a documentation confirming that exclusion. That would allow the commission to track the number of projects that are using this cat X. And that's what would go into the report that would be submitted to the legislature.
Thanks so much.
Commissioner Hart.
Thanks so much, Mr. Drake, and really encouraged by the Senator Laird's bill. I think it's a very exciting moment to see this kind of collaborative approach. I shouldn't say collaborative, I mean, it ultimately would be collaborative among the commission, developers, the state, to really move forward with our goal of building affordable housing on the coast. And we heard so much about that today from our commenters, both affordable housing and of course, affordable overnight accommodations. So I just wanted to express my gratitude to Senator Laird and his staff for moving forward with that bill. I wanted to ask you to talk a bit about AB 462. First of all, where it is right now, what's going on with the bill, but also, one of the questions I have is whether it's somehow combined with these SEQA bills? Are they moving forward as a group and what you anticipate as it moves into the Senate, if it does?
If I may, staff actually has prepared an analysis of that bill, which I'll get to in just a moment, so we can walk through that fully, including the status of the bill.
Any other questions at this time? Commissioner Lofoff and then Commissioner Bosco.
Well, I just wanted to add that the Laird bill is proposing something that we've talked about, about proactively identifying areas that are appropriate for affordable housing, which is the critical need in the coastal zone. So I'm encouraged to see that move through one committee, and I look forward to hearing how it progresses. Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson and then Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Thanks. This is not on the list, but there's Bill AB 770, which is a modification to the Outdoor Advertising Act. It could potentially, it basically says that if passed, it would, as far as my reading of it, and I, we need to, not we, but I need to do more research on this, but it looks like it allows for the replacement of billboards with new materials, meaning wood to metal, with no analysis, and redefines maintenance as a complete rebuild of those structures. And that can be in sensitive habitats or even on public lands when they are not surveyed, because many we have found to actually exist on public land. So I just want to highlight that there because of the scenic issues around that, as well as potential impacts to sensitive resources. So thanks.
Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Just wanted to go back to the intro, Mr. Drake, on the May 2nd deadline. Could you just repeat that? So the May 2nd deadline is the deadline for it to get out of the policy committee. If not, it becomes dormant. And then what's next after that?
So May 2nd is the deadline for bills that have been tagged as having a fiscal impact to pass out of their policy committees and move into the appropriations committee. After that, if they pass out appropriations, they would go to the floor of their first house. If a bill hasn't been tagged as having a fiscal impact, it has one more week, so until May 9th, to pass out of its policy committees. And then, assuming it does, it would go directly to the floor.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments? I'm going to share my comments at the end after we get through the analysis and after we go out to public comment. So if you want to continue on with the analyses of the bills that you've listed, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. So as I mentioned at the top, staff are presenting three bill analyses today, and you can find those beginning on page 16 of staff's written report. The first bill is AB 439 by Assemblymember Chris Rogers. This bill would make two changes to the Coastal Act. First, the bill would make it so that de minimis amendments to a local government's certified LCP or a port's certified port master plan, or PMP, take effect as soon as they're approved by the commission. Currently, the Coastal Act provides an expedited process that the commission can use to approve LCP amendments and PMP amendments that are determined to be de minimis, meaning they have no impact on coastal resources. This process does include public noticing and engagement, both at the local level and at the commission, but the timelines for how quickly the commission reviews and acts on de minimis amendments are condensed. When the executive director approves a de minimis amendment and the commission concurs, the amendment is approved. However, under the current language of the Coastal Act, when a de minimis amendment to an LCP or a PMP is approved, it doesn't actually take effect for 10 days. These 10 days don't serve a legal purpose, as no additional procedural steps occur during this time. It is simply a waiting period between the commission approved the amendment and when the local government or the port can use the amended policy to make permitting decisions in their jurisdiction. AB 439 would remove this waiting period and instead establish that de minimis amendments take effect as soon as the commission approves them and adjourns. This change would allow local governments and ports to move slightly more quickly in permitting projects in their jurisdictions and without weakening Coastal Act policies or public engagement procedures. The second thing AB 439 would do is standardize the requirements that govern the commission's periodic reporting to the legislature about its enforcement work. Under the current language of the Coastal Act, the commission is required to submit a report to the legislature every year on its enforcement activities and implementation of its administrative penalty authority. But the scope of this report is specifically limited to enforcement cases that did not involve public access violations. This quirk in the reporting requirement is an unintended byproduct of the fact that the legislature gave the commission administrative penalty authority in two installments, first for access-related violations and then later for non-access-related violations. But in practice, reporting on just the non-access-related violations can be clunky, since many Coastal Act violations involve a mixture of access and non-access-related components. The requirement to submit the report every year also places a workload burden on enforcement staff that can limit their capacity to work on resolving violations efficiently. AB 439 would address these issues by broadening the scope of the report to include all violations of the Coastal Act while relaxing the reporting frequency from every year to every five years. This will result in the commission providing more comprehensive information about its enforcement work to the legislature, but with a frequency that will allow enforcement staff to spend less time writing reports and more time resolving violations. So to recap, AB 439 would make two helpful adjustments to the Coastal Act, one to streamline de minimis LCP and PMP amendments, and another for the commission's periodic reporting on its enforcement activities. These changes would provide modest increases in agency efficiency without diminishing public engagement or weakening coastal protections. So for these reasons, Mr. Chair, staff is recommending that the commission support AB 439.
Thank you very much. I just want to get a clarification on in terms of process. Do we, will we need to then go out to the public, to get public comment at this point in time and then come back for each of the items, or?
We would typically do public comment for all of them at once.
Okay.
Apparently, no one has signed up.
Yeah, no, there's no, no one signed up for public comment.
Okay. Well then, so we'll just continue on with, so then we should continue on with the other items and at the end, vote? Or do we, okay. Are there any comments on this item?
You don't want a motion for each one individually?
There's only one for which we're requesting a vote today? And yes, you would, if there were more than one, there would be an individual motion.
Because I'm prepared to make the motion if, when it's appropriate.
Okay. Are there any comments on this item at this point in time? Seeing none, maybe let's go through the other analyses, since there's other actions on those. We'll come back at the end, and then we'll take action.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The other two bills staff is presenting today are AB 462 and AB 357. Both of these bills would exempt certain types of housing from the Coastal Act. As I'll get to in a moment, staff has policy concerns with both bills in their current form and believes the author's goals could be achieved more productively through alternative approaches. Staff are currently coordinating with the author's offices, the bill's sponsors, and the relevant committees to try to work toward mutually agreeable resolutions. For this reason, staff is not recommending the commission take positions on these bills at this time. However, we wanted to bring analyses of both bills today to provide information both to the commission and to the public. I'll begin with AB 462, which is by Assemblymember Josh Lowenthal and co-authored by Assembly Speaker Rivas. This bill would exempt the construction of accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, in Los Angeles County's coastal zone from the Coastal Act. The bill would also, going forward, exempt ADUs in the coastal zone of any county that is subject to a governor's state of emergency for an event that damaged or destroyed housing. Based on conversations with the author's office, we understand the intention behind the proposed exemption as to expedite housing construction in times of emergency so that ADUs can be permitted as quickly in the coastal zone as they are in other parts of the state. Currently, state ADU law contains a provision known as a Coastal Act savings clause, which states that ADU law doesn't supersede the Coastal Act and also that local governments aren't required to hold public hearings for ADU permits. This ensures that ADUs in the coastal zone are cited and designed to be consistent with the state's policies for public coastal access, coastal resource protection, and climate change adaptation, and that local governments are quickly approving permits for ADUs through an expedited administrative process. The commission has worked closely with local governments over the years to update LCPs to include streamlined permit processes for ADUs. The commission also, excuse me, uses the streamlining tools of the Coastal Act to expedite ADUs proposed in the uncertified areas of the coastal zone where the commission is the primary permitting authority. The result of this work is that ADU production has accelerated in the coastal zone, as it has throughout the state, and in a way that is consistent with state coastal policies. As detailed in staff's analysis, local governments are approving As detailed in staff's analysis, local governments are approving hundreds of CDPs for ADUs every year. An exceedingly small percentage of these permits, about 2% on average, are appealed to the commission. As the commission well knows, a fraction of those appealed permits can raise substantial issues, such as ADUs the commission has reviewed that would have impacted public access easements, been built in deed-restricted habitat areas, reduced existing density, or put residents in danger from coastal hazards. However, even on appeal, the commission consistently works with the property owner to resolve issues and approve the permit. In the past four years, the commission has denied only one ADU project, and in that case, the ADU would have replaced existing housing rather than adding density, as ADUs are intended to do. Also, in the few uncertified jurisdictions where the commission is still the primary permitting authority, the commission expedites most ADU approvals using administrative permit waivers. Last year, the average time it took the commission to process those waivers for complete ADU applications was 23 days. By exempting ADUs from needing to comply with the Coastal Act, this bill would gradually make obsolete years of state and local planning policies that have been effectively harmonizing coastal policy and ADU production. This will result in less carefully planned development by allowing ADUs to be built in areas that are vulnerable to sea level rise, negatively impact wetlands and habitat, or in approach on public access easements. Moreover, the exemption proposed by the bill would not kick in until a disaster has already struck an area. These considerations raise the question of whether the proposed approach is the most effective way to further expedite ADU construction. ADUs are a vital tool in California's efforts to address the housing crisis, but as with other types of housing in the coastal zone, building ADUs and protecting sensitive coastal resources and public coastal access are not mutually exclusive. And in fact, taking environmental considerations into account makes ADUs in coastal areas safer. There are more effective ways the state could achieve the author's goal of streamlining ADU approvals in the coastal zone while also maintaining climate-sensitive resources and coastal act considerations. For example, while many coastal local governments have already updated their LCPs to streamline ADU permits, if all coastal jurisdictions were required to do that, ADUs would be expedited throughout the coastal zone. Alternatively, the legislature could consider requiring applications for local ADU permits to be acted on within 60 days, which is currently the case in inland areas. The result of these other approaches would be ADUs built sooner and more quickly in more areas of the coast than the proposed approach of waiting until a disaster triggers an exemption. These other approaches would also safeguard resources and coastal access for the long-term benefit of the public. In terms of the status of the bill, AB 462 passed out of the assembly last week, and it is now in the Senate Rules Committee awaiting referral to policy committees. The bill has an urgency clause, meaning that should it pass out of the legislature and be signed into law, it would take effect immediately. Staff are currently in conversation with the author's office and speaker staff about the potential unintended consequences of the current language, and about alternative approaches to more productively achieve the goal of making sure ADUs are built as quickly in the coastal zone as out. Given these ongoing conversations, staff is not recommending that the commission take a position on the bill at this time. We will continue to update the commission on the bill's progress, and may bring updated analyses to the commission in the future as needed. Mr. Chair, I'll pause there, in case there are any questions about AB 462, before I move on to the next bill.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on AB 462? Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Hart?
His, maybe a little less of a question, a comment of just, the anxiety I've heard from folks, even in my region, about this is around the coastal access element of this, and so just cautionary tales, especially in very tight locations where we have coastal access that's needed, and then things happen very quickly, and things are just built over the top of coastal access. So I just want to emphasize that, and I don't know what language negotiations around that there are, but I just wanted to say that I've heard that anxiety. And then, in, it appears in my experience, and we've talked about these, a lot of the conflicts we've seen in the past around ADUs that have come to the commission have a lot to do with parking, and parking requirements of local jurisdictions, and then the, also the interpretations of that that we've had maybe in the past, and so there's an arc of change related to that. And so addressing that, you know, in the more immediate, before waiting for disasters to occur, and I see what you're saying, it's like, if we can, if we can do just better ADU policy coastwide now, why wait to, for disasters to do that? And I, those are my comments, and I appreciate the work you guys are doing on this. I'm hopeful we'll get someplace that actually does more, better ADUs. Thanks.
Commissioner Hart, and then Commissioner Nofen.
I have several questions, Sean. First of all, with regard, the part of the bill that's focused on LA, in the area that was impacted by the disaster, the governor has exempted all, there is no, why don't you put it in your words, what his emergency declaration was?
The governor has suspended the provisions of the Coastal Act as it relates to ADUs that are built in the areas affected by the LA fires. I will mention that the language of that document does provide some sideboards preventing ADUs from being built in public access areas or areas that are vulnerable to hazards. That language, or similar sideboards, is not present in the language of the bill, and so we do observe potential for tension there.
Between the governor's office and the legislature?
As it relates to how that suspension and this proposed exemption would play out in the area affected by the Southern California fires specifically.
So even in the case of this horrific disaster in Los Angeles, and the governor's actions, which were very important, nevertheless included these provisions to protect public access?
That's correct.
But in this particular bill, it's not just in an area that is impacted by the disaster, it's the entire county. In this case, it would apply to the entire county of LA, or any county that declares disaster. For example, in Sonoma County, where the disaster didn't, our multiple fire disasters impacted inland areas, this would then apply it to the coast?
That's correct. So at any point, if there's an emergency declaration for a county, regardless of where the subject disaster occurred, in or out of the coastal zone, that would trigger the proposed exemption of ADUs in that county's coastal zone.
Including in the local coast plan? So there'd be no county oversight, and there would be no coastal, would, so in Sonoma County, I'm just trying to relate it to my own situation. So in my county, so we have an LCP, which was just approved recently. So in, can you play that out for me? There's a fire inland, emergency's declared, people want to build ADUs at the coast. How would that work?
So, God forbid, there's a disaster in inland Sonoma County that results in a governor's emergency declaration. That would trigger the exemption proposed by this bill, which would mean that, once that declaration is made, if an individual in Sonoma County's coastal zone wanted to construct an ADU, they would not be required to obtain a CDP or similar approval from the local government, if they're in an LCP jurisdiction, or from the commission, if they're in an uncertified area.
So they could build, they could completely prevent access to the coast in that case? Completely? There would be no way to prevent that from happening?
Staff has identified that, I think, along the lines of examples that have come before the commission previously, there are instances in which a property may have a public access easement, for example, and in the situation we re-described, where an individual wanted to build an ADU, the public access policies of the LCP, or of the Coastal Act, would not become, would not be considered as part of considering whether that ADU would impact public access, should it be on or near that easement.
And in the same way, it could be built in an area, I mean, Sonoma County, as we know, the largest Caltrans project to date, just happening at Gleason Beach, all of those houses that were built could, you know, fell into the ocean, requiring this major managed retreat project. So in that case, the remaining houses that are perched on that cliff could build ADUs if a disaster were declared in the county. Would that be the situation?
The resident, the property owner wouldn't be required to obtain a CDP for the ADU, and so that's to say that the local government, or the commission, depending on who the permitting authority is, would have no opportunity to evaluate whether that ADU would be vulnerable to hazards, impacting public access, and so the property owner would be able to proceed with construction irrespective of the policies of the LCP or of the Coastal Act.
Yeah, and what we saw in Sonoma County at Gleason Beach was the construction of those houses in that area resulted in a huge impact on taxpayers, because the entire highway had to be moved in, lots of restoration had to occur. I mean, the impact of this on taxpayers could be monumental, if houses are built in a way that, that is not consistent with the Coastal Act. So, I mean, that's a major concern. With regard to what is being proposed, the 60-day approval, so what your, what our staff is putting forward is this idea that, consistent with the rest of the state, ADUs would have to be approved within 60 days, either by the local government or the commission.
ADU law currently requires that, outside of the coastal zone, local permits for ADUs are required to be acted upon within 60 days of having a complete application. And so among several alternative approaches, the staff have identified that this bill could take for achieving what we understand to be the author's goal, of really creating kind of an equal timeframe, both in and out of the coastal zone. One way that that could potentially be achieved is to apply that requirement to local coastal development permits for ADUs, so that it's 60 days whether you're in the coastal zone or not.
And so then that would mean that, at the, at the time, that that legislation, if this were amended, it would apply whether there's a state of emergency or not. So it would have a much broader effect, I guess that's your point, to allow ADUs to be really, ADU development really to be accelerated in a way that doesn't, protects coastal access and doesn't put houses and ADUs in an area that where they could, could be very damaging. So to me, that seems absolutely like it would really accelerate the building of ADUs, and it would be so positive. So saying that, I'm curious why the commission couldn't take a position to support that approach, or why you're not advocating for that.
I think that staff are still, so staff have identified a couple different approaches along the lines of ways to expedite ADUs in the coastal zone, and kind of create these equal timeframes, both inside the coastal zone and outside of the coastal zone. The 60-day concept that you just alluded to is one of them. At the same time, you know, we're cognizant that this is absolutely a priority for the legislature, and that the author is wanting to consider, I think, diverse constituencies and coalitions as he's thinking about how to advance this bill quickly through the legislature to address this issue. And so this is something that staff have communicated to the author's office as a possibility, among several others. But we understand as well that we're not the only voice in the room trying to kind of further this important priority. And so for that reason, I think we're trying to, we have provided, I think, a menu of considerations for the author to think through as he's moving forward on this.
Well, now it's in the Senate, and it's no longer an urgency bill, or is it?
The bill still has an urgency clause. I would observe that the urgency clause does not create a specific timeframe on which the bill moves through the legislature. It only pertains to how quickly it would take effect, should it pass and be signed.
So will the commission have an opportunity to determine whether they should support the bill, or support the 60-day type approach in May, or will that be too late?
Considering the bill is in rules and hasn't been referred to policy committees yet, you know, I can't say with absolute certainty, but it appears that the bill will still be moving come May, and possibly beyond that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Nofen.
Yeah, I look forward to hearing further discussion about this in May, and I just wanted to, you know, reiterate how on consent and in administrative agenda, how commission is already expediting ADUs wherever possible, in, within developed areas and in infill. And I think that that is, but I think also looking at the importance of maintaining existing long-term housing, and looking at the ADUs as augmenting housing and affordable housing, not to be taken into, you know, vacation rentals or something. So I think that that's really one of the things that the commission has done a good job of looking at, in terms of maintaining and increasing existing, and increasing affordable housing. So that's the type of approach that is important in the coastal zone, where we have such an affordability crisis. And I would like to hear more reported, hope the author would take into consideration the importance of that. Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly.
I just had a follow-on question on the same item. It seems as though there isn't language around when the, this, the permitting exemption would close, so there is a declaration of the state of emergency, which would then trigger this exemption for ADUs, but then, does someone have to apply for an ADU permit within the stated declaration of emergency, or it's just ongoing?
So, if I may, through the chair, two points there. Once an exemption is triggered in a county, there would be no application process. So the property owner would just be able to construct an ADU without needing to go through the coastal development permit process. Additionally, to your, kind of the beginning of your question, once that exemption is triggered, it's permanent. And so the sort of sequence that this bill would create is gradually, across California's 15 coastal counties, ADUs would become exempt on a piecemeal county-by-county basis, on whatever timetable disasters occur that triggered emergency declarations in those counties.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I just want to thank our staff for proactively working with members of the state legislature to bring up the concerns that are often raised here, and the concerns that the staff has around some of these bills. I think we've heard some more concerns today that hopefully staff can take back to the authors of these bills, with the hopes that we can get to some area of mutual agreement, while, you know, preserving the Coastal Act and helping to advance production of housing. And I guess if there's one comment I would make, as it relates to some of these bills, it's just also taking into account insurance, and how we've been seeing that in many hazardous zones, folks are getting dropped from their insurance left and right. We see it mostly happening in the high-fire zones, but as we continue to see increased coastal erosion and impacts on our coast through storms and sea level rise, it's likely that we're going to start seeing people starting to get dropped from their homeowners' insurance as it relates to flooding and sea level rise impacts as well. And so I just hope that we're keeping that as part of the conversation, and just look forward to hearing back on progress that's being made with trying to work with members of the legislature on these bills, so we can have bills that harmonize housing with the Coastal Act. What's up? Commissioner Wilson?
I just thought there was one more analysis.
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last bill staff is bringing to you today is AB 357 by Assemblymember David Alvarez from San Diego. Like the last bill, staff is not recommending that the commission take a position on that bill at this time. This bill would exempt university housing projects from the Coastal Act. Under the Coastal Act, university and college lands are part of the commission's retained jurisdiction, meaning that the commission maintains permitting authority on university campuses, even if the local jurisdiction has a certified LCP. To promote comprehensive planning and efficient development on university campuses in the coastal zone, the Coastal Act has a process whereby a university or college may submit its long-range development plan, which is a planning document that universities statewide already prepare, to the commission for certification. Once the commission certifies a long-range development plan, or LRDP, as being consistent with the public access and resource protection policies of the Coastal Act, all future development on the campus goes through an expedited approval process. So when a university with a certified LRDP wants to develop, rather than applying to the commission for a permit, the university submits a notice of impending development, or NOD. Upon receiving a complete NOD submittal, the commission has 30 days to approve it. The commission may put conditions on a NOD approval to ensure that the university is developing consistent with its own LRDP, but the commission cannot deny a NOD. There are four universities whose main campus is located fully or partly in the coastal zone: UC Santa Barbara, Pepperdine University near Malibu, Point Loma and Nazarene University, which is near San Diego, and UC San Diego, whose campus straddles the coastal zone boundary. Two of these four schools, UCSB and Pepperdine, have a certified LRDP. There are, there are also several universities whose campuses are outside of the coastal zone, but who maintain marine labs on the coast, and have certified LRDPs for those marine labs, and those are UC Santa Cruz and UC Davis. AB 357 would exempt university housing projects from the Coastal Act, meaning that universities would no longer submit a NOD to the commission if they have a certified LRDP, or apply for a CDP from the commission if they don't have a certified LRDP. This proposal raises... This proposal raises several fundamental policy concerns. The first is a threshold question of whether the proposed exemption would result in more university housing. The very purpose of the Coastal Act's LRDP process is to expedite the development of all university projects, including housing. And the commission has a strong track record of approving thousands of university housing units over the years, both on campuses that have LRDPs and those that don't. Exempting university housing from the Coastal Act would significantly diminish the utility of certified LRDPs. After all, LRDPs promote strategic planning, through which a university evaluates how projects in different parts of a campus could be developed to operate in concert to best serve students, faculty, and staff. In this way, LRDPs create a holistic planning vision, composed of projects, all of which serve multiple benefits, and then it expedites the construction of those projects. Several examples of multi-benefit university housing projects previously approved by the commission can be found in staff's written report. These projects were made better and safer for the fact that coastal policy considerations were taken into account during project development. These are the sorts of considerations that AB 357 would eliminate. So, while it is certainly vital that universities and colleges provide adequate housing, this bill would eliminate the tool that currently expedites university housing projects in the coastal zone, while also making our coastal university campuses livable, sustainable, and resilient. While there are ways the legislature could continue to enhance the efficacy of the LRDP process in the Coastal Act, exempting university housing projects from the Coastal Act altogether, we believe would unnecessarily sacrifice the many benefits of LRDPs. In terms of status, AB 357 has been referred to the Assembly Natural Resources Committee and will be heard later this month. In recent weeks, we have had informative conversations with both the author's office and the bill sponsors to learn about their goals for the bill. From these conversations, there seems to be a focus on wanting to prevent situations where requirements to set aside significant space on campuses for private parking constrains the university's ability to build housing. Staff believes this bill could effectively address that issue around parking without needing to wholesale exempt university housing from the Coastal Act. We're continuing to work with the relevant stakeholders to hopefully move towards such a solution. Staff will continue to update the commission as the bill moves forward, including potentially bringing updated analyses and recommendations for action. For the time being, staff is recommending that the commission not take a position on AB 357 at this time while we continue that work. With that, Chair Cummings, I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, that concludes the legislative report.
All right. Any questions on AB 357? Commissioner Wilson.
Thanks. Again, parking, ha! So, which honestly has, you know, 85% of our controversy over the past, having, and our conflicts with those groups and agencies that we've had conflicts around park, like so much of this. So, I do appreciate the emphasis, and I think that we can really get to where we need to be if we can address that issue more succinctly. And so, I'm appreciative of the work that you're doing on that. So, and we just really had a good time over here, just got to say the word "NOD." So, that was, what, so, yeah, I just, and the other question I have around this is, it sort of has this nebulous space around nonprofits and other organizations that are building student housing, and my question would be like, you get those exemptions, and then, is there, is there any requirements that that remains student housing for the long term, or is there, you know, is this a potential loophole for development that's transferable when you're talking about non-public-owned properties? So, what I'm seeing here is it looks like it could apply to non-public, like privately-owned projects that then may decide not to do student housing down the line, and I don't know if there would, there would be safeguards around that sort of situation.
Through the chair, there are a couple aspects of the bill's definition of student housing that you might describe as squishy. One of those is, the bill would exempt university housing, which is housing for students, faculty, and staff, but also all associated facilities that are connected to or built as a part of that housing, which seems like a flexible space, which is something commission staff are trying to understand a little more clearly, based on how that definition has been used as it's codified in the education code. The other piece is, I think, what you just touched on, which is, the definition also includes housing that is built through agreements between a university or college and a nonprofit partner. Frankly, that's a space in which staff still needs to do additional research to see what that landscape looks like. We're not, I think we're still coming up to speed on how prevalent these sorts of agreements are, if there's any standardization to what their contents look like, and just kind of what this housing tends to look like and be used for over time. And so, I think that's an area of continued focus for staff, as we understand, I think, the full scope of what the proposed exemption would include.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, it just actually occurred to me with this that this is not, this is exemptions for housing that can be either on-campus or off-campus. And I will say that I know, from our experience in Santa Cruz, there's a real desire to have student housing on-campus, just due to the impacts it has on available housing off-campus for just people who live in the community. And I think that's a really big factor to take into consideration, because with the impacts a lot of communities are facing with trying to just build housing on the limited land that we have, even to meet our arena target numbers, if that available land is then bought by the UC for the purposes of constructing housing that's exempt from the Coastal Act, it really puts pressure on the local jurisdiction around its ability to be able to utilize the very limited land that we have to build housing for residents. And so, that just kind of occurred to me, and I think that that should definitely be taken into consideration when speaking with the authors on this bill. And so, if there's no further questions or comments on this, just want to thank you all for your analyses. Look forward to hearing how the conversations play out at the state legislature. And there is one action that needs to be taken, and I believe that Commissioner Nortoff is willing to move the item as it pertains to, just getting the bill up here, it is...
AB 439.
439. So, go ahead.
Okay. I move that the commission support AB 439, and I recommend a yes vote.
Second, can I speak to my second for a second?
Sure.
Which is, I appreciate my assembly member's work on this, and so, that's great. And please carry the message to the bill's authors that were analyzed here, that, at least I, and I feel my colleagues strongly support the goals of all of these bills, which is to advance housing, not just in the coastal zone, but everywhere. There's a real need, and there's a need to make modifications to our, to all of these processes, and to get to that place, and we're diligently and want to be there to help make that happen. So, thank you.
All right. So, a motion by Commissioner Nortoff, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. I'll turn it to Ms. Miller for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Campio.
Yes.
Campio, yes. Commissioner Baczko.
Yes.
Baczko, yes. Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg.
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Nodoff.
Aye.
Nodoff, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Yes.
Turnbull Sanders, yes. Commissioner Uranga.
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Chair Cummings.
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you very much. Okay. Real quick, Mr. Drake, did you have anything else to add? Nope. For the next item, because if we can get through the LCP grants program pretty quickly, then we can then end there and then go to lunch. And so, if that's the case, then I'll turn it back to our executive director to move on with that item.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we have our presentation coming up from statewide planning, and they'll be online.
Can I get the slides up, please? Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm here to present an LCP grant application from the city of Oceanside for your consideration. Staff is recommending approval. As a reminder, the LCP grant program has been running for just over 10 years, and it has awarded $24.6 million to 47 jurisdictions to support LCP development or updates with a special emphasis on addressing impacts from climate change and sea level rise. Most recently, the Budget Act of 2021 appropriated $31 million to the Coastal Commission, both to award to local governments as grants and to support Coastal Commission staff administering the program and working with local governments. If this grant is awarded today, we will have about $4 million left to award between now and June 2026, so we continue to encourage our local government partners statewide to apply. Next slide, please. The commission has updated its adopted priorities and evaluation criteria for the grant program over time to better reflect the current state of coastal resiliency planning and to ensure efficient use of funds. Eligible grantees include local governments responsible for developing and amending LCPs, and eligible projects are those that assess, plan for, and adapt to the impacts of climate change and sea level rise, and which contain an LCP planning component. The program prioritizes technical studies and outreach, environmental justice, adaptation planning at various scales, and work on LCPs. The commission has also made a series of adjustments to the application process over time to streamline it and make it more accessible to local governments. Currently, all grant applications can be submitted and awarded on a rolling basis. The executive director can approve awards up to $500,000, while grants for more than $500,000 require approval from the commission. To date, the executive director has approved 16 grants totaling $5.2 million. These grants are described in Section E of the staff report. The grant application in front of you today falls into the latter category, a proposal's over $500,000 that require commission approval. Next slide, please. The city of Oceanside is seeking $1,835,000 to update the city's LCP and collect shoreline data to facilitate adaptation planning. The proposed project consists of a two-year baseline monitoring program that will provide a robust understanding of the existing conditions of the city's shoreline. The baseline monitoring program includes monitoring shoreline changes of the sub-aerial beach and seafloor extending from Oceanside Harbor to the Agua Herianda Lagoon and Tamarac Jetties. This also includes numerical modeling to simulate the morphological response of the city's shoreline that will inform the implementation of maintenance and adaptive management measures. The monitoring program will also include surf monitoring using cameras in collaboration with Surfline, where the data and videos will be publicly available, and surveys with the surfing community. Biological monitoring will be conducted to survey and map the near-shore marine environment. And lastly, beach usage monitoring will be collected to develop a baseline estimation of beach visitation and access data. All of this information will be compiled into a baseline monitoring report. In addition to the baseline monitoring program, the proposed grant project includes updates to the city's vulnerability assessment to incorporate the latest best-available science, and an addendum to the city's coastal hazards adaptation plan to capture the variety of resiliency planning efforts that the city has undertaken in the past few years. Finally, the city proposes to prepare a targeted LCP amendment that will incorporate baseline sea-levelized policies, as well as the findings and recommendations from the baseline monitoring report, updated vulnerability assessment, and adaptation plan addendum. The proposed work would be complemented with public outreach, including online surveys, webinars, and public meetings. Next slide, please. Staff believes that the proposed project is consistent with the LCP grant program priorities and evaluation criteria adopted by the commission. It would build on past and ongoing work to develop detailed adaptation approaches to address sea-levelized impacts in a way that considers local and statewide goals to protect public access, coastal-dependent and related assets, habitats, and other coastal resources. One outcome of the proposed project is to better understand current coastal conditions that will be necessary to inform planning and potential implementation of a pilot adaptation project, popularly referred to as ReBeach. Staff received a letter from Surf Rider that raises concerns about the ReBeach project and asks for stronger conditions to the proposed grant work, including requiring the city to analyze other long-term adaptation strategies and to incorporate more detailed sea-levelized and coastal land use policies into the LCP update. I want to emphasize that the ReBeach project will require a future CDP from the commission, and award of this grant has no bearing on that eventual CDP review. This grant would primarily fund the development and implementation of a monitoring program that considers not only coastal processes and hazards, but also baseline recreational and biological conditions. And importantly, regardless of the eventual permitting process and outcome for ReBeach, the proposed monitoring program would provide valuable information for implementation of any future adaptation strategies along the Oceanside shoreline. This project would also provide information and lessons learned for other jurisdictions that want to develop their own coastal monitoring program. There is also significant need for this project, since the city's LCP was certified in 1986 and has not been significantly updated since. As such, the current LCP has no policies regarding climate change and sea level rise. Therefore, the incorporation of baseline sea-levelized policies like those developed by the Local Government Working Group, including requiring the use of best-available science on sea level rise, into the city's LCP through this grant would be a significant step forward. The city currently has momentum to complete this work, and this grant would provide necessary support while ensuring the results in LCP amendments appropriately consider sea-levelized resiliency and adaptation. The city and commission staff recognize that additional adaptation planning and future LCP amendments beyond this proposed grant effort will be necessary. This approach aligns with recommendations from the commission and Local Government Working Group to complete LCP updates in a phased manner, by, for example, building on general sea-levelized policies with more detailed adaptation planning. Lastly, the project would also advance the planning efforts required by SB 272, with the city proposing to update its vulnerability assessment and adaptation plan. The project would also include robust public outreach and engagement to inform the planning work. Next slide, please. In conclusion, commission staff recommends awarding an LCP local assistance grant to the city of Oceanside in the amount of $1,835,000. The motion and resolution are on page three of the staff report, and staff are recommending a yes vote. Commission staff, city of Oceanside staff, and the city's consultant team are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public signed to speak to us on this item?
Yes, we have two, and then one available for a question.
Okay. Let's move forward.
Speaker will be Jonathan Borrego and Mitch Silverstein. Jonathan, if you can unmute yourself.
Great. Yes, can you hear me?
Perfect. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. My name is Jonathan Borrego, and I am the Oceanside City Manager. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about the grant application before you that will help support Oceanside's ongoing efforts to build resiliency along our coast. As you may recall, Oceanside has faced an 80-year battle with coastal erosion, a challenge that began with the construction of the Camp Hamilton Boat Basin by the federal government in 1942 during World War II. While necessary at that time, this structure has disrupted sand distribution and a major natural sediment source to our beaches, contributing to significant beach loss over the decades. The city continues to work extensively with the federal government to mitigate these impacts, yet despite decades of studies and engagement, the Army Corps of Engineers has not delivered a lasting solution. Despite the federal government's delays, the city of Oceanside has stepped up in big ways to protect our coastal resilience now and in the future. In 2022, the city created its first-ever coastal zone manager position, now filled by Jamie Timberlake, who is tasked exclusively with building resiliency on our coastline, and we've recently hired additional staff support to support this growing program. In 2023, the city launched the ReBeach Oceanside Project, an innovative and forward-thinking initiative aimed at restoring Oceanside beaches using innovative techniques that will mimic nature. Lastly, in 2024, the city successfully extended a sales tax initiative which will help provide ongoing funding for beach restoration and resilience-building projects, but we still need help. As adapting our coastline to changing environments is not only extremely expensive, it requires extensive discussions and relationship building with the local community. The requested grant will help us achieve our goals and is imperative to those... The requested grant will help us achieve our goals and is imperative to those efforts. I want to extend my sincere thanks to Coastal Commission staff for your early participation and collaboration in all these coastal resilience planning and adaptation efforts. Your engagement is critical as we work towards sustainable long-term solutions that protect our shoreline, our economy, and our community's way of life, and I encourage your positive support for the grant application that we brought forward to you today. And I did want to close by just reiterating something that Ms. Vu mentioned in her presentation. And regardless of the eventual permitting process and outcome for ReBeach, the proposed grant-funded monitoring would be really crucial to any efforts that we undergo to further build resiliency along the coastline here at Oceanside. So, thank you again for your time, and we appreciate your support of the grant application.
Thank you. Next is Mitch Silverstein.
Thank you. Mitch Silverstein with Surf Rider Foundation. Surf Rider supports renewed efforts toward an Oceanside LCP update. However, we'd like the Commission to require a more balanced approach of Oceanside. These grant deliverables all work towards ReBeach, the city's pilot sand replenishment-retention project that's currently unpermitted and unfunded. That's fine with one major caveat: The city is embarking on this project while simultaneously continuing a coastal development pattern that directly contributes to the beach loss that ReBeach aims to solve. I'll give two examples. Looking at this slide here, these beachfront condos built in 2022 are 100% reliant on armoring. Oceanside's LCP allows new development behind existing seawalls without additional setbacks. This flies in the face of the Coastal Act, especially considering these riprap revetments now sit on public tidallands, worsening erosion and stealing our access. Next slide. Oceanside continues to develop on city-owned eroding beachfront as well without planning for sea level rise. Plans to renovate five beachfront structures near the pier move forward despite being unlikely to survive a 75-year project life even under the lowest sea level rise scenarios, and this is not part of the ReBeach area. Next slide. This is what that area looks like after a large winter swell between annual harbor sand replenishments. Note those are low-tide photos. Oceanside's current adaptation plan states that by 2040, daily flooding during high tide is expected to be a common occurrence even without storms for beachfront properties in the same area as the beachfront improvements I just mentioned. The city is ignoring its adaptation plan, instead putting all LCP update efforts into its sand replenishment and retention pilot project. One of the priorities of your LCP grant program, to paraphrase, is to update certified LCPs to provide for coastal resiliency, including planning and/or zoning updates. Using this priority as justification, please adjust the conditions of this grant to require the city to use these studies not only for ReBeach, but also to inform suggested updates to outdated coastal land use codes that left unchecked all but guaranteed continued beach loss and an impending disaster for the next generation. Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the Commission to see if there's any questions, comments, and action from the board. Commissioner Hart.
Thanks so much. Let me start by asking, and I don't know who could respond to this, but how much is left in the LCP update funding?
I'll turn it to our statewide planning staff that are online for that question.
We have about $6 million left right now with award of this grant. It would drop to about $4 million remaining.
And is it true that this is one of the larger grants? Or the largest?
It is. It's among the larger grants. We have several other grants. We had an over $2 million grant to Mendocino County. There are a few other grants that are around $1 million, $1.5 million, so it's among the larger grants, but I don't think it's necessarily completely out of scope with other grant projects that we have seen in the past.
Thank you. You know, at the time I read this report, I was reflecting on being in Oceanside and what we saw there, and I have to say that I agree with the Surf Rider comments, particularly given the amount of money that we have left, and after this, it's going to be even less. I mean, my concern is that we put quite a significant amount of money toward planning, but the planning is not consistent with, for example, updating outdated coastal land use codes. So I'm just wondering if our staff could respond to this concern, because, you know, I just really, we have so little money left, we want to make sure that the result isn't a plan that's not going to result in improving the situation there. So is that Ms. Vu, or who could respond to that?
I'll turn it back to the team online. I don't, I have a couple of comments after they're done, but...
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Karen can go into a few more specifics about this grant. I will note that we have about a year left to encumber those $4 million. This money must be encumbered by June of 2026, so we still have funding available, but it has to be awarded by 2026, so we are running out of time, and then that, all of that money has to be spent by 2028. I'll let Karen respond a little bit more specifically to this program, but I do want to highlight that this isn't, you know, City of Oceanside is doing LCP work, and this is just Phase 1 of that LCP work. We recognize that there will be additional need for continued LCP planning, and we support this as sort of a first-phase approach, and that is something that we have been highlighting with this LCP grant program, is to initiate some of this planning work and, you know, start to work on those efforts.
Yeah, I'll just add that approval of this grant would help the city begin their baseline monitoring right away, which is important to inform ReBeach, as well as any other adaptation options that the city is planning for. And we do understand Surf Rider's comments about addressing better planning for public access. However, this sort of holistic public access program would require additional funding and planning beyond what is currently considered in this grant proposal, and so the desire at this point was to focus initially on baseline monitoring, both for the sake of simplicity and, to Kelsey's point, to address the timing constraints of the LCP grant program.
If I might add too, I just want to take a step back and kind of make the point here that we have a lot of LCPs that are significantly out of date, older policies that need a lot of work, and one of the criticisms the Commission has gotten in the past is that we've tried to cram too much into one update, and therefore we've slowed the process because we run into problems. So we've really tried to change our approach, and again, move towards, you know, bringing local governments in the door, getting policies through that everybody, you know, just getting the work started and moving forward. And I think in that view, a lot of what we're doing here is in that vein. It's not that this is the end-all-be-all, or that this is the end of the discussion that we need to have with the City of Oceanside on their LCP policies and how they're going to consider development on their coastline. It's that this is a critical first step, and the monitoring that's being proposed will inform all of the other things that will need to happen. So I think we, you know, listening to Surf Rider's comments and reading them, like, I agree with what they're saying. I don't think we disagree, but we think this is a good first step, and we, and it's worth the money. The city, you know, is in a pretty desperate situation with their coastline, as you all have seen in the past, and we think that moving this forward is an important step. And given the timelines we have with the grant, we want to get, we want to get it out. But what we are hoping is that this is the beginning of a very long and fruitful relationship with the city so that we can move these things forward into the future and, you know, and help them, you know, with their, you know, develop their coastline in a way that protects resources and make sure that their folks have a place to go to the beach.
No, I think that's really convincing, just through the chair, and particularly, I think the most convincing is the deadline that we have to spend the money, and also, I just really would encourage the City of Oceanside to work closely with Surf Rider on their concerns, that Surf Rider has a part in this as it moves forward, which I'm sure they will. So I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from Commissioners?
I just want to confirm that staff thinks that, you know, do we need any specific language in the grant that says, you know, we expect that findings here will be reflected in policy updates or something? Do you feel that's sufficiently covered?
I'll turn it back to Karen, but I believe the answer is yes.
Yeah, thanks, Kate. I would agree that we think it's sufficiently covered in the LCP grant application.
Okay, with that, I'll also support, I just pulled up my pictures of our visit last February, which I think are, and some of these are in the report, and it's, you know, there's a lot of existing riprap with waves coming over it during the King Tides, so definitely a new approach is needed.
Thank you all for your hard work on this and for the collaboration with the City of Oceanside. I'm looking, I think, you know, we're all really concerned with sea level rise and outcomes of this, but it looks like it's going to be, you know, hopefully a very productive process that will help the City of Oceanside really better understand impacts of sea level rise and how they should move forward with making updates to their LCP and other policies. So with that, is there a Commissioner who would like to make the motion, which can be found on Page 3 of this item? Commissioner Kelly.
I move that the Commission award LCP local assistance grant funding of $1.835 million to the City of Oceanside and authorize the Executive Director or their designee to enter into a grant agreement with the grantee for allocation of these funds and to make any amendments there to subject to the requirements and conditions set forth in the staff recommendation.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Kelly, second by Commissioner Wilson, asking for a yes vote. Commissioner, sorry. Ms. Miller, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bajko? Bajko, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg?
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Nodoff?
Aye.
Nodoff, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders?
Yes.
Turnbull Sanders, yes. Commissioner Uranga?
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Campio?
Yes.
Campio, yes. Chair Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
All right, with that, we're going to break for lunch, and we'll return at, we'll say 1:10 with the intent of starting at 1:15. All right, looks like we're ready to get back to our meeting. Next item on our agenda today is the administrative calendar, and so I'll look to staff to kick us off on that item.
Thank you. Chair Cummings, so Item 7 is the administrative calendar for all districts and units on the agenda today with the postponement of Item 7A. There's three projects being reported, the conditions are acceptable, the applicants, no known opposition. So on this item, we're looking for whether four or more Commissioners object to the issuance of the administrative permits.
Is there anybody signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, we have one person, Adam Leverance. And Adam, you're being promoted as the panelist right now. We have your presentation for both 7B and 7C. So when you're ready and able, please unmute.
Good afternoon. Am I back?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First off, off-topic, I wanted to note, this is a year of me coming to Coastal Commission meetings at three physical venues and online, and I too want to wish Mr. Clayton well. I've been so impressed with all the technical staff of being able to do the slides, the videos, the PowerPoints at different physical locations, coordinating online and in-person speakers. Thank you all so much for the high level of efficiency you guys exhibit. And on the agenda item, there are four dock rebuilds in Newport Beach. This first slide is two of them in the administrative calendar today, and the blue images and the orangish-red images show existing and proposed. And I would note that in each instance, they don't extend beyond the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer pier headline. If you could go to the next slide, this is the other two, and again, reconstruction of docks not extending beyond the Army Corps of Engineer pier headline. Next slide, please. In March, I spoke against this proposal, which staff recommended approval of and the Commission did approve of, but this dock rebuild extends 16 feet beyond that line and in a very high-use area. I continue to think it was inappropriate. It's been approved, but I want to share my thoughts for the future and hope they seem rational. And this impedes human-powered craft, there's ferries there, lots of charter boats, and my position is that I don't think restrictions should be imposed on people whose access or docks predate the Coastal Act or the Army Corps of Engineers regulations, but also when these things are rebuilt, I don't think they should impede further on public access and safety. And the staff said, well, the city codified an ability to disregard federal regulations, and the city did codify an ability to disregard federal regulations. But the city has been violating, they codify ability to violate a lot of rules, and I just hope that Coastal Commission doesn't endorse this in the future, and just, if something's rebuilt, try and not make it more egregious, even if it predates it. Thank you so much.
There are no more speakers.
All right, so we'll bring it back. Is there any response to the comments that were made from staff?
Well, I would just note that Mr. Leverance didn't raise any issues with the items that are on the calendar before us today. With regard to the overall issue of meeting the pier headline or not, we've generally followed the pattern of development that's occurred in the harbor. We didn't identify a concern in that other case. Haven't heard that the federal government has a particular concern with the circumstances where the city has essentially set up a policy identifying this very specific cases where some exceedance of the pier headline is allowed, so we haven't identified an issue at this point.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this point, I'd like to ask whether four or more Commissioners object to the staff recommendation. Seeing none, the Commission concurs, we'll move on to Item Number 8, Consent Calendar. I'll turn it back to staff for the presentation on that item.
Thank you. So again, that item's the consent calendar for both districts and units on the agenda. One item from San Diego, conditions are acceptable to the applicants, again, no known opposition, so staff's recommending that matter be approved on consent.
Okay. Are there any members of the public scheduled to speak on Item 8, Consent Calendar?
No, we just have one available for questions.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to the Commission for a motion on the Item Number 8 Consent Calendar.
Move consent.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Hart to move consent.
Before you ask, were there any expertises on that?
Oh, sorry. Were there any expertises on that item? Seeing none, I'd like to see if there's any member of the Commission that objects to unanimous consent on this item. Seeing none, unanimous consent has been approved, and so that moves us on to Item Number 9, which is Items Removed From the Regular Agenda to Consent Calendar. I'll turn it back to staff for a recap on that item.
Thank you. So we have one item from Humboldt County, one from Orange County, and four from San Diego County, and let me just walk through those, and I have a few comments at the end. So Item 13A, this is the Humboldt County Public Works Department's Lower Bear Creek Habitat Enhancement Project. Item 17B, Application 524207, the Dunwald application, that's for bluff-top residents in San Clemente. Then today, we're adding Item 19A, the City of Del Mar's SB 9 Local Coastal Program Amendment. Item 19B, another City of Del Mar LCP amendment, this relates to their north commercial and professional commercial inclusionary housing. Item 20B, this is the Application 624271, the Sliderman application in San Diego. And Item 20C, Application 624817, the Encinitas Grand View Staircase Repairs Project in Encinitas. On Item 17B, Dunwald, we did receive a message from a neighbor raising concerns about the pool and basement that were part of the proposal, and also raising some concerns about private view issues. As noted in the report, staff's recommendation, which the applicant has agreed to, includes eliminating the pool and basement from the proposal, and then with regard to private views, that's simply not an issue that's addressed under the Coastal Act. So we're not making any modifications to our recommendation. And then on Item 20B, Sliderman, Commission received correspondence from a member of the public asserting that an additional parking space must be provided for the ADU that's part of that, it's a single-family and an ADU. part of that, it's a single-family and an ADU. Staff responded in an addendum, which explains that this site is subject to AB2097, which prohibits public agencies from imposing minimum parking requirements in this circumstance, and further under the City of San Diego's LCP, there isn't any required parking for that ADU. So on all these items, we're recommending these matters be moved to the consent calendar and approved per the staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any members of the public sign up to speak on any of these items?
Only available for speaking.
All right, and are there any ex parte's on any of these items? Seeing none, I'd like to see if there's a commissioner entertained a motion. Commissioner Wilson?
Actually, I have a comment on one of these, if that's all right. It's on 20B, and I just want to point out that this is the ADU that you just mentioned, there was correspondence about the parking. This was a, you know, reading the staff report, was a duplex, a fairly evenly divided duplex that's being converted into, well, again, this is one of those places where it's built as a duplex, lived in as a duplex, and then because of the zoning law, which is single-family residential, basically is being converted into a single-family residential, but into to address the state's requirement, you know, to not reduce density in ADU is added. But I want to note that the ADU is just one of those bottom floor, 500 square feet, almost no windows, attached to the garage constructs, which, again, it questions as to whether or not it'll actually be used as an ADU under the premise, so I would say it's not even designed, you know, affordability by design, it's actually almost unlivability by design. And in order to just meet that requirement, and all I'm getting at is, this is within a jurisdiction that has criticized this commission pretty extensively on our housing policies around, you know, and so preservation of housing is meaningful, and I think that's one of those, we need to apply this evenly, and I would say, you know, this meets the requirements of the local jurisdiction, but at the same time, I'm just hoping that in the future that we see better design around actually making, not losing units, because not, you know, every unit you lose, ostensibly, it costs, you know, a lot to replace, as we all know in our jurisdictions, and so I just wanted to bring that up, and I'm not asking this be pulled, I'm not asking for a no vote on this, I'm just saying that, you know, if we're going to apply these standards of not reducing density, I feel like the application should be genuine, and that's all I'm getting at, by design, in my opinion.
You know, I'm...
If I may, through the chair, I would just note a couple of things, and these are outlined in the staff report. There were, we did attempt to work with the applicant on, you know, making the ADUs a larger unit. There were a host of constraints related to this site, it is a fairly small lot, you know, the current building actually doesn't comply with setback requirements, including those that are along the oceanfront. And so this proposal, it does do that, it does do the, address the setbacks appropriately, but that does then shrink the footprint potential of the building. There's also concerns about the, you know, hazards and addressing hazards at the site, and that does result in some changes that are needed to the proposal to raise it on pilings and do some other things there. So all of those things, you know, factored into whether they could feasibly enlarge, you know, the ADU here, there was also the parking that the applicant was trying to include, which was just a minimum of two spaces. So there were a bunch of things we were trying to work around. The one other thing I would note is there is, you mentioned the concern about this not being really used as a rental unit, and we do have provisions in the conditions to require that they retain two units on-site as part of this action.
When you say retain two units, do you mean that neither one can become short-term rentals? Or just the ADU cannot be a short-term rental? So again, right?
Well, not on the short-term rental fund, that wasn't something we addressed, this was simply in terms of making sure that there were two units on the property that were available for occupation by...
They have separate entrances, they're maintained as separate units, and that's a requirement of the permit.
But I guess my question is, the ADU is, is this an SB9 ADU that then cannot be a short-term rental?
I don't believe that's the case here, but I will just double-check with...
That's okay, don't worry about it. Point made, thank you for allowing me to do this, thank you Chair for letting me highlight this.
And I guess I'll just comment that I do have a lot of concerns around, you know, instances where replacement housing is not occurring, not just in the coastal zone, but in other parts of the state as well as it pertains to housing and trying to maintain and preserve affordable housing. So maybe there's an opportunity for us as a subcommittee to think about how we might be able to encourage our colleagues at the state to address this differently. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion on consent calendar, items removed from regular calendar.
I'll move consent.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Harmon. Are there any commissioners who object to unanimous approval? Seeing none, consent calendar, as removed from regular calendar is approved. With that, that moves us on to item number 10, deputy directors' report. I'll turn it over to staff for the report from the North Coast District.
Great. Good afternoon, Chair Cummings and commissioners. For item 10, I'd like to begin by reporting an emergency permit waiver for PHNE to remediate an active gas leak on agricultural land and coastal wetlands in Humboldt County near Eureka. The main repair work took place on February 19th of this year, requiring access in and through wetlands to complete the repairs. In this case, the wetlands were voided to the extent feasible, VMPs were implemented to minimize the potential impacts, and the area was reseated to restore the area to its previous condition. The work was bound to be an emergency, warranting immediate action, and necessary to maintain utility service to PG&amp;A customers in the greater Eureka area. Next, deputy directors' report includes four waivers and three permit amendments. We have not received any comments or opposition to these matters, and we are asking whether three or more commissioners object to these items. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any members of the public online signed up to speak to us on this item?
No.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission. Are there three or more commissioners who object to concurring with the staff recommendation? Seeing none, the commission concurs. With that, we'll move on to item number 11A, City of Fort Bragg LCP amendment, number LCP-1-FTB-24-0047-1, mill site planning area C, redesignation/rezoning, and I'll turn it to staff for a presentation on this item and a public hearing.
Yes, item 11A will be presented by Robert Uwiler, a coastal program analyst in our North Coast District.
Good morning. Item 11A is an LCP amendment from the City of Fort Bragg for the lands related to the former Georgia Pacific Mill Site. The mill site is a 430-acre bluff-top area...
Can we pause for a sec? We're having some technical issues with the presentation. There we go. All right, please proceed.
Yeah, no problem. The mill site is a 430-acre bluff-top area located on the Noyo Headlands. Sorry. This site represents about 40% of the city's land in the coastal zone. Please note that an addendum was prepared and posted to our website last week with supplemental findings and an added exhibit, which with information I'll go over in the coming slides. Next slide. As for background, the mill site shut down in 2002, Georgia Pacific sold a portion of its land along the western end of the property to the city to develop key segments of the coastal trail. Existing developments, developed trails are also shown in blue, in light blue on the left image. The interior of the mill site is largely vacant with some industrial ponds seen in blue in that left image as well. The commission certified an update to the city's LCP in 2008, and with the exception, with the expectation at that time, and still today, was that comprehensive planning was needed before any of the mill site lands could be redesignated to other uses. The existing LCP includes two planning subareas delineated in the red lines in the image on the left, which must undergo comprehensive community-based planning prior to any changes in the land uses in the area. The main components of this LCP amendment are to add a third sub-planning area, Plan Area C, seen in the updated LCP map or LUP map shown on the right, and to redesignate and rezon these lands in that new plan area. Next slide. Slide three shows existing and proposed land uses and zoning. The difference in colors represents the land use designations. On the map on the left, which is the existing IP zoning map, the mill site lands are shown in purple, which is the color designated for the timber resources industrial. The difference in planning areas aren't shown on these maps, but in the map on the right, you can see the lands in the western portion of the site within the proposed land area C, with some color changes in comparison to the purple IT and industrial timbers land shown on the left. There are about 104 acres of land shown in green on the map on the right, which are owned by the city and developed with park and coastal trail uses that would be redesignated from industrial timber to parks and recreation. The green strip extends along the western portion of the site with a narrow strip in the middle that follows the existing coastal trail and winds around some of the remaining industrial ponds on the land owned by Mendocino Rail. There are 11 acres shown in blue on the right map, those are owned by the Noyo Center for Marine Science, which would be redesignated to public facilities. These lands are adjacent to the city's wastewater treatment plant, which are also shown in blue. There's an existing interpretive center on the Noyo lands, Noyo Center's land, and a new science center is planned for the remaining land. It's a bit hard to see, but there's five acres located at the southern end of the mill site that are owned by the Sherwood Valley Band of Pomo Indians, which are currently developed with four residential units, and these lands would be redesignated medium-density residential to allow the existing land uses and development to be conforming into the LCP. Next slide. Slide four shows one more set of maps that are related to the water quality issues. The map on the left is from a report regarding remediation needs on the mill site due to legacy contamination associated with its past industrial uses. The Department of Toxic Substance Control has divided the site into different operable units called OU A through B. These are shown in five different colors on the map on the left. The different OU's have different types and levels of contamination, different needs for site investigations, cleanups, monitoring, and different remedial statuses. The map on the right is proposed LU map seen earlier that will add the new Plan Area C, shown in the orangish color, and redesignated and rezoned the lands within the plan areas as mentioned. The lands in the Plan Area C are under three different owners listed here and indicated generally with arrows. Essentially, what these maps show is that most of Plan Area C on the right follows or falls within the operable unit A, as seen on the left, where remedial action has been completed already. DTSC required cleanup for the operable unit A prior to the development of the city's coastal trail and park uses in the area. Lands owned by the Sherwood Valley Band of Pomo Indians fall within OUB, shown in the pinkish-purple color. OUB lands are categorized by DTSC as non-industrial lands with no contamination issues or cleanup needed. The 11-acre Noyo Center land falls within OUD where remediation has been completed. This land is also kind of a pale yellow on the map. Remediation is not yet completed for the parts of OUC shown in pink and OUE shown in purple. These fall within Plan Areas A and B primarily under the ownership of Mendocino Rail. The proposed alignment and configuration of the new plan area would not hinder the ongoing or future remediation actions directed by DTSC. Next slide. In conclusion, the proposed LUP amendment and as submitted is consistent with water quality, priority uses, and other policies of the Coastal Act, and will ensure the public access and recreation is maintained and maximized. Comprehensive community-based planning for Plan Area C is complete, and the new land uses and zoning designations will align with current planned uses in the area and as envisioned by the community of Fort Bragg. Staff recommends two minor suggested modifications to correct inadvertent errors and omissions that affect conformity with the proposed IP amendments and with the LUP as amended. The three motions necessary to certify this LCP amendment with suggested modifications are found on pages five and six. This concludes staff presentations, and we're available for questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any ex parte's on this item? Seeing none, I'd like to take it out to public comment, or I'd like to open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public signed up to speak to us on this item?
Yes, we have Maria Jones, Peter McNamee, and Marcy Snyder, and Leslie Kashiwata. Maria Jones, you've been promoted to panelist, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, thanks for taking the time to hear from me. So as some of you know, I worked with and for the City of Fort Bragg for the past 20 years, and in that time have worked on rezoning projects for this site in 2003, 2009, and between 2017 and 2019. Over that period, two times the effort was halted due to legal suits, first regarding remediation of the site, and second regarding potential federal exemption for the railroad from local land use regulatory controls. In addition, in 2009, I actually spearheaded the effort to construct the coastal trail and the Noyo Center projects. So this work included parcel acquisition, completing the design and engineering and sequer review for the project, permitting and construction management, and actually finally the construction, which was completed in 2014 through 2017. Today, thousands of people, maybe even hundreds of thousands of people enjoy this wonderful recreational amenity for the City of Fort Bragg each year. For the Noyo Center, I engaged in the process of parcel acquisition and the initial environmental review and planning for the Noyo Center project. Since that time, I've been rehired by the City of Fort Bragg to complete this LCP amendment, and I just want to say that this is an LCP amendment that is a long time coming, and it basically formalizes existing uses that are on the site, including the coastal trail, the tribal property, and the Noyo Center itself. And I encourage you to approve the amendment, and thanks so much for listening to all the history, because obviously I've worked on this for a very long time. Thanks.
Next is Peter McNamee, Marcy Snyder, and Leslie Kashiwata. Peter, please unmute yourself.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. Also, I want to thank the Coastal Commission staff in the North Coast region for responding to issues that have been raised about this LCP. I just want to talk a little bit. Fort Bragg headlands are laced with highly toxic chemicals resulting from 150 years of use for milling timber and railroad operation. The city seeks to use these headlands for multiple uses, including housing, commercial industries, and public education and recreation. While this LCP is intended to facilitate zoning changes, it also moves the headlands one step closer towards new development. Toxic testing clearly identified that there are extensive deposits of PCBs, dioxins, TH, TPHs, and PAHs, and other toxic chemicals which continue to threaten the health of residents and visitors on the headland. I want to say that when we say cleanup, it doesn't mean clean... I want to say that when we say cleanup, it doesn't mean clean and state. It just means that some of the toxins have been found and identified, and the testing that was done by DTSC was not comprehensive at 100%, but was rather sampling of the grounds on the headlands. So we're not sure whether or not all of the ground that's being proposed is in fact clean or and safe for public use, but based on what we know, it looks like it might be. I urge the commission to use the Coastal Act authority to diligently regulate any and all proposals for future development on these headlands. Just because the headlands can be developed does not mean that they should, and frankly, all development considered on these headlands must be done with extreme attention to toxic exposure hazards. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Marcy Snyder, followed by Leslie Kashiwata.
Good afternoon, commissioners and staff. My name is Marcy Snyder. I live in Fort Bragg, and I've lived on the Mendocino coast for over half a century. I have good reason to believe that the Noyo headlands are, that they have toxins sprinkled throughout them, and that it has not adequately been tested. Georgia Pacific told DTSC where the probable sites of toxins were, and those sites are the locations that DTSC tested. It's the old story of the fox watching the hen house. As I said, I've lived here a long time, and I've heard many horrifying stories over the decades of toxins being dumped throughout the headlands and workers being exposed to poisons with complete disregard by the management of the timber industry there of OSHA regulations. When I've talked to people who've worked at the mill site, they thank me for what I'm But on the other hand, there is this deep-seated fear that the old mill workers have in our community, and former mill employees are not willing to come forward and speak up. They want to remain anonymous, completely unnamed. I encourage you to consider these points as you move forward with the issues and challenges of the, this industrial mill site and the proposed development of it. So I want to thank you very much. I also want to say that I appreciate your holding the Coastal Act, and I hope that you can continue to do so unhindered. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Next is Leslie Kashiwata.
I had a presentation. Thank you so much. My name is Leslie Kashiwata, and I live in the Fort Bragg area. I'm speaking today as an individual resident and not as part of any group with which I am associated. I am supportive of this LCP amendment. As mentioned, it merely formalizes what the uses already are in this new Plan Area B. Next slide, please. Just to speak to what some of these other public comments have been, this shows areas of interest identified by consultants working with Georgia Pacific to look for toxins associated with industrial activity. So these are the areas of interest, and I know it's a little hard to see. Next slide, please. This identifies a smaller number of areas of concern within those areas of interest. So notice it's a much smaller area. Next slide, please. This map shows sampling sites for dioxins within some, but not all, the areas of concern. Next slide, please. So you've already seen something like this. The Noyo Science Center is going to be placed in an area where there has been industrial activity, and dumping that Georgia Pacific may not wanted to have identified. So it's my understanding that before any building can occur, a more complete characterization of the property of the soils must be done, and groundwater obviously is still a concern. This is essential as there may be levels of toxins that can impact the health and safety of people working at or visiting the site once it is developed. Next slide, please. Finally, I want to draw your attention to project here. I'm a member of this group, and this, next slide, please. This project was funded by a grant from DTSC. Most of the funds will go towards hiring a technical consultant. We're looking at what was already been. Next slide, please. And that's the final slide. We're just getting started, and we're waiting for our work plan to be approved. This is, we have a website, we have email, so we are looking to continue to bring to the public what toxins are known and what we don't know.
Thank you. All right. So we have Linda Ruffing. She's just available for questions.
All right, thank you very much. I'd like to bring it back to staff to see if there's any comments on some of the, on what was mentioned during public comment.
Hi, I can respond to some of the public comment. I just wanted to point out that staff coordinated with Department of Toxic Substances Control on this proposal to just make sure that they understood the land use and zoning changes and that that, that those would be compatible with the remediation in all of the areas. They understood or satisfied that this will not hinder remediation efforts anywhere on the mill site. There are deed restrictions in some of the areas that are being re-designated and rezoned. Operable Unit A, where the city's coastal trail is located, is limited to, by DTSC under a covenant, a land use covenant, to passive recreation. So any future development out there would need to be further reviewed to ensure that it won't result in public, public health exposure risks. And as for the Noyo Center's property, my understanding is that there also are restrictions, and when they develop the Noyo Center, there's special monitoring that needs to be done to ensure that no, that there's no inadvertent discovery, so to speak, of, of certain chemicals that haven't been detected in the soil, but which may become evident upon construction. And so, and it was mentioned that Linda Ruffing is available for questions. She's with the Noyo Center if anyone has questions for her.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners on this item? Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Kelly.
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for moving this forward. It's been a long time. This community has had this mill site in between it and the ocean for 100, more than 100 years, and so this is a great step forward in getting that access to everybody. I do want to say I've been in the last few years to the Blue Economies Conference as well as the Kelp Festival, both of which emphasized reuse of some of this space potentially for future restoration aquaculture projects, specifically around Urchin and Kelp. And so I just wanted to make sure that, I don't really see it described necessarily in this, but I also don't want to, I don't want the community to think that, that those concepts are foreclosed upon in the future and would encourage, I guess, creative ways to move their economy forward and, and work with staff to see what we can do. Thanks.
Commissioner Kelly.
I concur with my colleagues' comments, and just wanted to add, you know, I think that it's, it's wonderful that we're seeing this move forward. I do, you know, have the same concerns and reservations about the toxicity of the site and needing to further evaluate and ensure that whatever potential future development and public access that we're doing, you know, everything that we can to evaluate that risk, mitigate it, and to ensure that future development is, is very mindful of, of what exists on the site now and how to prevent any potential exposure. So I'm happy to introduce a resolution or make a motion when, when appropriate, but wanted to add those comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other commissioners with questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, I guess I have two questions. One, I'm just wondering, what's the timeline for remediation on this, or is there any timeline that's been proposed?
So there are remedial actions being considered right now for operable unit E, which is the area around the ponds in particular. So that's the active remediation that's still ongoing. There's currently alternatives that are, alternative remedial actions are being considered, and the, there's a draft remedial action plan that is not really public yet. It's being considered by DTSC. So there's activity happening, and the city's going to be working on an EIR for some of the proposed remedial measures in OUE, and that might be a year or so out. I'm not really sure what the timeline is, but it's, it's moving forward. And then there's continuing monitoring in OUC that's also still active. I think there's a lot of monitoring across the mill site, but mostly on Mendocino Rail wastelands.
Thanks. I think it'd be really important for the community and for the commission to know, once there's a determination what the remedial actions will be, to get a better understanding of that timeline, because there are certain circumstances where certain activities, industrial activities cease, and then the remediation takes, you know, an extremely long period of time, and, you know, with the hopes that we can expedite this and have this area open to potential development or potential open, potentially open to the public, I think is going to be in the, in the public's interest. So just be good to keep us up to speed. So thank you for that. And I guess the last question is, is, I know in the past, and we, there's a lot of uncertainty now with funding at the federal level, but I'm just kind of curious if this site might be eligible for any brownfield grants or any funding of that type for remediation.
I'm not sure. That might be a question that the city can answer. Marie, perhaps?
Is there a representative from the city on that?
That was Marie, Marie Jones.
Marie, let me frank her, allow her to talk real quick. Sorry about that, I was muted. So the city has in the past looked at obtaining grants for remediation of the site and may do so in the future, but as everyone's aware, it's just kind of unknown where federal grants are going with regard to this. I would also just add that the current property owner has responsibilities for cleaning up the contamination.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much for those comments. Just really great to see the staff's work on this and that there's some progress moving forward with, you know, trying to not only remediate the sites, but open some of these areas up for public, as was expressed by Commissioner Wilson. And so with that, I'll turn back to Commissioner Kelly for a motion on this item.
I move that the commission certify land use planning amendment number LCP-1-FTB-24-0047-1 as submitted by the city of Fort Bragg.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Wilson, and the commissioners are asking for a yes vote. I'd like to ask whether there's any commissioner that objects to unanimous approval. Seeing none, item is approved. Thank you very much, everybody.
There's a second and a third motion on this item. Motion two, I move that the commission reject implementation program amendment number LCP-1-FTB-24-0047-1 as submitted by the city of Fort Bragg.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Wilson, and are you asking for a yes vote on this item? It should say.
I am, well, the resolution, the commission hereby denies certification, but the staff recommendation is a yes vote.
Okay.
That is item B, denial of the amendments to the implementation program as submitted.
Okay.
So it's a motion that we reject the implementation program amendment.
As submitted, that's correct. So we're requesting a yes vote and then.
Right. Okay. So with that, I'll turn it to Ms. Miller for, or I'll ask, so a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Wilson, asking for a yes vote on denial. Is there any commissioner that wishes to object to unanimous approval? Seeing none, that item is approved. And then I'll go back to Commissioner Kelly for the final motion.
I move that the commission certify implementation program amendment number LCP-1-FTB-24-0047-1 for the city of Fort Bragg, if modified in accordance with the suggested changes set forth in the staff report. This is a recommended yes vote.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Wilson, the commissioners are asking for a yes vote on this item. Is there any commissioner that objects to unanimous approval? Seeing none, that item is approved. All right, so that brings us to the end of item number 11, and moves us on to item number 12, new appeals, starting off with item number 12A, appeal number A-1-MEN-24-0017, Mendocino Unified School District Water System Reconstruction Project. I'll turn it to staff for a presentation to kick this item off.
Yes, items 12A and 12B are related appeals of a water system improvement project in Mendocino County, and we'll have a combined hearing. And Tamara Gett, the supervisor in our North Coast District, will be giving the presentation.
All right, thank you, Shanna, and good afternoon, commissioners. This presentation, as Shanna just said, is a combined hearing for items 12A and 12B involving two related appeals of a permit and subsequent permit modification respectively granted by Mendocino County to applicant Mendocino Unified School District for a water system improvement project located east of the town of Mendocino. We want to note that since publishing the staff report, we've received public comments both in favor and opposed to the project, and which are available in the correspondence section of items 12A and 12B on the website. None of the comments raise any issues that weren't already addressed in the staff report. Slide one shows a picture of the two existing water storage tanks and water treatment building that would be replaced by the approved project. The purpose of the approved project includes two main objectives. One, improving the school district's aging potable water system to meet current regulatory requirements. And two, providing additional water storage capacity for firefighting and declared drought emergency conditions. As approved, the modified development authorized the demolition and replacement of two existing water tanks, chlorination and control building, and related infrastructure, along with improvement of three existing wells, and installation of up to six new test wells at the 5.7 acre site of the school district's water system facility. Next slide, please. Slide two shows the general location of the appealed project. The county-approved development is located on property owned by the school district. The property is located on the north side of Little Lake Road and consists of three parcels situated east of the town of Mendocino and east of Highway 1. Next slide, please. The parcels shown outlined in greens here on slide three are zoned public facilities. The school district has been operating and managing its existing water system facility for several decades to support all of its facilities in the area, along with several nearby irrigated areas. Next slide, please. On April 4th, 2024, Mendocino County conditionally approved a CDP authorizing the original, much more expansive water system improvement project. The commission received a timely appeal of the local action, and the applicant waived the time limit to allow time to redesign the project to address issues raised in the appeal. The applicant returned to the county with a modified project that was further informed by agency consultations. The revised project design supersedes and replaces the original project. On December 19th, 2024, the county approved a modified CDP with conditions. The final approved permit continues to authorize some elements of the original project related to water system, water infrastructure upgrades. However, the redesigned project reduces the scope and environmental effects of the original permit by limiting new test wells to test wells only, reducing the number of groundwater test wells from 10 to up to six, and adjusting locations of proposed test wells, tanks, access road improvements, and treatment building to ensure all development is at least 50 feet from Escha. The amended permit also authorizes removing two sheds from within Escha buffers and installing low symbolic fencing along the northern edge of an existing access road. Next slide, please. Slide five shows the forested and wetland habitats that exist at the school property and surrounding area. The site is developed on the portion of the property nearest to Little Lake Road. The site is heavily forested with Northern Bishop Pine Forest, and slide five shows the delineated water courses and wetlands that are part of the onsite Esches. Next slide, please. Slide six shows a site plan of existing conditions in relation to the delineated boundary around Esches as shown by a green line. in relation to the delineated boundary around Esches as shown by a green line. This slide also shows in blue the location of the minimum 50-foot ESHA buffer that's required by the county certified LCP. The existing facilities at the site include two in-service water storage tanks, providing a combined 115,000 gallons of storage, shown as purple circles on this slide, plus two in-service groundwater supply wells marked with blue dots on the right side of the slide and labeled well one and well two, and other features including water distribution piping, a maintenance building, a water treatment building, and a graded access road that parallels Little Lake Road. A previously approved and installed supplemental well, referred to in the local record as Test Well Six, and shown on the right side of this slide with a pink dot, also occurs on the site. The two existing water tanks at the site are nearing the end of their useful life and do not meet current seismic design standards. The proposed improvements are intended to resolve deficiencies that were identified by the state water board. Next slide, please. The replacement tanks will provide the same 115,000 gallons of storage capacity that exists now to support the school district's ongoing operations and provide additional storage capacity of 500,000 gallons to be used as an emergency water supply for firefighting and declared drought emergency conditions. To meet the water source capacity and other regulatory requirements of the water board, Test Well Six, highlighted on this slide seven in green, will be connected to the existing system and converted from a supplemental well to production well. Next slide, please. On January 17th, 2025, the Commission received an appeal of the county's approval of the modified project from 10 appellants primarily raising issues related to the final project's potential adverse effects on water supply, protection of ESHA, and visual compatibility of the water tanks with the character of the surrounding area. Next slide, please. One of the primary contentions relates to Test Well Six. The appeal asserts that Test Well Six has not undergone minimum testing required by the LCP, and its approval does not adequately protect the aquifer. The conversion of Test Well Six to a production well would not serve a new water-dependent development, but rather would provide additional source capacity to meet water board requirements for the existing water supply system. Test Well Six was previously authorized by the county as a supplemental well to serve the existing institutional facilities, not for new facilities. As such, protocol testing of wells associated with proposed new institutional facilities was not required under the county's groundwater development guidelines. Nonetheless, some testing has occurred in association with installing Test Well Six. A 2021 technical memo documents the initial drilling, construction, pump testing, and laboratory analysis of Test Well Six, which included an eight-hour constant-rate pump test. The local record also includes an updated hydrogeologic report prepared in 2024 that describes additional data analysis based on readings collected from MUSD wells and neighboring wells in 2022. The county's permit conditions also include limits on timing, volume, and uses of water for both daily uses and emergency drought conditions to continue to manage and protect the aquifer. Next slide, please. The appellants also contend that the approved water storage and area of use within a defined emergency drought water service area is arbitrary because it does not include calculations justifying the quantity of water needed, fire flows and storage, and does not specify the rationale for the water service area. The county's emergency drought water service area shown here in slide 10 depicts the watershed boundary of Slaughterhouse-Gulch, which has been highlighted here, and the boundary of the Mendocino Community Services District shown in orange. The size of the new storage tanks is, in fact, supported by calculations and supporting documents cited in the local record, including a water system plan that establishes the methods for calculating water supply to meet fire code requirements. Next slide, please. The appellants also contend the county did not require certain hydrologic studies required by the LCP prior to permit approval for the construction of up to six test wells to demonstrate that the well field will not have adverse effects on groundwater supplies, including nearby wells and Esches. The test wells will be installed to explore the viability of supplementing water supply for emergency purposes and to provide system flexibility and redundancy for the existing water supply system. The county's approval specifically requires development of a thorough hydrologic study prior to the submittal of any subsequent permit application for conversion of any of the proposed test wells to production wells. The county's final approved project also substantially reduces the construction footprint and eliminates the need for new access roads and other development in areas of sensitive Bishop Pine Forest and other Esches, and eliminates the need to remove sensitive Mendocino cypress and Bishop Pine trees at the site. In addition to citing all new development within existing disturbed areas outside of minimum required 50-foot ESHA buffers and proactive removal of structures, the county's approval imposes biological mitigation measures, including restoring and revegetating disturbed areas that will improve ESHA and adjacent areas. Next slide, please. With regard to the appellant's contentions on visual character, the final approved project includes enforceable conditions requiring revegetating disturbed areas, limiting the color of materials for the approved tanks, and limiting lighting to only one low voltage, low wattage, 600 lumen, downcast and shielded exterior light fixture, which altogether protect visual resources consistent with the LCP. In conclusion, upon review of the local record, Commission staff believes there's a high degree of factual support for the county's decision in conditionally approving the permit as amended, and the county thoroughly addressed the relevant coastal resource concerns. Therefore, staff recommends that the Commission find that none of the contentions of the appeal submitted for the permit amendment, Appeal Number A1 MEN dash 25 dash zero 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 two, raise a substantial issue of conformance of the amended project with the policies and standards of the certified LCP. There are two motions for this combined hearing item, one for the amended permit, Appeal Number A1 MEN 25 dash oh 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 two, and one for the original permit, Appeal Number A1 MEN 24 dash zero zero one seven. If the Commission finds that the final permit as amended raises no substantial issue, the county's CDP amendment becomes, becomes final and effective following the Commission action. At that point, the original permit approval is rendered as having no legal effect, and no development may be performed under that original approval. However, action is still required on the original permit appeal, and staff recommends that the Commission also find that the contentions raised under Appeal Number A1 MEN 24 dash zero zero one seven for the original permit approval also did not raise a substantial issue. This concludes staff's presentation, and we're available to answer questions. And we also note that the applicant's agent, Matt Kennedy at GHD, is available to answer any technical questions you may have for the project.
Thank you very much. Okay, so before I open this hearing, I just want to remind us that this is a substantial issue only hearing. Testimony will be taken only on the question of whether the appeal raises substantial issue. The testimony will be limited to three minutes total per side. Only the applicant, persons who oppose the application before the local government, or the representatives, and the local government shall be qualified to testify, and other members of the public may submit comments in writing. So with that, I'd like to open it up to see if the appellant is here, if the representatives from the appellants?
Ask for ex parte, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any ex parte's? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, see if the, the appellants are here.
Yes, the appellant's here. Max Yay. Can you please unmute yourself?
Okay, you all will be given three minutes.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Chair and Commissioners for this opportunity. My name is Max Yay.
Can we pause you for one second?
Hold on for a second, Mr. Max.
Pardon?
You gotta adjust your volume.
Hold please, Max.
And turn on the clock.
Pardon? Oh.
All right, proceed.
Yes, okay. Is, I'm sorry, is, okay, there's the clock. Okay. My name is Max Yay. I represent the appellants who live near the project and are concerned for their water. The county's decision violates the LCP. The LCP requires that prior to permitting a project, the project's water must be proofed. Proof before permitting, adequate water supply before construction. The county's permit doesn't do that. County's decision facially violates the law. This case is about exemptions. Everyone up and down the coast does this. Drill a well, prove it, apply for the project permit. The sequence is so clear, why doesn't the county follow it? Instead, it has test wells at the same time that approves the project. And the answer is that the modest initial project was expanded fivefold in order to find funding from multiple sources. The permitting process had already started, so the applicants had to juggle the time limits of different grants while revising the project mid sequo process. This hurry to permit had the county initially, led the county initially to approve an improper project. On appeal, staff sent the project back for changes precisely in the proofing sequence and in related wetlands delineation. But time limits on funding prevented full corrections, so the applicants patched its project's deficiencies with the argument that the LCP could be sidestepped and adjusted because of planning difficulties. County and staff agreed. This is an exemption based on contingencies of planning. We want to ask, when the Commission delegated permitting to counties, did it give the counties the authority to set aside the LCP in order to accommodate planning errors, the time constraints of funding, and political pressure? The appeal is grounded, and its issues are substantial. But those issues, groundwater sustainability, time, protection of ESHA, access to scenic beauties, environmental justice, do these issues get set aside for contingent reasons? Is the public to pay for poor planning? Are exemptions for contingencies a substantial issue? Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there any representatives from the appellants, or the applicants?
We have the applicant, Matt Kennedy. Matt Kennedy, if you can unmute yourself. Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. And I had a few slides, if those could be pulled up. Great. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This project makes vital improvements to Mendocino Unified School District's water system by replacing water infrastructure that is beyond its useful service life well past 50 years, and your staff did a great job of describing that. The water system provides potable and firewater to MUSD's K through eight school, Mendocino High School, and the community center of Mendocino. The project replaces two undersized storage tanks and a dilapidated treatment building, and improves their water supply to meet peak demands. In 2009, MUSD replaced its firewater pipelines serving all their facilities, and this project completes that system. Next slide, please. The project addresses important state and federal code deficiencies as summarized on this slide. Mendocino High School and the Community Center of Mendocino are located in high fire hazard severity zone, and much needed firewater storage brings their water system into compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act and California Fire Code, and serves as an emergency store of potable water during drought emergencies when many wells in the area run dry. The project is eight years in the making, including four years to obtain grant funding from the state water boards and the Department of Water Resources. All the requirements have been addressed, including those related to the LCP. Potential impacts have been mitigated, and with the design and with county conditions. MUSD is a severely disadvantaged agency with declining revenue, and they cannot afford to do this really important project on their own. A significant portion of the grant funding will expire at the end of this year, December 31st, and your action today is critical to the success of this project and a positive outcome for MUSD and the community of Mendocino. The project is not dependent on the test wells for its function and viability. MUSD's existing wells are more than capable of providing the water needed for the additional storage, a one-time fill-up, and to maintain MUSD's existing water demands. The water tanks have been sized by a tank vendor, and they are only nine inches higher than the land use allowable limit, which is 35 feet, so the tanks are going to be about 35 feet, nine inches. And the project is, is really critically important. So we appreciate your attention on this, this project. This concludes my statements. I'm happy to answer any questions that the Commission may have about the project, and thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, are there any representatives from local government who'd like to speak to us on this item?
None.
Okay. And then I guess, are there any others who oppose the application at the local level who are signed up to speak to us on this item?
No.
Okay. With that, I'd like to bring it back to staff for any response to some of the comments that were made during the presentation. Sorry, during the public.
Thank you, Chair. We've, I would point out, I just have a couple of comments, but I would point out that we have a very robust staff report, and you also just heard a very robust, robust presentation from Tamara. So I'm not going to belabor this, but I did want to make a few comments, which is, yes, in this case, there are some, there are going to be some improvements on this property, and they are improving this water system. I think what it comes down to is that, in terms of the water supply issues, has a lot to do with the test well portion of the project. And these test wells cannot be turned into production wells without additional hydro, hydrologic testing and additional approvals from the county. So any such future actions here to increase, like, community-level water planning or needs will be appealable to the Commission. So if there are concerns in the future, we can address them at that time, and we encourage both the applicant and the county to be very diligent in their testing and monitoring protocols moving forward. But the project that we have before us today, this appeal, and the amended project that the county approved, is really fairly limited. And with that, I don't know, I'll ask if Tamara has anything she would like to add.
No, I think the, the main comment from, from the appellant regarding the testing of the hydrological, hydrological testing of the wells has been addressed by Shannon's comments. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll bring it back to the Commission to see if there's any questions, comments, or action to be taken.
Happy to make a motion.
All right. Commissioner Wilson?
I'm happy to move this.
So Commissioner Hart, actually, to the chief?
No, it's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll step aside.
Nope, go ahead. Let's keep this moving.
All right. I move that the Commission determine and resolve that appeal number A dash one dash MEN dash two five dash zero zero two does not present substantial issue with respect to the grounds on which the appeal has been filed under Section 30603 of the, oh my God, that page is missing from my
Coastal Act.
Report.
I could complete it.
Of the Coastal Act regarding consistency with the local, sorry, you moved it around there. Local Coastal Act, sorry. It moved around. And/or public access recreation policies of the Coastal Act. Thank you. And, and thanks to the detail, even down to the dark sky compliant lighting. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Wilson, seconded by Commissioner Hart. Is the maker asking for a yes vote? Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Asking for a yes vote?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Are there any commissioners that object to unanimous approval? Seeing none, that item is approved. And there's another motion that needs to be made, so I'll turn it back to Commissioner Wilson.
I move that the Commission determine and resolve that appeal number A dash one dash MEN dash two four dash zero zero seven does not present a substantial issue with respect to the grounds on which the appeal has been filed under Section 30603 of the Coastal Act regarding consistency with the certified local coastal plan and/or the public access and recreation policies of the Coastal Act, and I recommend a yes vote.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Wilson, seconded by Commissioner Hart. The makers of the motion are asking for a yes vote. Are there any commissioners that wish to oppose unanimous approval?
Hold on one second.
So the, the appeal number that you read is for 12A. You might have read the appeal number for 12B before. I didn't catch that. So just to clarify, you are, you have moved to approve both of these, per the staff recommendation?
That's exactly what I said, yes. I was distracted by Mendocino Fire in the room. Thanks for being, coming all the way down here for this. Appreciate it.
Okay. Well, I will just say that I do want to appreciate the staff's work on this. I also want to appreciate the community's work towards I also want to appreciate the community's work towards improving their water systems and ensure that there's not only adequate water for the children at the schools, but also for firefighting as we are facing the impacts of climate change. It's just completely critical that we have access to adequate firefighting capabilities. So thank you all for your hard work on this. And with that, I'll just ask if there's any commissioner who opposes or objects to unanimous approval of this item. Seeing none, item is unanimously approved. And that concludes item number 12A and B on our agenda for today. I want to thank all of you for coming out, and that moves us on to item number 13B, which is application number 1-24-0662, Caltrans Blues Beach Land Transfer Project. And I'll turn it over to staff for a presentation on that item.
Yep. Item 13B is a Caltrans application to facilitate the transfer of the Blues Beach property to a designated tribal entity, and Sean Drake will be giving that presentation.
Good afternoon, Chair Cummings and commissioners. Item 13B is a permit application from Caltrans for the Blues Beach Land Transfer Project in rural northern Mendocino County. Next slide, please. This project involves 172 acres of beach and bluff lands owned by Caltrans west of Highway 1, about 12 miles north of Fort Bragg, and just south of the small community of Westport. Next slide. This CDP application includes two components. First, the CDP would authorize Caltrans to merge and then divide the 172 acres into a 136-acre parcel. Caltrans will transfer that 136-acre parcel to Kai Poma, which is a tribally-chartered nonprofit corporation governed by members of three federally-recognized California Native American tribes: the Coyote Valley Band of Pomo Indians, the Round Valley Indian Tribes, and the Sherwood Valley Band of Pomo Indians. Caltrans will retain the remainder of the 172 acres, or about 36 acres, for highway right-of-way uses. Second, the CDP includes implementation of a management plan for the transferred property. Management will center around public access, Native American Cultural Resources Protection, and Natural Resources Preservation. The management plan will be implemented by Kai Poma after Caltrans transfers the property to them. Next slide. The origin of this application stems from Senate Bill 231 from 2021. The purpose of this legislation was to provide for focused stewardship and protection of the natural and cultural resources on this property, which are vulnerable to damage from unauthorized activities such as unsanctioned vehicular access and camping. SB 231 authorized Caltrans to transfer the Blues Beach property at no cost to a nonprofit corporation composed of members of the Sherwood Valley Band of Pomo Indians, the Round Valley Indian Tribes, and the Coyote Valley Band of Pomo Indians. Kai Poma, the nonprofit, was incorporated in response to this legislation. SB 231 requires the transferred property to be maintained for public access, as natural habitat, and for the protection of Native American cultural resources. The legislation further requires a nighttime closure of the property to protect the sensitive resources on site. Next slide. Public access to the Blues Beach property is largely unregulated. The informal access that does occur happens primarily at the three points starred on this slide. I'll show photos of each of these access points on the following slides. Next slide, please. Most visitors to the property use an informal road to access Blues Beach. This informal road is located off Highway 1, as shown in the upper photo, and runs parallel to Chadburn Creek, seen in the lower-left photo. The woody riparian vegetation that lines the creek is also partially visible on the left side of that photo. Based on staff discussions with county law enforcement and local fire department personnel, it is not uncommon on a summer weekend for the beach access road to be fully lined with cars parked on both sides, with additional cars parked out along the beach itself. On occasion, visitorship is large enough that the beach access road becomes blocked by parked cars, and visitors have been observed driving either through Chadburn Creek or through vegetated slopes in order to bypass the access road and reach the beach. Although signage is posted that specifies no overnight parking or camping is allowed, and barriers to block vehicular access to the beach have been attempted in the past, these measures have been unsuccessful at deterring these activities, resulting in significant damage to natural and cultural resources, threats to public safety, and emergency response efforts. Next slide, please. Here are some photos of Blues Beach itself. The outlet of Chadburn Creek is visible in the upper-right photo. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has identified Chadburn Creek as critical habitat for federally-threatening Northern California steelhead, as well as potential habitat for federally-endangered tidewater goby. The sandy beach provides habitat for a number of plants and animals, including Pacific harbor seals and California sea lions, a mix of wetland and dune plants, and habitat for various birds. Most of the property has not been formally or comprehensively surveyed, which is something that is planned to be undertaken by Kai Poma after the land is transferred, as I'll discuss in a moment. Next slide, please. Down coast of Blues Beach, the topography transitions from beach to coastal bluff terrace. At about the midpoint of the length of the property, there is a large, informal pullout on the seaward side of the highway. Here, travelers frequently pull over to enjoy the spectacular ocean views from the highway. Some members of the public park their cars in this pullout and pass through gaps in the wooden fence, an example of which is shown in the top photo, to walk out onto the bluff terrace to hike or to fish. There are a number of informal trails along this terrace area of the property. Photos in the lower-left and right show views of the terrace looking down coast and up coast, respectively. Next slide. The southernmost access point to the Blues Beach property is via the Brule Point Vista Point, which is a formalized visitor area immediately seaward of the highway. Caltrans constructed the Brule Point Vista Point in 2005 as partial mitigation for a revetment project about seven miles up coast of Blues Beach. The Brule Point Vista Point consists of a parking lot striped for 20 parking spaces, a viewing area with interpretive signage, several benches, and two paved pedestrian trails. One of the trails extends seaward out from the Vista Point parking area to the bluff edge, as shown in the upper-left, upper-right, and lower-right photos. The other trail, which was intended for ADA access, proceeds south from the parking area for about 300 feet, with several benches along the way, as shown in the photo on the lower-left. Both pedestrian trails that extend from the Vista Point parking area see regular public use, and the majority of both trails will be located on the property that is transferred to Kai Poma. In all, there are over 100 acres of bluff-top lands along this portion of the property that will be transferred. Caltrans will retain and continue to manage the Vista Point parking area as part of the highway right-of-way. Next slide. As mentioned, upon completing the land division authorized by the CDP, Caltrans will transfer ownership of the 136-acre Blues Beach property to Kai Poma at no cost. Caltrans will retain the lands adjacent to and within the Highway 1 corridor for the purpose of maintaining the roadway and associated infrastructure. Caltrans and Kai Poma are also currently developing an easement agreement by which Caltrans would retain an easement, shown on the slide, over the informal access road to Blues Beach. The intention is for this easement to allow Caltrans to continue to use the road to access the beach area north of the transfer property for construction activities necessary for maintaining the highway up coast, which suffers from ongoing geologic instability. Next slide. Upon receiving the property, Kai Poma will implement a public access management plan, which they have drafted in collaboration with the commission. The purpose of the management plan is to provide for coordinated, comprehensive management of the Blues Beach property by Kai Poma in a manner that is informed by traditional ecological knowledge, along with site studies and surveys, and consistent with Kai Poma's vision for indigenous land stewardship, the provisions of SB 231 and the Coastal Act. As drafted in Exhibit 4, the plan identifies Kai Poma's roles and responsibilities, and will inform the Coastal Commission and the public as to how Kai Poma will manage the property. It also provides a framework for long-term adaptive management and serves as a vehicle for ongoing collaboration between Kai Poma and the commission. This collaboration will include the efficient processing of any future amendments to this CDP, which will pass to Kai Poma with the property, that are needed to implement future management strategies and potential associated development. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the commission, after the public hearing, approve the coastal development permit with three special conditions related to transfer documentation, management plan implementation, and submittal of a signage plan, which will facilitate implementation of the nighttime property closure required by SB 231. Kai Poma and commission staff will work collaboratively to identify locations and designs for sign installation, to inform the public about the nighttime closure, and any other relevant information related to accessing the property. Staff would like to sincerely thank the Kai Poma board and their consultant team, as well as Caltrans staff, for their partnership in developing the proposed project, which has been the product of significant collaboration over the past four years. While several additional steps remain before Caltrans can complete its transfer of the property to Kai Poma, the recommended CDP represents a significant milestone in returning this piece of coastal land to Native American stewardship. This concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Before we go out to public comment, I just want to let you know your sign's upside down. And so with that, I'd like to see if there's any members of the, oh, first, are there any expertise on this item? Seeing none, are there any members of the public signed up to speak to us on this item?
Yes, we have Jerome Washington, and we have Chair Eddie Knight.
All right, you'll have two minutes.
Jerome Washington, can you please unmute yourself?
Thank you, Chair Cummings and commissioners. Good afternoon. My name is Jerome Washington. I'm a Caltrans District 1 Native American liaison. Thank you for allowing us time to speak on this item. This is a historic moment for Caltrans and our tribal partners, and the commission, as land currently managed by Caltrans and owned by the state of California, will be returned to ancestral Native American tribes of the area. In 2021, the passage of Senate Bill 231 authorized Caltrans to transfer the property to the tribal nonprofit Kai Poma, and we are here today to celebrate this important step in the return of the Blues Beach property back to our tribal partners. The transfer process is anticipated to be completed this year, and the approval of the commission today is a critical step towards that goal. By doing so, management of the parcels will ensure historical preservation and enhanced environmental stewardship of sensitive resources on the property, while continuing access to coastal resources for the public's enjoyment. That being said, we'd like to extend our thanks to Kai Poma board, including Chairman Eddie Knight, and support staff Neil Thaper of Minno, as well as the councils and staff of the Coyote Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Sherwood Valley Band of Pomo Indians, and Round Valley Indian Tribes. We'd also like to thank Senator McGuire and his staff for their efforts to collaborate with the local community and the three tribes, and for authorizing the historic legislation that allows for the transference of the property. Lastly, we'd like to express our deepest thanks to the Coastal Commission staff, in particular Legislative Program Manager Sean Drake for his steadfast leadership, guidance, and expertise in directing this permitting process and for his engagement in the ongoing transfer efforts. Caltrans has worked extensively with all the parties, and the department concurs with the staff recommendation of approval. Thank you again to the commission for collaborating with the department and our tribal partners on the Blues Beach land transfer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chair Eddie Knight. So Chair Eddie Knight, if you can unmute yourself?
There. Yes, this is Eddie Knight. I am a member of Coyote Valley Band of Pomo Indians, and I'm also the chair of Kai Poma, the nonprofit tribal organization. I just want to thank the Coastal Commission staff for helping us with the, in developing the management plan, which is a very intricate part of the requirements that we have to fulfill in order to have the transfer passed over to us. I just wanted to let you know that Kai Poma, it means Valley people. I just wanted to let you guys know that. The three tribes, Coyote Valley, Sherwood, Band of Pomo Indians, Round Valley Indian Tribes, were all descendants of coastal Yucys and Yucys. So this is one of those things, unique situations where Caltrans is in the process of transferring land to the original indigenous people. And it's one of those unique things that we're so proud to get this land back and have it in our possession. And our intentions of the development of this property is for cultural use and cultural activities. And we do completely understand natural habitat and cultural resources. We're strong in that area, and we're looking forward with the process of transferring this land. You know, and with the assistance of Senator McGuire and his staff, developed the SB 231 bill to authorize transfer of the property to Kai Poma and the three tribes. One thing that I'd like to point out is that we're intended to develop this property. Is that my time's up?
You can finish your comments.
That was quick.
If you have any final things to say, you can...
Well, you know, it's, the final thing I have to say is that in passing of this will speed the process up. Just so you guys know, this is going on the fourth year of a consult, formal consultation with Caltrans to get this land transferred. And we, just like Sean and Jeremy had said, we're coming to the end of this process, and with the passage of this permit, we'll ensure that the property is transferred. And I want to thank the commission for allowing me to speak. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. With that, I'll bring it back to the commission for any questions or comments. I'm going to look to our Caltrans representative to kick us off on our comments.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to say a few things. I think the district, Jerome Washington covered many of them, as well as Sean, so I'm just going to say that I'd like to thank Kai Poma for their collaboration and leadership with Caltrans and the commission, and Caltrans and commission's, all of their work on this multi-year effort. I know it's, you know, it's very complicated, and I just saw myself pop up on the screen, which surprised me. But I'll just conclude with that. So thanks to everybody for all their hard work on this, and look forward to hearing the final steps before us to be completed, and looking forward to that land being transferred to Kai Poma. Thank you.
I know Commissioner Kelly had some comments, and then other commissioners. Commissioner Ekoli, Commissioner Nalov.
I'd just like to thank staff for their assistance in advancing this project and a long time coming in terms of being able to return this land to our tribal partners on the North Coast, and it's going to be a wonderful opportunity both to preserve those sensitive cultural resources, as well as provide public access and to ensure that this land has, is going to be held in stewardship for generations, and I'm really looking forward to seeing this project go from having cars driving onto the beach and parking overnight, illegal camping and dumping, and really inappropriate types of access and overuse of the site, to being managed and having a stewardship plan that we all can be really proud of. So I want to thank our partners at Caltrans for their partnership on this, as well as Senator Protem McGuire for his leadership on bringing this forward and allowing the legislation, and advancing the legislation that allowed this transfer to take place, and looking forward to seeing it preserved for generations. Thanks.
We have Commissioner Ekoli, and then Commissioner Nalov.
Thank you, Chair. I want to associate myself with the comments of my fellow commissioners and add that I'm really excited to see this before us today. The Ocean Protection Council has actually contributed a half a million dollars through the Natural Resource Agency's Tribal Nature-Based Solutions Program to support this project, and particularly the management plan. And the activities that are going to be funded to support the stewardship of this area include baseline conditions, an assessment of cultural and ecological resources on the property, consultation with tribal experts on the best land management practices, engagement with local and tribal communities, including youth and elders, and preparation for additional grants to build internal tribal capacity for workforce development so that we can just watch this place flourish in the way that it should. So thank you so much, and I'm really excited to see this move forward.
Commissioner Nalov.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out the, this positive...
Yeah, I just wanted to point out the, this positive direction of returning this land, and also joint management. We've seen, you know, where the Great Rancheria is helping, at the Point Reyes National Resource Seashore. And I think that, I'll just quote, I think Senator McGuire actually said it best in his letter of support. He says, "Returning this land of cultural significance is not only the right thing to do, but it will also lead to enhanced stewardship, historical preservation, and protection of sacred sites at the Blues Beach property." And I think it's great when we can do the right thing. So I'm pleased to support.
Any other questions or comments, commissioners? Seeing none, I just want to thank everybody for their hard work on this. This is a very unique situation, not only where we're able to have agencies come together to give land backs to tribes, but also to have a tribal entity in such a position to be able to take this land back and be able to manage it in a way that's really going to protect their cultural and natural resources. Looking around the country and looking across the state of California, we oftentimes see that there are some tribes where there's only a few members left of those tribes, and as much as they want to protect the resources, they really don't have the capacity to do so. And so in this moment, we have an entity that's able to accept this land and is able to manage this land moving forward, along with the support of the community and other folks who really want to see this, this happen, and, and for them to be successful. And so I just hope that as we move forward, when there are future opportunities, that we're able to work with tribes to continue to give land back when appropriate, and, well, when possible, I should say. It's always appropriate. And, and with that, I guess I'll move it over to Commissioner Kelly, who's prepared to make a motion on this item.
I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Hart.
Okay, I do have a brief comment. I just want to say that it's not all the time that tribes can work to provide public access and protect their cultural heritage. And it's just so gratifying to see this. There's so many areas in the North Coast where we're struggling to move forward with trail projects or other projects. And I think it's such a great model that's created here, particularly with the nonprofit being formed. So it's just such a great project, and I just want to agree with all my colleagues on thanking Senator McGuire and Coastal Commission staff and Caltrans, and of course, Kaipoma. All right, in that case, I move the commission approved Coastal Development Permit 1-24-0662 pursuant to the staff recommendation, asking for a yes vote.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Hart, second by Commissioner Nalov, Commissioner Escuante, do you have any comments?
Sorry, I'm a little late on the mark. Again, just a reflection, this is so significant really for, not just historically, but actually in this precise moment where all of these communities are being, you know, even more systematically marginalized than have been in recent history. And California still kind of plows through and is able to achieve these things that right now seem unthinkable anywhere else. So kudos to everybody who was able to make it happen, and so grateful for Department of Natural Resources to be leaders on this. So congrats to everybody, and I'm so happy to support.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Hart, second by Commissioner Nalov. The makers of the motion are asking for a yes vote. Are there any commissioners that object to unanimous approval? Seeing none, unanimous approval has been made with Commissioners Bocco and Turnbull Sanders being absent on the vote. Okay, so with that, that closes out item number 13B. Thank you all for your hard work on this, and that moves, and we can take a short break. How about we come back at 3:00? So they'll give us a, actually, we'll come back at 2:58, and we'll start up at 3:00. Okay. Welcome back. With that, we're moving on to item number 14, South Coast District Deputy Director's Report for Orange County, and I'll move it over to our staff for a presentation on this item.
Thank you Chair Cummings. So in the Deputy Director's Report for South Coast, we have two waivers and one CDP extension to report. There's no known opposition on those items. We're asking whether three or more commissioners object to any of the waivers or the extension.
Any members of the public sign up to speak on this item?
None.
Any expertise? Do three or more commissioners object to concurrence with staff recommendation? Seeing none, commission concurs, which moves us on to item number 14B, Appeal Number A-5-LGB-20-0059, 32005 South Coast Highway LLC. I'll turn it to the staff for a presentation on this item.
Actually, those two items were postponed. So we are actually down at 17A.
Even better.
The Chen application from Laguna Beach.
Okay, my mistake. I'll let you just continue on with that presentation.
Sounds good. And Vince Lee with our Long Beach office will be doing the staff report for that. So if we can get the staff presentation pulled up, and Vince, as soon as you're ready, please begin.
Right, thank you Carl. Good afternoon Commissioners. This next item, item 17A, is a de novo CDP application for a single-family residence project at 6 Lagunita Drive, Laguna Beach. The commission found substantial issue on appeal on March 10th, 2021 on this item, and the applicants are Sunte Chen and Lina Chen. Next slide please. The subject site is a 63,000, 6,300 square foot sloping lot located approximately 150 feet from the public beach. The project site is developed with a single-family residence and accessory structures. The subject site is zoned village, low density, and is surrounded by single-family residential development. On December 10th, 2020, the city of Laguna Beach conditionally approved the applicant's request to demolish the existing 1385 square feet, 26 feet high, single-family residence and construct an approximately 3,350 square feet, 30 feet high, single-family residence with an attached garage, elevated decks, a spa, and approximately 1,100 cubic yards of grading. The project was appealed to the commission on January 8th, 2021 by Mark and Sharon Fudge alleging that a coastal bluff determination has not been made pursuant to the certified LCP's definition to determine whether the lot is on a coastal bluff, and that all requirements relating to bluff top development have not, have potentially not been properly assessed. On March 10th, 2021, the commission held a hearing and found that the appeal raised a substantial issue because there is no rationale in the city's record that supports the applicant's determination or the city's determination that the site is not on an oceanfront bluff, based on the definitions of the certified LCP. Because the commission found that a substantial issue existed based on the grounds on which the appeal has been filed, the commission's action voided the local coastal development permit, and the commission must review the merits of the project. The standard of review for projects heard on appeal by the Coastal Commission that are located between the first public road and the sea, like this one, are the city's certified LCP and the public access and public recreational policies of the Coastal Act. Slide please. Pursuant to the LUP's definition, an oceanfront bluff or coastal bluff is defined as a bluff that overlooks a beach or shoreline or a bluff that is subject to marine erosion. To determine whether coastal bluff exists on the site, the applicant submitted a geotechnical report which reviewed an early aerial photograph prior to the construction of the subject lot circa 1928. The report explained that the coastal bluff trend line turns landward to become a coastal canyon associated with a regional drainage course, and that the subject site is clearly within and above the mouth of that regional drainage course, as shown in this slide. Consequently, the report concluded that the project site is not, is located within a coastal canyon and not on a coastal bluff, and therefore, no coastal bluff edge exists on the site. The report further indicated that the beach sub adjacent to the project site has not experienced any long-term erosion trend, and the site has not been subject to marine erosion in the past, which evidences that the project site is not on a coastal bluff as defined by the LUP. Slide please. The commission's staff geologists reviewed the applicant's geotechnical report and concluded that, that based on the shape and orientation of the landform, the report has correctly identified the project site to be located within the mouth of the canyon, which was formed by the action of several converging drainages at Victoria Beach. And in this sense, the project site is located on a canyon rather than an oceanfront bluff, as defined in the certified LCP. The site is also located inland of a private road and a row of houses oceanward of the, of that private road, such that it is not directly facing the beach and the shoreline, as defined in the, in the certified LCP. In addition, commission staff geologists concluded that the site would not be threatened by marine erosion over the expected project life, since the fill and natural materials at the bottom of the slope would have to grow substantially on the order of 150 feet to even reach the subject lot, let alone cause erosion that would threaten the house on the upper slope. This much erosion of the lower slope, even with high levels of sea level rise, is not likely to occur. Next slide. Thus, staff believes that the project site is located on a coastal, on a canyon slope as opposed to an oceanfront bluff, and the oceanfront bluff setback policies of the LUP would not apply in this case. Staff recommends the commission approve the de novo permit with eight special conditions, including the assumption of risk, drought tolerant, non-invasive landscaping, construction best management practices, spa leak prevention and detection plan, birth track prevention plan, cultural resource monitoring plan, deed restriction, and final revised plans. Staff notes that since the publication of the staff report, the commission received two comments for the project from project neighbors, which are included within the correspondence for this item and responded to through an addendum. The comments raised four main points about the project. First, one commenter raised that the plans included in the exhibits do not fully reflect what was approved during the city of Laguna Beach Design Review Board hearing on December 10th, 2020. And specifically during that public hearing, the applicant agreed to clip the north ocean-facing corner of the garage to accommodate for the view loss of the neighboring property owner. The applicant clarified that they intend to comply with the conditions imposed by the local government and agreed that the commission de novo permit to include the same condition. Therefore, staff recommends special condition eight, which requires the applicant to submit revised final plans to, to reflect the local government approval. Second, the commenter raised that the construction staging, including storage and staging of construction materials, placement of dumpster, and construction vehicle parking would burden the narrow alley of the upper street, which is the Laguna Drive, and requested a condition of approval to use the lower street, the Faulkner Road, for construction staging. Staff believes that there is no coastal act basis to require such a condition. Third, the commenters raised concern about the amount of proposed excavation and requested reduction of the grading amount to avoid any bluff stability issues in the area. As discussed in the coastal hazard section of this report, the applicant submitted a geotechnical report that showed inadequate factor of safety for the proposed structure, and the commission staff geologists reviewed the report and found no geological hazard issue for the proposed project, even accounting for future sea level rise for the project life. The applicant also clarified that the project would ensure stability of the neighboring properties as they do go through the engineering process with the city's building and safety approval. And finally, one commenter raised that the project must comply with the 2022 California Building Code when the project plan cover sheet reflects an outdated building code compliance. The applicant clarified that the outdated building code reference was due to the delays in the project approval process, and that the project would comply with the current building codes. Therefore, in conclusion, staff believes that the project, as conditioned, is consistent with the certified LCP and the public access and public recreation policies of the Coastal Act. And this concludes staff presentation.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any expertise? Seeing none, are there any members of the public sign up to speak on this item?
Yes, we have Jim Conrad and Mark Fudge. Jim Conrad is on Zoom, and Mark Fudge is in person.
Okay, why don't we have our in-person come up?
All right, Mark Fudge.
The applicant is Jim Conrad.
Sorry? Oh, is this an appeal? Sorry.
This is a de novo item, so we ordinarily start with the applicant.
Applicant, okay. Well, then we'll let the applicant go first.
Jim Conrad, if you can unmute yourself, please.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Jim Conrad. I'm the project architect. And first, I'd like to thank Mr. Lee. He was very responsive to us and got back you my email. Hello? Yes.
We'll give you, how much time do you need?
I think two minutes is fine.
Okay, we'll give you two minutes. Thank you.
Want me to continue?
Go ahead.
Okay, again, first I'd like to recognize and thanks Mr. Lee. As an analyst, he was very responsive. We've been trying to get this to a hearing for three years. We've been through several analysts and didn't get very good response, but he did a great job. He got us in contact with Mr. Johnson, organized a meeting with our geologists. We were, we were able to work through the issues, and so I just wanted to, to recognize him for that. This project, as you know, was approved by the, the association and the city a little over three years ago. And it seems like the issue that was raised was the, whether or not it was on a bluff or a coastal canyon, and it seems like that has been settled. With regard to some of the issues that have been brought up by neighboring properties, we have an out-of-date code because it's been so long the codes have actually changed. And of course, we'll take care of that. And we will also include the conditions of approval put on us, or asked for by the design review board when we go into the structural review. And just lastly, I wanted to mention that a lot of Laguna Beach is sloping sites. We construct retaining shoring walls all the time. It's sort of standard construction for, in Laguna Beach. And all this will be reviewed by the Department of Building and Safety, and the neighboring property owners don't have any need to be concerned. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll invite the other speaker to approach the podium. You'll also have two minutes. Oh, you have to push the button.
I think I might need a little bit more time. This issue's got a little bit more to it than what the staff report. Are you going to be able to hear me?
Yeah, and then how much time?
Let's try four minutes. I'll try to get it done.
Okay, and then please state your name.
My name is Mark Fudge, and thank you for the time this afternoon to listen to what I have to say. The project, this canyon mouth argument has been proposed one other time, and this commission heard it. It's on the property directly oceanward of this. And in that hearing, the commission heard it and found that a coastal bluff does exist. And that project's 11 Laguna. If you approve this project here, you run the risk of diminishing that approval, or, and that project still has work to do. It is on a coastal bluff face. This very commission has made that finding. And at the staff report for 11 Laguna, these prior commission findings regarding the bluff, which were never contested and long ago became legally binding, are truly administrative res judicata. The decision's been made. It is a bluff. The decision hasn't been made is we haven't determined where the bluff edge is. And the bluff edge could be mid-span of that. It could be all the way up at the top. But the bluff edge is the determining factor on whether this development is permissible or not. And I'd like to take the moment and resolve these two projects so they're compatible with one another, that your, your decisions are consistent with one another, and that these bluff edge determinations are something that I've brought appeals on many, many times. And you've always found, according to the terms that I'm suggesting today, I think postponing this, reviewing the bluff edge determination, having the staff geologists look at that, and you guys can decide if you do want to believe it is a bluff edge like you did prior. So I look forward to what you have to say. I think a continuance is in order to resolve these important issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. I'm going to look to staff to see if it would be appropriate for the applicant to rebut, since they had additional time, or? No? Okay, with that, okay, we're going to close the public comment. We'll actually bring it back to staff to respond to anything that was said during the public comment period.
Thank you Chair Cummings. So what's before us today in front of this commission is the So what's before us today in front of this commission is the project at six Laguna. The, and not this particular, this other site, 11 Laguna. So nothing that we take action on today will have any bearing on the decision that was already made by the commission with regard to 11 Laguna. That decision's final, and, you know, again, won't have any bearing on that. In terms of the determination about whether this is a canyon site versus a bluff site, we do have our geologist on hand, and he can go over that in some detail if we could. Phil, if you're available, if you could, please speak to that question. Thank you.
Yeah, pleased to, I'm pleased to discuss that. Yeah, my name's Phil Johnson, I'm geologist with the Coastal Commission, and I've been looking at this for a few months now. There's, and I'd like to share my screen just to show you some of what I've seen.
Phil, you're not going to be able to share your screen, unfortunately, so...
Okay. Well, then I will not share my screen.
Hang on, hang on one second.
Hold on one second, Phil.
Sounds like we can allow you to share your screen.
Actually, we're going to try to make it so you can share your screen.
And if the AV staff...
One second.
And if the AV staff can turn his volume up a little, too, that'd be helpful.
Okay, can you try now, Phil, see if you can share your screen?
Looks like it's working.
Oh, not on our end.
Hold on, give us, it's not quite working for us yet. Oh.
There we go. All right, and then if we can have his volume turn up a little bit, too.
All right, and Phil, as much as you can, speak loudly into your microphone, that would help us.
Will do. So, yeah, I'm pleased to be able to clarify some of these questions regarding bluff edge. So we, these are two different geomorphic features, and I'm a geologist with many years of experience, so to me, this is fairly simple geomorphology. Here we have a coastal bluff that's been subject to marine erosion. This is the site up here, six Laguna, but to the south, along down coast, we have this coastal bluff. Here's the bluff edge up here, and then it kind of descends here, still have the bluff edge, and then you have this coastal valley, which was, which is basically flat, not, you know, no coastal bluff. Into the north, up coast, we have coastal bluff again. And then here we have this slope that extends to the east, and it's part of a canyon that extends quite a bit farther upslope, and I'm going to see if I can show you another view of that. Okay, I will see if I can share this other view. So this, can you see this map view now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so, yeah, there's this canyon that comes out of these steep hillsides, extends down towards the coast, and the stream actually goes right through here, and this canyon was carved by this stream. Now, the landscapes that we see today are profoundly modified by events that happened thousands of years ago. Twenty thousand years ago, this, the coastline was several miles offshore, and sea level was 400 feet lower. So these streams that come out of these hillsides were at a very high gradient, that is, that they had to go 400 feet deeper. They were eroding deeper, these canyons were eroding deeper, and that's how these canyon slopes were formed. Subsequent to 20,000 years ago, sea level rose rather rapidly to the current level, and that led to these streams depositing a lot of sediment in these sort of flat-bottom valley settings. So that's, this is a topography that was carved back when sea level was much lower, and then sea level has risen, eroded these coastal bluffs, which are quite young. This topography, these canyon slopes are much older, these coastal bluffs are much younger, and they've been carved by very much current erosions, erosion, original events carved by wave attack, which is, you know, very much of the modern day. So these are two very different features that have very different geological origins. Therefore, I can say with confidence, this canyon slope and coastal bluff are not the same thing, and that we were talking about 11 Laguna previously, and that's located in the, where this coastal bluff is just getting lower and lower, but it's along a coastal bluff, whereas this is clearly along a canyon slope, and they're very distinct geological geomorphic features.
All right. Thank you very much for that explanation. I think that helps the commission. So with that, I'll come over to Commissioner Hart for questions, and then if there's any other commissioners who have any questions or comments on this item. All right, Commissioner Hart.
Thanks, I don't want to belabor this, but, I mean, I recall dealing with other proposed developments in coastal canyons where we were concerned about the canyon edge. Can you tell me how that relates to this project? Because I know we're focused on the coastal bluff, but what about the fact that it's at the edge of this canyon? It seems kind of precarious, but maybe just from the pictures?
I think I can address that. Oh, go ahead.
Thanks, Phil. So I think what you may be referring to, there are some land use plans or local coastal programs that have specific policies in them that address canyon landforms, and they have specific setbacks associated with them. In this particular area, that's mostly been city of San Clemente, just south of Laguna Beach. Here, there aren't any specific policies about setbacks from canyon edges for this site. Now, that doesn't mean we don't take a look at landform alteration and geologic stability and those issues. And here, the geologic stability issue is not a significant concern, according to the analysis that we have and that our geologist has reviewed, and Phil, I don't know if you have any further comments about that. And then as far as landform alteration, we, you know, also are looking at and considering community character and how this proposal fits in with what's around it, and we aren't seeing any real significant deviation in this proposal from what you see out there today.
Yeah, we don't need to belabor it, I was just really asking that. So it's not in the LC, it's not in the local coastal plan, not a concern. So that satisfies my question, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a member of the commission who'd like to make a motion on this item? Somebody?
I guess I can make it.
All right, Commissioner Hart.
Just want to make sure I'm in the right one here. Okay, so I move that the commission approve coastal development permit A-5-LGB-21-0012 pursuant to the staff recommendation, ask for a yes vote.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, second by Commissioner Botchko. I just want to thank staff for all their hard work on this item and bringing it forward. Obviously, there's been some time delay, but it sounds like they were able to work through the issues with the applicant to bring forward what is before us today, and while there's some concern, I think that the staff has done as good of a job as they can to try to resolve as many of the issues as possible. And so with that, I will ask whether any commissioner objects to us finding unanimous approval for this item. Seeing none, commission concurs with staff recommendation. Thank you very much. Moving along, given my mistake earlier, it looks like we only have two items left on the regular agenda, and we'll go through a few other ones. So we'll start with item number 18, San Diego Coast District Deputy Director Report, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Schwang for a presentation on that item.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. So on the deputy director's report, we have, we're reporting the issuance of 13 waivers, one CDP time extension for projects in Solana Beach, Oceanside, National City, noting here, in case you're keeping count, that 12 of those 13 projects are accessory dwelling units that we're approving today. And there haven't been any comments in opposition to those items. At the prior hearing, there was a request by the commission to provide at least a brief update on these circumstances at La Jolla Cove regarding the sea lions and the city's long-term management plan that they were considering there. So I do have some comments on that. So just a little background, in April 2022, the commission approved a request from the city to implement a seasonal closure at Point La Jolla to reduce harassment of sea lions during their pupping season from May 1st to October 31st. The city proposed to have a park ranger at the site to monitor activities, record instances of harassment, and remind the public of the closure requirements and to stay away from the animals. The park ranger was required to be present at the site year-round, seven days a week, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. or 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., depending on the season and available daylight. Special condition four of that original CDP also required submittal of a long-term management plan. In response to continued accounts of harassment, in September 2023, the commission approved an amendment for a year-round closure. And while the closure of Point La Jolla has been effective at reducing incidents of harassment, members of the public have continued to report instances of human-seal lion interactions at La Jolla Cove now, which is immediately up coast of Point La Jolla. La Jolla Cove is one of the most popular destinations for beachgoers in the city and provides the primary access point for water activities in La Jolla, like kayaking and swimming. To address these concerns, the city submitted an updated long-term management plan that expands the park ranger duties to La Jolla Cove. During regular monitoring duties at Point La Jolla, park rangers will periodically check on La Jolla Cove. Those rangers will provide public warning announcements to educate the public to stay at least 50 yards away from seals and sea lions to avoid injury to humans or to the animals. The announcements will elevate if individuals continue to be too close to the animals. And then at the third warning announcement, the ranger will document and submit a report to NOAA enforcement. So the complete updated plan has been posted to our Agenda's correspondence for this item, and that's the update that I have on that matter. Again, staff's determination was that that item didn't require a CDP amendment, it was something that we were able to approve administratively. So that concludes my comments, and we're asking whether three or more commissioners object to the waivers or the extension in the report.
Thank you so much. Are there any members of the public sign up to speak on this item?
Yes, we have Robin Davidoff. And that's it. Robin, if you can unmute yourself? Robin, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Yes, thank you. Yes, good afternoon, thank you for that update. So I'm the Sierra Club Seal Society chair. If you could go to the next slide, please. I've tried to reduce this to be just within the two minutes, but the area that we're talking about is the La Jolla Cove, which is shown on this map, and then Point La Jolla is just around the corner. Next slide, please. So I've reviewed this management plan that was just delivered last week, and it's basically just two pages, which Mr. Schwang outlined. However, I can tell you that there are no real techniques and details, and it won't make any change on the impact of keeping the public safe or keeping sea lion babies born there from being loved to death. We ask the commission to ask the city to rework the plan and include suggestions outlined in this presentation, and it can be distributed later because I have a lot of details by issue by issue. But if you could go ahead a couple of slides, the solution that is mentioned right here is that, keep going, a couple, some more slides, is that the rangers are going to periodically monitor the cove as part of their duties, and the problem with that is that it's a manage-as-you-see-fit when they think they can leave Point La Jolla and go 20 yards away. This will lead to an approach of a manage-as-you-see-fit. Rangers will be inconsistent in their management activities and will lack accountability, and often rangers do nothing. The solution is to have the rangers monitor the cove as part of their duties to monitor the closed area every 30 minutes from end to end, according to special condition number three in the CDP. Another solution is to clearly identify the ranger's authority when managing people who are behaving in an unsafe manner. Simply taking the person's information and giving it to NOAA may not be sufficient. Next slide, please. Other solutions include placing A-frame signs on the beach near the sea lions and rangers asking people to view the sea lions from behind the signs and creating a viewing area above the walkway. And the fact that public safety is just six weeks away and without a defined emergency protocol to be implemented when the sea lion babies are born on the beach, and an emergency permit if needed, cones and tapes must be there, otherwise this will not be effective.
Thank you so much. All right, I'll come back to staff to see if there's any response to the comments that have been made.
Well, I think some of the ideas that were brought up there are ones that, you know, should be shared with the city directly. If those haven't already been done so, we'll be sure they have. But as far as the, you know, the proposed changes to the management plan, I think we do need to give those a chance to be implemented and a chance to work, and if those aren't providing, you know, sufficient protection, then the city could consider some additional measures and bring those back to us.
All right, and I forgot to ask if there's any expartees on any of these items. Seeing none, are there any further comments from commissioners on the DDR report? Okay, seeing none, I'll just briefly say that I agree with staff on this one, that we should move forward with the changes, and obviously, this is a moving target, and there's opportunity for modification moving forward, and I hope that some of the ideas that were brought up today can be shared with the city. And so with that, I'm asking whether three or more commissioners oppose the waivers or extensions. Seeing none, commission concurs. With that, we'll move on to our last, well, move on to item number 20A, application number 6-21-0735 Steinberg and Encinitas. I'll turn it over to staff for the presentation on this item.
Thank you. So there is a staff PowerPoint, if we could bring that up, and Lindsay Kane in our San Diego Coast District office is going to do the staff presentation on that. Lindsay, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Carl, and good afternoon, commissioners and chair. Item 20A is a CDP application from Joseph Steinberg for after-the-fact approval of erodible concrete walls on either side of an existing seawall, and after-the-fact approval of a return wall extension. All were constructed under emergency permits, and this is the required follow-up CDP. The applicant is in agreement with the special conditions and recommendation. There is an addendum for this item in response to a letter submitted by surf rider. Next slide, please. The project is located adjacent to the Cardiff State Beach parking lot and south of the Cardiff living shoreline. While the homes on the bluff above the shoreline protection owned by the applicant are located in the city of Solana Beach, the development subject to this application is in the city of Encinitas, and in an area of the commission's retained jurisdiction. Therefore, the Coastal Act is the standard of review with the city of Encinitas Certified Local Coastal Program used as guidance. Next slide, please. The site, the subject site has an extensive permit history, including several permits and emergency permits. There are also several permits for remodels and redevelopment of the structures at the top of the bluff. However, neither of the structures are part of the subject CDP application. In 1983, there was a bluff collapse leading to approval and construction of an approximately 160-foot-long seawall in 1987, shown on the slide here in purple. Commission approval of the seawall required establishment of a lateral public access easement seaward of the wall. In December 2002, the executive director approved an emergency permit for the construction of approximately 15-foot-long and 12-inch-thick erodible concrete walls on both the north and for the construction of approximately 15-foot-long and 12-inch-thick erodible concrete walls on both the north and south ends of the existing seawall to prevent the seawall from being outflanked by erosion, shown on the slide in yellow. The armoring was approved on a temporary basis, and the emergency permit required that the applicant obtain a, either obtain a regular follow-up CDP or remove the development by May 16th, 2003. This application is the required follow-up. Because the follow-up permit was not obtained by the required deadline, the erodible concrete walls have been unpermitted for 22 years. The applicant did seek after-the-fact approval for the erodible concrete walls on two occasions, but was unable to complete the application process due to issues of land ownership, which I will explain on the next slide. In 2024, the executive director authorized an emergency permit for construction of an approximately three-foot-wide, 12-foot-long inland extension of the southern return wall, shown in green on the slide. This work was completed earlier this year, and the condition of the emergency permit required that the applicant continue to pursue the subject application as the required follow-up permit. Therefore, the commission is reviewing the authorization of shoreline protective devices that have been constructed but not yet permitted, and must review the proposal as if it were new shoreline protection. Again, no new construction is proposed. Next slide, please. This slide shows the various project components. At the bottom is the 160-foot-long seawall approved in 1987. The top photos show the erodible concrete walls installed under the 2002 emergency permit, as well as the location of where the 2024 return wall extension was constructed. Next slide, please. The project also has complex ownership history. As I mentioned, approval of the seawall in 1987 required recordation of a lateral public access easement seaward of the wall and shown here in purple. The bluff behind the seawall is owned by the applicant. A portion of the southern erodible concrete wall placed via the 2002 emergency permit was built on land owned by state parks without their agreement, circled in black on the slide. The applicant has since obtained a lease from state parks for this approximately 37-square-foot area. The southern return wall extension placed through emergency action earlier this year is entirely within the applicant's property, shown in blue. Next slide, please. Coastal Act Section 30235 provides that shoreline-protected devices shall be permitted when all of the following four criteria are met. First, there is an existing structure. Second, the existing structure is in danger from erosion. Third, the shoreline-altering construction is required to protect the existing threatened structure. And last, the required protection is designed to eliminate or mitigate its adverse impacts on shoreline sand supply. 633 West Circle Drive was built in 1965 and has not been redeveloped, and thus qualifies as an existing structure under Section 30235 of the Coastal Act. The home at 645 West Circle Drive was built in 1994, and so is not an existing structure for the purposes of Section 30235. The second criteria of Section 30235 for determining whether shoreline protection shall be permitted is if the existing structure is in danger from erosion. The applicant's geotechnical representative has demonstrated that the home at 633 West Circle Drive is in danger from erosion due to ongoing bluff erosion and collapse. The applicant's geotechnical analysis indicates that the erodible concrete walls are required to keep the existing seawall from failing, and commission geotechnical staff agree. The third criteria of Section 30235 include that the proposed protective device is required and is the least environmentally damaging feasible alternative for protecting the threatened structure. There is no feasible, less environmentally damaging alternative to protect the existing residents at 633 West Circle Drive. Next slide, please. The final criterion of Section 30235 of the Coastal Act requires that shoreline protection be designed to eliminate or mitigate adverse impacts on local shoreline sand supply. The sand mitigation fee quantifies lost sand volume and the cost of the replacement sand. The fee calculation is based on the length of the existing 160-foot-long seawall, not the length of the erodible concrete, since the erodible concrete is meant to erode concurrently with the natural bluff. However, the erodible concrete walls were approved and constructed in order to prevent the seawall's failure and ultimate collapse of the bluff and fill slope, thereby extending the life of the seawall. Therefore, Special Condition Number 1 requires the applicant to pay a fee of $104,231 to address the impacts of the seawall for a 42-year period, beginning on May 16th, 2003. This authorization accounts for when the erodible concrete was first installed in 2003 and provides an additional 20-year term. Next slide, please. The commission also typically imposes a public access mitigation fee to account for both the area of public beach taken up by the shoreline armoring and the area of public beach that would have been formed over time as a result of bluff erosion and the shifting of the mean-high tide line. The commission has often determined that even though seawall may be on private property at the time of the application, it is possible that the mean-high tide line may shift over time, and the beach that is not being created because of the seawall would be public. In those cases, the commission has required mitigation. However, the geology at this site is unique. Therefore, staff is not recommending that the commission require a public recreation mitigation fee at this time. As shown here, the shoreline-protective devices are located on an elevated bedrock platform that is made of less erodible material. The seawall and bluff behind the seawall are currently on private property owned by the applicant, and the less erodible nature of the bedrock platform means that the mean-high tide line is unlikely to shift landward over the next 20 years of the mitigation period. The bedrock platform consists of material that would not erode in a way that new public beach space would be created. Therefore, due to the unique geologic conditions at this site, there have not been and will not be significant impacts to public access over the full 42-year mitigation period, and thus a fee will not be imposed at this time. However, with continued sea level rise beyond the initial mitigation period accounted for in this permit, it is possible that sea levels would rise above the elevation of the bedrock platform. This could potentially result in a shift in the mean-high tide line towards the armoring structure or further landward of the seawall were not present, drowning the beach and platform area and leading to significant impacts to public access. In a letter received by Surf Rider in response to the staff report, Surf Rider argues that the commission should require the public recreation fee. Surf Rider argues that the continued passive erosion will impede access to the beach. We agree that the seawall is preventing natural and passive erosion over its extended lifetime, and impacts to sand supply will be mitigated. However, the beach area behind the existing seawall that would be created would be privately owned, not public beach, and is unlikely that the mean-high tide line would extend to the privately-owned land, making it public beach within the 20-year future mitigation period. Additionally, the applicant consulted the state lands commission, who confirms that no authorization from their department was required for the proposed project. Surf Rider's second point states that the beach is accessed in front of the seawall, which we also agree with. The area in front of the seawall is frequently used by members of the public as a walkway, and previous commission action required a public access easement over this area. No changes to the easement are proposed or will occur as a result of this application. While the presence of the easement is not directly related to the determination of whether a public recreation fee should be imposed, it is an important piece of the site's history and ensures that the naturally occurring public access walkway is maintained. Finally, Surf Rider's third point is that the bedrock platform is overtopped under many conditions impeding access. Overtopping of the bedrock platform and beach during high-wave events is not evidence that the mean-high tide line extends to or that it would extend landward of the seawall. Overtopping does suggest that the additional beach area created through the natural erosion would be valuable to provide continued lateral access. However, at this time, this is infrequent and only occurs during severe storm conditions. However, storms will continue to increase as sea levels rise, and mitigation for impacts on lateral access should be considered as part of future evaluations. In sum, staff does not believe it is appropriate to require a public recreation mitigation fee at this time due to the unique site conditions. However, in future authorizations, conditions may change, and new impacts to sand supply and public recreation will be assessed. Next slide, please. Unpermitted development has occurred on the subject site, consisting of the continued presence of erodible concrete walls on either side of the existing seawall that were not permitted by a follow-up coastal permit or removed by May 2003, as required by the emergency CDP. To address the violation, the applicant has agreed to provide a donation of $65,000 to state parks to fund five years of maintenance for the Cardiff Living Shoreline, new interpretive signs, and fencing repairs. The living shoreline is located immediately north of the project site and consists of an engineered sand dune system that serves as a nature-based adaptation pilot program. State parks maintains the living shoreline and does not always have the funds to perform repair and maintenance. Therefore, Special Condition Number 2 requires the payment of $65,000 to state parks and receipt of confirmation of the transaction. Issuance of the permit and compliance with all conditions will result in resolution of the violation. Next slide, please. In conclusion, as conditioned, the project will be consistent with the resource protection policies of Chapter 3 of the Coastal Act. The applicant has agreed to the mitigation, recommendation, and special conditions. If approved, the permit will be issued upon approval. Therefore, commission staff recommends that the commission approve Coastal Development Permit Application 6210735 as conditioned. The motion is on page 6, and this concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, are there any expertise on this item? Seeing none, is the applicant present, and do they wish to speak?
We have applicant Robert Schucraft. If you can unmute yourself, Robert.
Good afternoon. Yes, my name is Robert Schucraft. I'm an attorney in San-
Do you, how much time do you need to speak?
Maybe 30 seconds.
Perfect.
Okay. I'm an attorney in San Diego. I've represented Mr. Steinberg for years, going back to 1984, when this bluff collapsed as a result of negligence on the part of the county of San Diego. I believe Mr. Krampton, Walt Krampton, who is the agent and our geotechnical and coastal engineer, is on the call, and he was prepared to address this, but I don't see that he's here. And I would ask if staff can confirm whether or not Mr. Krampton's available. I would defer to him. All I would say at this point to the commission is, based on Mr. Krampton's submission in his letter, as well as the excellent addendum that was prepared by staff, they've clearly articulated why there has been no loss to any recreational value of the beach adjacent to the seawall that would, and therefore there would be no basis for imposing any sort of a public access mitigation fee in this matter, consistent with what Ms. Kane has provided. And I also would wish to extend my sincere appreciation of Ms. Kane and her staff, as well as Mr. Steinberg's appreciation of Ms. Kane and her staff. This has been a long process, and we really appreciated all the efforts-
I think I might be on now.
And I see Mr. Krampton's arrived. So I'm done, and we'll, if I may, turn it over to Mr. Krampton.
Mute yourself, Mr. Walter Krampton.
Yes, thank you. I don't see myself on the video, but I'm assuming-
We can see you, we can hear you.
Well, good. I want to also thank Lindsay and staff. They've been very diligent for the last several years. We appreciate coastal staff's work and ultimate conclusions or recommendations. I did want to argue, offer one, just one piece of information for the benefit of the commission, and that is that while Lindsay mentioned the bedrock platform atop the, atop the which the existing seawall and the return walls were built, this bedrock platform consists of a, of an old ancestral oyster bed reef that's basically made of calcium carbonate approaching the strength of concrete, so. While most bedrock in Southern California is erodible, the oyster bed is not erodible at all. We've got records going back 30 years. I provided photos for Ms. Kane and staff. I don't know how to show them right this moment, but I think we provided additional information to show that the shore platform and the beach access that the public uses atop this shore platform and the, and the, the relative oyster bed is very stable, will be there for the next 20-plus years, and actually provides a much safer environment than existed prior to the seawall. And I again would ask for your support and approval of this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other members of the public sign up to speak on this item?
Yes, Mitch Silverstein.
Honorable commissioners, Mitch Silverstein, Surf Rider Foundation, San Diego County. We are mostly in agreement with staff on this item, but respectfully disagree with the determination that a public recreation fee should not be considered at this time. Without this seawall and the erodible concrete addition, there would be more bluff retreat and thus more beach area for the public to enjoy. We clearly demonstrated that in our letter with a 2001 photo showing five feet of additional beach space at the location where erodible concrete infill was added. Additionally, the seawall, the seawall is situated at a public access point to the beach directly south of it. This is in part why an offer to dedicate lateral access was required in front of the property. Because the seawall prevents bluff retreat, public access becomes pinched at higher tides and inaccessible at very high tides or when a high tide corresponds with large swell. This occurs presently despite the, this occurs despite the presence of the bedrock platform reef, which is overtopped by waves during these times. Therefore, even if it's not yet on a daily basis, public recreational access is already blocked sporadically under existing conditions, and will continue to become more constrained as sea level rises. We appreciate staff's addendum in response to the concerns raised in our letter, especially the consideration that a public recreation fee must be assessed in 2045 when the applicant is required to submit an extension request. With our points in mind as a potential compromise to the proposed conditions, we suggest the addition of a special condition to monitor public access conditions so that if before 2045, access is pinched at normal high tide, the commission can reconsider the public recreation fee. This could be added within Special Condition 3, which already requires periodic monitoring of the area every five years during the permit period. This monitoring requirement could also be linked to evaluation of the existing lateral access easement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public sign up to speak?
No, no more.
With that, I'll bring it back to staff for any follow-up on comments that were made during public comment.
Well, we, staff did cover our responses in our initial comments, as well as in our staff report addendum, but if there are any questions, we of course have our staff available, as well as our coastal engineer to respond to questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Noldov, Commissioner, and then Commissioner Scalante.
Well, just the suggestion to require the monitoring of the public access seems a reasonable approach. Would you be willing to add that?
I think part of our concern here is we agree that the seawall is preventing beach from being created. We agree with Surf Rider on those points. I think our understanding is that would be private beach because of where it's located. So it, so it's not a public, it's all, it's sort of in a private area, and so there isn't really a public access, public access to monitor, if that makes any sense, that would be affected by that seawall behind the seawall. So I guess I'm, you know, we could, I could ask Jeremy or one of our other staff if they have any other thoughts on it, but my initial inclination, we do, there is a, there is a requirement of the existing, of the proposed permit that does require reevaluation of both sand supply and public recreation after 20 years. So that, I mean, that will get folded into the next, to the next look at this in 2045, as Mitch from Surf Rider noted, and staff did as well. So I think, we think that's adequate to address the concern, but maybe I'll open it up to the rest of staff to see if they have any other thoughts.
Any other thoughts from staff?
Or not.
I think, I think they think you covered it carefully well. Okay, 20 years, I'll be checking on it in 20 years, maybe.
All right. So any further comments on this item? All right. Well, I just want to thank everybody again for their hard work on this. I shared some of the concerns with Surf Rider, but I do feel like staff has done a good job of trying to figure out the best path forward, given the circumstances. And so, you know, things change over time. I think it's really good that members of the public are making us aware of those impacts with the hopes that we can work with the property owners to see if there's any way we can maybe help mitigate some of the negative impacts. But it does sound like some of the concerns are actually on private property versus public property. And so with that, I'm supportive of the staff recommendation to move forward with the hopes that we can continue to take a look at this over time. So with that, if there's a commissioner who'd like to move this item? Otherwise, we can sit here.
I will. Here we go.
Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Hopefully, I'm on the right one. Let's see. Yeah. Page six. I move that the commission approve Coastal Development Permit 621-0735 pursuant to the staff recommendation and recommend a yes vote.
And I'll second that, Chair.
Okay. So a motion by Commissioner Turnbull Sanders, second by Commissioner Campillo. And with that, I will, and they're asking for a yes vote, and I'd like to see if there's any member of the commission who would like to object to unanimous approval of this item. Seeing none, this item is approved. All right, so we'll get through these last items real quick. Approval of minutes, there's no minutes to approve. Commissioner reports, any commissioner have anything to report? Commissioner Escalante.
Thank you, Chair. UCLA Luskin Summit has invited me to participate in a panel next week to, on the 16th, to discuss managed retreat for climate change-driven disasters like sea level rise and wildfires. And as you all know, even though I live in the poorest coastal county of California now, I spent most of my life in Los Angeles and especially inland Los Angeles, and its recovery and resilience is very important to me. LA is too important for the world, so I look forward to that and look forward to chatting with staff between now and then just to get my things in order. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner reports? Seeing none, any subcommittee reports? Seeing none. Conservancy report, I'll just say that the conservancy will be meeting in Santa Cruz next week, and so I'll have an update at the May meeting. Following that, are there any, the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy report? Seeing none. Santa Monica Bay Restoration Report? Seeing none. Deputy Attorney General's report? Nada. And with that, I'd just like to get a pulse of the commission. Tomorrow's gonna be a really long day. I spoke with our council, and there is an opportunity for us to potentially split up closed session. And so what I think might be beneficial for the sake of time, if we want to split closed session between today and tomorrow, we can try to go into closed session right now until 4:30, and then we'll have a little bit of a break before our reception. And so if any commissioner objects to that? Or if we can get through it all today? I don't know. No. No, we can only get through half of it. Okay, that's fine. Okay. So it looks like Commissioner Lowenthal's gonna have to go. Lowenberg, sorry. And then Escalante, but if the rest, but we'll have quorum. So what we'll do is we'll go into closed session, we'll try to get through as much as we can and end by 4:30. All right. So our regular meeting is adjourned, and we're gonna move into closed session.